I call this meeting of Front High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Ms. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Rosenblum.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Ms. LaFather.
Here. Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge for allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item tonight is closed session. We have suggested motion that the board will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. Appointment, employment, compensation of departments are dismissed by specific employees, deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. Can someone please move that to the floor?
Sir.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. LaFather.
Aye.
All right, we have a suggested motion that the board return to open session. Can someone please move that?
Someone.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. LaFather.
Aye. Our first item of business tonight is recognitions. I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Small.
Thank you. Every high school student who prepares for college is aware of the important place on the standardized college entrance exams, including the American College Test, which we all know as the ACT. The highest possible composite score a student can earn on the ACT is 36. Statistically, less than two tenths of 1% of students taking the ACT achieve the highest score. For more than 20 years, the Board of Education has recognized the students who have achieved the highest possible score, 36 on the ACT. Tonight, we are excited to recognize and honor three students from Front High School who have achieved this remarkable accomplishment. With the addition of these three students, District 211 has now had 143 students reach this outstanding achievement. On behalf of the Board of Education and District 211, I'd like to congratulate these three students. Our students will each be introduced tonight by a sponsor whom they have selected. Sponsors, please follow this order. First, Front High School English teacher Teresa Christensen, followed by mathematics teacher Shannon Denne, and then science teacher Jennifer Carlson. And teachers, if you could bring, please bring your student up with you when you come to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Small. Thank you, Board of Education. Here with his father, Mark, I'm honored to introduce Ziwei Jiang. I've never known or worked with a more sincere, kind, and hardworking individual. While seemingly soft-spoken, Ziwei impactfully contributes to our AP Language and Composition class. Ziwei has been present in the classroom as soon as we evolved from our remote to our high-grids environment. And in that environment, as well as when we were remote, Ziwei contributes and participates each day. He helps to bridge that connection and further strengthen our connection between our in-person and remote learners. I do want to mention one major accomplishment that Ziwei recently finished with a multimedia argumentative essay in which he researched various online credible sources on our databases, journal articles, infographics, transcripts from podcasts, and synthesized all the information to deduce his own unique theories on factors our country needs to survive crises. A very crucial, yet very vast subject that he took on and came up with very clear, concise factors and perspectives. Ziwei carries that preciseness outside the classroom as well. He is an active member of Front's science team, of the Front's math team, and he enjoys taking computer science classes when he finds some spare time. He also is interesting to note, in his spare time, invents and creates his own 3D landscape models. So Ziwei makes the most of his learning experiences. His very commendable, perfect score on the ACT attests to his dedication to his learning, and I am very sincerely honored and proud of him. And Ziwei, congratulations. That's awesome.
Good evening. I am pleased to welcome Anshul Kashik and his parents, Prashant and Ruchi Kashik, as we celebrate his achievement of a perfect ACT score. I first met Anshul in AP Computer Science A, and I am pleased to be his teacher again this year in mobile app development. Anshul has always pushed himself academically, taking our most challenging courses and excelling. What makes him unique is his desire to apply his knowledge of these advanced math, science, and computer science topics through research and internships on his summer breaks. He's participated in a three-week summer program at Harvard where he learned statistical analysis, coding with R, and submitted findings on what variables affected the percentage of people who voted in 2016 elections. Anshul also interned virtually for three months with the Indian Space Research Organization where he created spectral behavioral response vegetation maps using Google Earth Engine NDVI. Oh, that's mouthful. As you can see, this young man definitely takes advantage of every opportunity to synthesize everything he has learned at Front, and not only just regurgitate it on an AP test, but also apply it to see what he can do for the future. I wish I had more time to dive deeper into all of his accomplishments, his extracurriculars, his interests, but there's not time for that. What I can say is that he's grown to be a very fine young man, and I look forward to continuing to see what other accomplishments he has in the future. Thank you. Congratulations.
Good evening, Dr. Small of the school board and members of the District 211 community. I'd like to introduce you to one of Front High School's perfect ACT students, Eva Konzer. She's here tonight with her mother, Lydia. I was so proud of Eva when I learned of her amazing accomplishment. I had the pleasure of teaching Eva last year in her sophomore honors chemistry class. Eva always came to class with a smile on her face, ready to think, learn, and participate in the day's activities. She truly enjoyed lab experiences, helping out her lab partners if they were struggling, and really loved learning new things. I was a little bit disappointed last year that my time with Eva got cut short due to COVID, but I'm keeping my fingers crossed because Eva just told me when we were talking that she signed up for AP Chemistry next year, and I'm hoping that we could maybe win some of that lost time back. It's been truly an honor being Eva's teacher, and she represents some of the best of the best of District 211. I wish her nothing but success in her future endeavors. Please help me in wishing Eva congratulations on her perfect ACT.
The Congressional App Challenge, now in its sixth year, is a public effort to encourage students to learn how to code through annual competitions hosted by members of Congress for their district. Participating students code original applications for the chance to be selected for recognition by their member of Congress, win prizes, and have their work displayed in the Capitol Building in Washington, DC. I'm proud to say that we had two students from Conant High School who won the app competition in Illinois's 8th Congressional District. At this time, I'd like to ask Conant High School mathematics teacher Rich Cortez to come to the podium. Rich is here this evening to introduce our outstanding students and tell us briefly about their honor.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce these two amazing students. This is Shay Pareet accompanied by his parents, Kajal and Heren, and this is Rayan Siddiqui, and he's accompanied by his dad, Farhan. And I would like to also take the opportunity to thank the board and especially Dr. Small. We have one of the premier computer science programs in the district for District 211 compared to the entire state. I do know that because I talk to a lot of the teachers across the state for the, in computer science, and that would not happen without the support of the board and the support of Dr. Small especially, who before she was even superintendent, really advocated for computer science. So I want to thank you. Because of that support, we have kids like this, and I'm happy to say the second year in a row I get to do this, and we take place first two years in a row for kids from Conant High School. The Congressional App Challenge is especially difficult to win in our area, considering the high schools in our area, as you all well know. There's a whole lot of talent in this area for computer science. And they made an amazing app. And the, I'll start with this. The reason they made the app was completely selfless, okay? A lot of kids will make a cool game, or they'll make something they just want to make. They looked at Conant High School and said, what is the need for Conant High School? And they noticed that we had a whole lot of kids going to our food pantry at Conant High School. There's a whole lot of free and reduced lunch kids and kids that just need extra help. And they looked at the system we had at Conant High School, and everything's done on paper. Kids come in, they check out food, they write everything down. The teachers that run it, the administrators who run it, have to write everything down by hand. We have some Excel spreadsheets, there's a Google Doc, but it's a very clunky system. When we get food, they have to go and inventory all the food, put it in. They looked at it and they said, there's got to be a better way. So they created an app called Easy Pantry, and this is actually an app, if you want to go download, you can do that, it's on the Google, I'm sorry, in the iOS Store, the Apple Store. They bought a developer account to do this, and it automates the entire system. Without COVID, we would have been using it already at Conant right now. The goal is to use it next year. And not only is it going to be good for Conant, but they're hoping to spread it to all the high schools in the entire area. It allows for things like barcode scanning of food as it comes in. Kids can check out food through barcode scanning. They can look up what's available, they can see all the nutritional information. The sponsors that are doing it can get an idea of what food is being checked out more frequently, so they can ask for donations in certain areas. And it's absolutely amazing app that they made, and they should be extremely proud of themselves because they not only made a cool thing for coding, which I love as a computer science teacher, but something that helps the community, and the community that they live in, which is really, really neat. As far as other things, I might actually go on for hours with these guys, but just to give you an idea of other things they do that's not just computer science, we have a published author right here. He published his first book this year. It's available on Amazon, and a really, really cool book. He also is doing an awesome program at the Schaumburg Library, which introduces computer science to younger, 1 through 8 grades, and he basically developed the program all by himself, which was really cool. And then Shay is not only the president of my math team, but he's also president of my CompSci kids, been a mentor, been amazing as far as that goes. And for any math geeks in the room with us, he's developed a website along with a friend, Lobdi, who actually placed third in the Congressional App Challenge, and it's called an Estimathon website, and he's hoping to launch that not only in our area but nationally to help math teams do Estimathons, which is again, a math geek kind of a thing, but that's what we do. So thank you very much for the opportunity, and I want to thank these guys especially for four years of awesome in-class. I've had the pleasure to know them for four years straight, which is really cool as a teacher, and I can't be more proud of what they've done. So thank you both very much.
Palatine High School teacher and head chess coach Sean Fisher-Rodey has been named the 2021 Coach of the Year by the Illinois Chess Coaches Association. Sean Fisher-Rodey is joining us via the webinar today. The ICCA Coach of the Year is honored for demonstrating dedication to chess beyond just their team, and he contributes to the Illinois chess community at large, and coaches earning this award have demonstrated contributions over a period of years. Coach Sean Fisher-Rodey has been involved with the chess team at Palatine High School since 2001. After spending a year as a volunteer coach, he took over the program as head coach in 2002. During his time leading the Pirates, his teams have won multiple Midsuburban League titles, and he has coached several top-three players at state competitions. During this past year, Coach Fisher-Rodey was instrumental in the creation of the online conference and tournament tools. These tools allowed the 2021 chess season to progress safely during the COVID-19 pandemic. On behalf of the Board of Education and Palatine High School, I'd like to congratulate Coach Fisher-Rodey on this well-deserved award. Congratulations.
All right, thank you. Congratulations, everyone that we were able to recognize tonight. We're going to continue on with the business portion of our meeting. Next item on our agenda is public comments. According to Phase 4 guidelines issued by the State of Illinois, no more than 25% of the seating capacity may be gathered together in a specific location at one time. The Board of Education meeting is being held this evening in the auditorium at Hoffman Estates High School with a maximum of 25% of the seating capacity. The board meeting also will be simulcast in classrooms near the auditorium to accommodate any additional guests beyond the auditorium capacity. The Board of Education meeting is also being conducted via an electronic video conferencing application known as Zoom. Tonight, public comments will be in-person and via Zoom. Individuals who wanted to address the board via in-person or Zoom were asked to sign up today between the hours of 4:30 PM and 6:30 PM. Individuals were asked to indicate if they wanted to address the Board of Education in-person or via Zoom. If more than 20 people completed the link to address the board, a random system was used to select and order 30 names. Since public comment is to be heard for a maximum of one hour, not all 30 people may have a chance to address the board. A list of individuals who will address the board and the order of the individuals addressing the board was posted on the Zoom meeting screen at 7:15 PM. Each person who addresses the board will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. You will be told when you have one minute remaining, though you may not hear that if you are speaking via Zoom. Public comment will be heard for a maximum of one hour. I will call each person's name when it is their time to address the board. If you are in-person, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. If you are addressing the board via Zoom, your microphone will be turned on after I call your name. Again, please state your name for the record, and if you wish, indicate if you are a resident of the district. When you are finished, your microphone will be turned off. Speakers should keep their masks on when addressing the board at the podium. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. First person tonight is Arya Shah.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for your time. My name is Arya Shah, and I'm here to talk about a major prevention strategy against sexual misconduct in this district of Cleveland. I believe this enforcement, speaking about sexual assault, could go beyond the spirit of school examples and clearly outline what sexual assault is and isn't. As victims, it helps us to realize that what happens was wasn't something small or something to be swept under the rug, and it helps attackers understand what the scope of what they're really doing is. Taking this step and talking about it upfront instead of having it be taboo will prevent sexual misconduct. I also point that we should learn about what to do in the case of we are assaulted. It should be a stance outside of what we need and the schools can and cannot do. As a student, if I'm supposed to interrupt, I'm not going to be thinking about what is and isn't possible for the school to do. I just want action. Well, learning about what the school legally can do would help all students to become involved in coordination, which can help us to avoid physical interference. Finally, I would like to see sexual self-protection in victim behavior anymore. It's clear that we have a huge influence with sexual assault in all our schools, so let's talk about it. Let's be of heart and say this is happening in our schools, and here's what we need to be discussing. As a student, students that are victims, why do we care anymore? We want our victims hurt, whether that's the board members we help, school free teachers. Help us to amplify our voices, help us be heard, help us make our community more safe and young. All in all, we want to be, and we want to be a student, more safe, heard, and supported. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next person, Mira Pradipan.
Hello, my name is Yvonne DeRouze, and I attend Schaumburg High School. I appreciate your show and my support, the young women who are speaking up about this and how we're battling and assault that they have faced at the security level and the life of action that has been taken. I'm not the kind of person who speaks up about things, but it is terrifying to me. If something was happened to me at school and I tried to say something, I would not be heard. It is a terrifying thought, and it is not one of my working days. And while this has been called a political ploy or something that dissolved and manipulated into the extent the effects of this have spread, I don't know how I'm going to feel safe at school when I go back. And this isn't just affecting you or these girls anymore, it's going to have to be us. We need action, and we need it now, but I suppose if I say anything, it really does. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Evan Wallace.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Stacy Gale.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Gale. I'm a resident of Hoffman Estates and a parent of a D-211 student. Ms. Klimkowitz, as an incumbent with nearly 30 years' experience seeking reelection, I hope your actions tonight are consistent in your pledge to do what is best for the students. I'd like to think you would take a leadership role, maybe make a motion to support the following items, which are in the best interest of the students, both academically and emotionally. However, I realize that may be, that may set the bar too high. So perhaps you could second a motion or simply vote in support of the following items. I'll do my best to get through all items with the time allotted. At the last board meeting, I revealed the significant academic inequality, inequity in D-211 curriculum with respect to SAT prep. Since the meeting, I've made every attempt possible to address my concerns with administration. I've met with Dr. Small, Josh Schumacher, Brian Harland, in seeking information about the various offerings with no success. As a matter of fact, Mr. Schumacher, under Ms. Small's direction, refused to provide a one-page summary of the offerings in preparation for our meeting on February 22nd. Upon receipt of the request, Mr. Schumacher called and asked the following questions. Can I ask you a direct question? What's your endgame? Is that an appropriate way for an administrator to address a parent who made a simple request for a one-page document following a prior conversation where he offered to prepare materials for the meeting? On March 5th, I requested a board hearing based on board policy, KLB and IIIAA, to discuss SAT prep inequities.
You have one more minute.
The SAT is a graduation requirement and is therefore considered uncurriculant. I had a lengthy discussion with Dr. Small following my request, and she did not provide any specifics regarding the various programs. I contacted Ms. Cavill, Mr. Young, and Ms. Klimkowitz. Mr. Young was too busy, Ms. Cavill requested an email for transparency employee documentation. Ms. Klimkowitz ignored my request. Since my request for a board hearing was denied, and the denial was not directly communicated, I am now requesting the board schedule a special board meeting to be scheduled no later than April 1st to provide a board hearing in accordance with the district policies, KLB, IIIAA, to address the curriculum matter of SAT prep. When considering my request, I'd like you to know, I met with Dr. Small, made a simple request to have my son attend the English Zoom offered by Front. My request was denied. I asked who made the decision and why my request, and why, and my request was ignored. Front students receive 100 hours of test prep, Palatine 5. The analysis provided tonight does not provide.
Your time has ended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Haley Carvari.
Hi, my name is Haley Carvari. I'm a member of the Department of Defense, and I want to talk about the potential hours spent in our school day. We're talking about 50 extra minutes per class, which we take to the 55 extra days for 88 teachers or 55 to 75 for the 88 teachers. This is only for the class-based exam. And as soon as the school finishes the rest of 45 hours of class, we're going to take a break to the end of school. The only time that we're going to waste today will be at grade 7, barely enough time to teach or sit and practice for the show that lasts for 48 and 14. We're going to learn enough to learn something new, and yet that's not our weekend. One day at practice, that's for 50 minutes per class, you receive, will be great. Nine days of practice enough time to learn, to scan the lessons, will probably be used because you're already students, have already played out. Now, we're going to talk with the 40 of us, of which the ones who do have to be general to their job, we know this is what number is going to rapidly be asked to slowly start building back up. That's also one of my friends, who are still connected to Ed, who is expected to use the old chairs of the building, maybe even the lighter. Theirs would work, so in the morning, you come back all the way after the day. With the younger sisters, it becomes a responsibility, and it's your both of us' debt. With 10 of her classes ending up long, we need to stress that if she knows that she can come for her, it's a moment to share a loss. I feel like if you can't, it's a problem for our owners to survive in class. Making a possibility to be learning loud, it can happen. But how will it help her, being heavily directed at stress, caring for her siblings in the midst of a class that you should really be paying attention to? Not only is it a lack of spending time, but we're in favor of motivating all the students in any way you want to build out the heat. Especially in terms of the best and worst students are attending school remotely. We know that 70 classes of students before technically denied and stressed to be gone away. Well, while we know that any of those classes are awful, highly encouraged, we cannot deny that the management.
You have one minute left.
It's not viable. Students have me visiting the other students, and students have my friends that have to take care of the others in the third. It's not that any of those students we serve could both take that to distract the men students that are not in the third school. Both know that adding 45 hours of extra schooling to the last two months, it could make significant further mental problems for students. This means to change from the fourth day until the 10th year of the year, all the data students that we gave with your loss. The cost of this promise, given it's enough, will be extra hours of teaching we get from the third school. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Sanjana Rajesh.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sanjana, and I'm a senior at Conant High School. I wanted to start off today by thanking the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to speak here today. I also appreciate the various administration and staff members that have put together a presentation for us later in the agenda. Tonight, I wanted to focus on the improvements and policies I would like to see implemented in District 211 in regards to sexual violence. First of all, I need to see transparency. District 211 should have a clear policy on gender-based violence that is easy to access, understand, and is available online. Personally, I wasn't able to find much information about District 211 after extensive searching. I know that my own research, that from my own research, under federal Title IX law, a school is required to take an investigation process independent of law enforcement. These processes need to be public information. Our districts are legally required to publish grievance and reporting procedures. If they don't, they are not in compliance with Title IX. We need to know who is doing investigations in every school. I demand District 211 also release statistics such as how many cases are reported, how many survivors were denied accommodations that they requested, and how long on average cases remained opened, and more. I'm disappointed to see the lack of transparency surrounding this issue. Since reporting rates are so low, a school's crime statistics aren't an accurate source of information on the prevalence of sexual assault. I call upon District 211 to conduct anonymous campus climate surveys annually, which can accurately measure the prevalence of sexual and dating violence. Published data from climate surveys can provide valuable information that's helpful to improve campus safety. Next, I would like to see an investment in the culture of the schools. This means improving safety and oversight of sports teams and school groups, including classrooms. I'm not talking about 10-minute, once-a-year slides. I'm not talking about ten-minute, once-a-year slideshow presentations that every student groans about having to listen to. I'm talking about engaging activities, consistent discussions, accountability, and clear consequences for students who commit violence. I'm talking about making it easy and accessible to report incidents, which goes hand-in-hand with the transparency I mentioned earlier. I'm talking about education on how to report and about definitions of what sexual violence and harassment entail. I demand District two eleven take action immediately as well to educate its twelfth-grade population. Much, much of the seniors had to attend a health education in summer school or in one semester and did not receive a comprehensive view of such education that included consent, LGBTQ issues, sexual assault, and more. We need to see a college prep and wellness weeks targeted specifically towards all seniors that will cover these topics. I suggest the district work with the Kenneth Young Center and the Northwest Center Against Sexual Assault to make this happen. Finally, there needs to be more student voice on this issue. I call upon the district and individual schools to establish, establish working groups and committees on gender-based violence and sexual harassment that meets regularly and includes students and survivors. Students should have a record of the broader policy discussions and decisions happening in these meetings. District officials and staff should take these discussions seriously. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will consider and implement the suggestions I have provided.
Thank you. Arianna Hanley.
Today, I'm thinking about this sort of day in my health class where we're talking about consent. I was sitting at my desk looking down at a worksheet or textbook at a list of ways to deny someone who is pushing you to pass tests. It was a long road that said, I'm not little enough and I'm not ready yet. I still remember looking down looking at me, why is it simple? No, not with one. I love processing, questioning, my praising, and my torment when I was in the fourth period. Was it my fault? Well, they have prompted enough that I know. Should I have given the help for this? That day, probably that my class guilty, the now are of whatever other part that I know. Also, mine mostly male peers left with the mentality that no, not sufficient enough answer. That the world really didn't want it, showing that there's an alternative answers and proper comment, what? But both empower us to realize that kind of attitude that is why it's often called rape culture. Because it doesn't come down to just the action of the right to sexual assault. It's about the environment that creates. It's about the environment that creates and foster and foster sexually violent behavior. You are looking at having different and soft ability to combat rape culture so people can come to your school and your community and do something. Step language is the bare minimum. It's to listen to students and create a space for them to speak. I, of all remaining students, are calling for you to create a spirit handful that specifically addresses rape culture in our school. Because rape culture exists and it should be there. When you're looking at data of other students who have been different, I hopefully realize that that number is much larger than any of us know. I wake up and I think about what that number could be every day. Some of the members of the school were evidently simply do not care and go as far as to denounce
You have one more minute.
When you're physically ready to have any care about our safety and play off as sometimes a political ploy. Every day I wake up and I'm scared of that happening. But every day that you don't do anything, I'm even more scared and disappointed. I am pleased to say, believe me, that there is a school board launch coming up because hopefully a new member, some change will happen while you allow people on your board to deny students publicly on Facebook when they are sharing their experiences and play off on that board of school. It's disgusting. And without, thanks.
Thank you. Essie Kamal.
Hello, my name is Essie Kamal and I'm a student at Chomber High School. Eighty-one percent of women and forty-three percent of men have experienced some form of sexual harassment in their life. One in five, I hope, girls that they've been sexually assaulted as students. It is in you that eleven thousand eight hundred fifty-seven students trust. It is you who makes the decisions that affect all of our lives. We begin each fourth season with a presentation on students, followed by a presentation of the expectations of student averages. But we fail to envy given to all sexual assault, harassment, and both its worst and real roles. Just last year, one of my peers involved, said her and her teammates were verbally harassed by male actors for, for months. And I remember that we began each fourth season with a presentation on sexual assault and harassment in this area as well. Another issue in our school is that students don't know what they can do for help. It's imperative that students know what they can talk with, and that there is a seat or in place for students wishing to remain anonymous. We also help to gather data from witnesses to report the abuse. Those students spend over forty hours of school, and it's all the money to make sure everyone is safe. It is within these walls that students establish their viewpoints. It's within, within these walls that students fly for ultimate progress. I am ordering you to rethink tonight what you should be saying past today and understand that eleven thousand eight hundred fifty-seven students rely on you to be safe in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Misty Brown. Thank you. Eileen Stilin. Thank you. Roshni Arun.
Alright, hello, everybody. My name's Roshni Arun and I'm a junior at Palatine High School. Last time I was here, me as well as ten other students discussed the injustice that has occurred under the walls of D two eleven. From that time, awareness and a strive for change, this has, um, to change the status quo has increased. However, at this time, I think it is important for the board to make these changes concrete and take action with this data provided. Us students have taken the climate survey, as well as the wellness surveys for months, and we have no idea what the board is doing with this collected data. How are you going to act on this data and how are you going to show us your transparency? I am here to ensure that the data you collect will actually be used to provide equitable resources to those in need. We need to have a district-wide student run council and easy access to resources regarding support groups. We need to have a strict guideline to support and provide survivors with support. In short, myself and the seventeen other students here want to see action. We want to see that the board is being held accountable to finish what we have started in the goal to prevent sexual assault. As students, we see, we see what is happening on a daily basis and we urge you, the board, to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Abigail Rumel. Thanks for speaking up.
Hello, my name is Abigail Rumel and I am a senior at Conant High School. I would first like to thank you for the additional agenda item of six A of the presentation about sexual assault in D two eleven. I would like to forward, I look forward to hearing what you have to say and hope that the information given can be extended to the classroom. I would also like to address the REACH Act, an act that as of yesterday has made it to the next step of getting passed by the Illinois House Committee. The responsible, the Responsible Education for Adolescents and Children's Health Act, REACH, is announced and was planned by, was announced by Planned Parenthood of Illinois and works to create a more thorough and inclusive health and safety education for students K through twelve. This includes sexual assault in both, in both LGBTQ and disability-informed. Both of these groups are often ignored in all forms of education and both have incredibly high sexual assault rates. According to the Human Rights Campaign, forty-four percent of lesbians and sixty-one percent of bisexual women experience race, physical violence, and stalking by an intimate partner compared to thirty-five percent of straight women. Twenty-six percent of gay men and twen, and twenty-six percent of gay men and thirty-seven percent of bisexual men experience rape, physical violence, and stalking by an intimate partner compared to twenty-nine percent by straight men. Twenty-six percent of bisexual women have been raped compared to a twenty, compared to seventeen percent of straight women and thirteen percent of lesbians. Nearly half of those bisexual survivors experienced their first rape between ages, ages eleven and seventeen. These are your students. And according to Disability Justice, eighty-three percent of women with disability, disabilities have been sexually assaulted in their lives. Just three percent of sexual abuses involve.
You have one more minute.
Thank you. Just three percent of these sexual abuse, of sexual abuses involving people with disabilities are ever reported. Only three percent. Approximately eighty percent of women and thirty percent of men with developmental disabilities have been sexually assaulted. Half of these women have been, have been assaulted more than ten times. I want a safe and comforting environment in school, but this means acknowledging and defending some of our most vulnerable students. Students that are already ostracized and bullied in the hallways because of who they are. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Amy Nelson. Amy Nelson. Okay, Kai Smith.
Hi, my name is Kate Smith and I'm a student at Hoffman High School. For months of my history, I've known that I would always be very proud of my students from five to ten years old. Now, because I've been socially speaking with them, we've developed a certain mindset. This is a similar advantage that I've had with my parents. At one point, I even had to start a petition for a teacher from my school. Never had the idea of how much I could allow any school of my class. Every time I sat in the meeting office, all the staff downed me away for none of the senior effort. We all seemed to collapse. Maybe it was the need for anyone to say that was uncomfortable. The need was to see if I could stand up to the students or why teachers, and I knew some of the people who were not, they were funny and everything else. I had a thought that I was beginning to do a question, who put that there, that needs to be taught, that to the best teachers themselves. I began to feel that, I just, they're not people. It's not confounded that another day is supposed to be the first, and it's a month and a month to wait. And what is for a semester, for me, I was, I was sorry, without any reason, I was worried. I was ready to offer, I was ready to, I was ready to, I was ready to, I was ready to say, I did. So I was just so, so, you know, happy to see. By my teacher, I was sad as someone who can't look at kids, who are a difficult manager, I was sad as a problem. I only ever felt seen by one of these students. Only to have that people in my district who would come, and the family and the whole stuff, it's about that. And then I experienced a stalking problem. Who would have been there to hear that? I was all the time, because I was afraid I'd scare someone, and I was like, oh, because I was terrified of the turmoil that's been made here and fully graduated. You know, we attacked the boys off at one of the other students, and when he found me, I was like, oh, why can't you just be gentle and even say my other class?
You have one more minute.
And now, since I'm here, I was going through all the other things. This is what I realized about that, that we call that the preparing problem. This is the behavior of the teenagers of underlying problems that we have. We cannot be done with three, this is something that there is, that all your teachers that I'm scared of, nothing. These are ministers who have changed and immediately connected to the student body. We're all so attached to them, that sometimes they want to be taught. I'm not wrong, I just want to be helped. I know that it's not new to professors, you do not care, it's kind of my life. We need to have no control to other chambers. Please consider the changes that this plan is to others, but also the preparation and some of the others that have to be okay after. Please have these considerations, we want you to have together. We are tired of that, please. Some of these things, some of these things, and I just, I just, thank you.
Thank you. Arena Shah.
Hello, forth, fellow board members. My name is Arena and I'm a senior at Conant High School. I wanted to start, I wanted to, I wanted to start off by stating that I would not be here if I didn't think there's a profound issue regarding sexual assault within D two eleven schools. But I also wouldn't be here if I didn't think that this board could do something about it. My peers, time and time again, have stepped up to share their own experiences with either the lack of sexual assault acknowledgement in health classes or how our administration has oftentimes failed us when reporting these incidents. By now, you must know the startling stats of how many people are affected by sexual assault. This goes to show that this is not only a health issue, but a societal and lifestyle issue and needs to be treated as such in school. Assault cannot be talked about for a mere week or two and then forgotten because it is not something that's textbook. It is something ninety-seven percent of women have lived through. As I speak, as I speak here tonight, I plead that you understand the prevalence of what is occurring in D two eleven. This is not a political matter, but a matter of safety for my generation, for past generations, and for future generations to come. With that being said, I come here and ask you to work with students to make a viable plan of action regarding sexual assault that will be implemented through years to come with commitments clearly written. I understand change does not come quickly, but at the same time, I cannot be satisfied with empty statements that hold no bearing to the future of this issue. I would like to see a plan of action written and signed, including reforms to transparency within the administration, such as creating flow charts of what, what steps are taken after reporting an assault and informing students of their rights according to Title IX reforms and education that touches on LGBTQ plus assault, rape kits, Title IX, and more. I would like to see a public town hall meeting informing communities of commitments and changes D two eleven will be making. I would like to see teachers and coaches talking to their classes about this constantly and continuously. I would like to see D two eleven schools acknowledging sexual assault when it happens and bringing awareness to this highly revolting behavior. With the entire student body. I think that schools should begin switching the narrative of teaching victims and survivors how to prevent assault by either dressing differently or not walking out, out at night, and start teaching perpetrators that this behavior will not stand and that they will be held accountable. This, that consent is not something to gloss over as a mere acknowledgement, that women especially are not objects to be sexualized and taken as pleased. Once again, standing here before all of you tonight, I hope that through the past two years of people speaking up, that you will notice sexual assault changes are not an item that gets to be put in the middle of a board agenda, but instead a subject that needs to be acted on immediate, as immediately as possible. D two eleven cannot keep sending thousands and thousands of students without the proper tools to combat sexual assault. We need change and reading it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Araha Uday.
Good evening. My name is Araha Uday and I attend Chomber High School. I'm seeing tonight the urge of the teachers to support the girls who greatly felt about the last month's half of the district, pay more attention to acting against sexual harassment and assault. It's unfortunate to say, but I do my best as a student at the district, there is a clear message of a purging full guidance that if someone does something to you or a friend, you can tell me this is right and they will have a swift and effective speaker in place. If there is one, I don't really know whether it is, and how as well. I never, any girlfriend or father forgets how they suffer. Tell me about Houston teacher, because what if you don't have? You didn't know what you didn't know your problem. You don't know the amount of the broken things, uh, so don't do what it's done to them. I have told you numerous times about young men at our school who were treated as assholes or spent on so little, so little pictures. This tells me that they're uncomfortable, that they've come to a sense of being your unlawful friend and you're not for it. Perhaps they don't understand the reality of what they are experiencing because quite frankly, Instagram is our most reliable avenue of identity topic. And I do know, you know, the courage or about how to report these. I think the district could be more fearfully and actively involved than they currently are. Students need to know that their school can sit for, spend time, sit down, listen, prioritize us, and most importantly, do something, letting us hear reports from brave students and sightseeing us. And regardless of whether you should acknowledge it as a pervading issue or not, there is no gray area here. You either believe sexual harassment is a serious concern or not. On Saturday, I invited the board of the district to be flexible with the A and B and B in the class. I had teachers say that extended A and B would hopefully.
You have one more minute.
I know we are supposed to have a regular, finished by these A and Bs, but I highly doubt addition of regulars in the day of time or reason for three days will then they are advanced students. And the other adults who have discussed our needs to our parents and were paying hundreds of dollars for our exams, I think we could leave it on whether the money paid or not. Especially if you're really taking a regular for all of us. The students I know who know that they are helping these things have all gone out with students, why are you taking care of them? And that's how you can amend students because most that I help can once take their exams to students' money. with students' money. I personally have seen the reasons that I can't online test things without talking to my family, but I also hope that the district stands that we still need to do, but also consider the mental health of students taking multiple exams, trying sometimes in a year into account. Thank you and have my best, we are leaving.
Thank you. Alakaya Totakura.
Hello, my name is Alakaya Totakura and I'm a junior at Palestine High School. Thank you for your time, once again, and as you may have assumed, I will be discussing sexual assault. I would like to make one thing clear: sexual assault is not political. The reason why you and I are here today is simply to make our schools better and safer for our students. Currently, sexual assault is obviously preventing that. It's not a matter of if it's happening, as some people may be thinking, but a matter of why it's so prevalent. Since the last board meeting, I've had a few friends come out and say that they were sexually assaulted. I understand that you guys are obviously not students, but that doesn't mean that we don't see people getting sexually assaulted. Since the last board meeting, I've had so many friends come out about their stories about sexual assault. And you don't get to experience what it feels like to wipe your friends' tears or sit with them all night because they don't want to be alone, and unfortunately, we don't have that luxury. We're all coming to as students who has all seen what sexual assault has done to our friends. I commend you guys for starting conversation and having a presentation later today. As students, we're already seeing the effects of the awareness that we've brought to sexual assault with more and more students coming out with their stories every day. But I want you guys to keep in mind a couple of things. First, accessibility to resources. Need support groups, easy access to information on Title IX, and overall more transparency so survivors know what resources are available to them. Currently, this is the biggest issue. Most students don't know where to even begin after something as traumatic as this happens to them. And second, there has to be a way to measure the success of these changes. This is really important. An environmental survey in the beginning of the year is not effective, and unfortunately, it's not something people take very seriously, and quite frankly, it's not at all an accurate representation of the school. This is why we should be encouraging a district-wide council that deals with all issues regarding all things student-oriented, with a subgroup that specifically dedicates themselves to sexual assault. There are so many details to consider when trying to implement change, and especially with an issue as big as this, only a dedicated council will be able to achieve results.
You have one minute left.
Thank you. We don't want to play a game of teetering on the edge of action enough to simmer our anger at this issue, but not enough to see discernible impact. We need change and we need actual action. Thank you.
Thank you. Julian Tantore. Okay, thank you. Abigail Thomas.
Good evening, my name is Fabio Thomas and I have a student at Conant High School. A staggering amount of people face sexual harassment during the lunch, and we're working to try to advise students to stop students. I'd like to see the board immediately address that sexual misconduct and follow the disciplinary measures in order to allow students to realize their role is required, respected, and that they can trust that action will be taken both in reports. The policy of how sexual students have a determined handle about the district should be more closely advised for students, teachers, and staff, and spoken by the school. More information on the confidentiality of reports and different methods of reporting practice should be specialized. Students, staff should be able to contribute and provide feedback from the policy, and that feedback should be followed up. I know students have said that they assault ignore, so it's incredibly fortunate that they can see that action will be taken. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Faith Massey.
Hello, everyone. My name is Faith Massey and I'm a senior at James V. Conant High School. First and foremost, I'd like to applaud my peers' strength, determination, and poise when presenting. Thank you all for all your amazing hard work and those who are on the Zoom. I'd like to discuss a few things with you, just three. First, data. Second, a student advisory board. And lastly, what I challenge you all to do. I want to discuss data. There's two known types of data: qualitative and quantitative, which I'm sure you know. But for those who don't, quantitative is almost numerical, it's percentages. Qualitative's are phenomenas and narratives. I implore you all, when researching, not only to use quantitative data, because the sad realization is, that's not accurately representing every story, and it's up for mad interpretation. Secondly, you have to look at qualitative data, excuse me, because those stories are our stories. That's what we go through, and we want to share that with you if you give us the opportunity. That bleeds into my next point. What we would like to see is a student advisory board. This should be diverse, inclusive, and it should be a general board. My peers and I would like to explore having a general student advisory board with different subcommittees. Subcommittees could involve equity or sexual assault. They will be committed to purposeful change and impactful change. Lastly, what I implore you all to do. We want meaningful change. We want to see action. What do I mean by this? The students here, and not just me, everyone I can speak for confidently, don't just want change for us, but the students after us, because it's not just about us, it's about all students. And like I mentioned previously, we're your babies. We want you all to protect us, and frankly, not everyone's being protected like we know you can provide.
You have one minute left.
Thank you. I can confidently say that we have faith in you, we just want to see you do your part. So with the change, I believe that it should be purposeful, comprehensive, intersectional, and supportive. Marlothe King Jr. says, "The time is always right to do what is right." Thank you.
Thank you. Aman Rajabali.
Good evening, my name is Aman Rajabali and I attend Conant High School. Proceeding at this point, the girls who gave the word officializing the harassment and assault last month. A larger percentage of students have faced sexual harassment bottom high school, and the board can speak something about it. Disciplinary measures should be put in place to prevent the sexual misconduct should be taken more seriously. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Jasmine Mundi.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Small. My name is Jasmine Mundi and I'm a senior at Conant High School. I'm speaking out today to condemn the facade of approachability which characterizes this district's response to sexual misconduct. The democratic process which has granted you tenure as members of this board is the same process which must be used to hold you accountable. I am not the first to speak out, nor will I be the last. It is the most fundamental obligation of this district's bureaucracy to protect the well-being of its constituents, and so far, your efforts have come up short. I implore the board to take action today so that there will be a better tomorrow for students after me. The student body asks for Title IX policy accessibility for those with disabilities and English second language speakers. The student body asks for thoughtful sexual violence survivor supports, especially with Sexual Assault Awareness Month coming up. The student body asks for a permanent forum to voice their concerns outside of monthly board meetings, and the student body asks for measures to hold administrators accountable for sexual misconduct disciplinary responses. As stated by my peer at the last board meeting, you consciously let thirteen-year-olds and eighteen-year-olds roam the same hallways without adequately educating them on consent. Your distinct apathy has festered the most decrepit of pervasiveness in our schools, and the student body has to endure the consequences of that every day. There's been a prolonged process in implementing a series of wellness curriculum reforms for as long as I have been a student in this district, and I have yet to see any of the resources or awareness speakers proposed to promote a positive school culture. How is the student body expected to advocate for themselves when we don't understand what our rights are and what our district is obliged to do? A single Title IX claim is one too many, and the district's notice to deflect this issue onto the student body has not gone unnoticed. The vitriol many students who spoke in February received from misinformed adults and even the likings of Mr. Kramer has exacerbated the need for urgency. The insinuation that the initiative of students is politically motivated directly disrespects the students who relive their trauma for you. You cannot question the prevalence of sexual violence when you're not willing to scrutinize the causes of underreporting. Granting the public the opportunity to speak and truly listening is not the same thing. I filed a FOIA request on March 2nd asking for extensive disciplinary data for sexual misconduct in D-11, and it has yet to be fulfilled. And I even met with Mr. Hildebrand and Mrs. Ardell to discuss the district's data collecting procedures. According to Title IX, it is actually mandated to publish the aggregate data I asked for under FERPA, and it seems as if you're trying to avoid addressing public interest in those statistics. For the betterment of the community, there will come a time where we as a student body will take a position directly antithetical from what benefits the district, and that time is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis Pratham Manan.
Hello, I'm Alexis Pratham Manan, president of the girl at U.S.A. who else did it? I hand over my health peers on the last act on sexual assault and LGBTQ education. I agree on the three conspiracy theories topic, report to me, help. I will see how classes and the top of consent, LGBTQ, and sexual violence. Clear procedures on what happened when sexual assault happened, who to report to. We have such on this school and not void by the report, but it's urgent as if these issues don't occur. The secrecy over these issues makes it harder for students to speak out if they are assaulted. We need to foster conversation and understanding, not let students feel isolated and ashamed. All of this is a lack of education and conversation with the school and our district's sexual violence consent have not taken seriously. Our peers are always, and they do not pay us here. And why would they if we do not? Every Tuesday evening, I will find all the girl members who will be here to each other talk out about sex behavior, and other issues we have seen and have foreexperienced, and the lack of mission our school takes for the books that are made about from our peers. We do not want to make change when these units have been willing and ready to use the power to make those changes. Without change, you need not the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Nishel Patel.
Thank you for giving the time for this, please. Now, if a student wanted to high school with this issue, and a friend or somebody's girl sometimes shared her story, some of the habits, I just have one thing to say. Fear your doubts. No one can be perfect, however, they want to be loved, they trust most people they want to learn at school. They're not special, they're professional, they're just kids. They're just kids, our grandparents who are empowered, our family who have access, or people who support their victims in submission. Because you, as a member of this school board, do not be judging persons and identifying based off of their accolades, but as their character and ability to function as a decent in the league, your job is to make sure students of your district feel safe and comfortable in school. And clearly, by the countless victims who have spoken out and accounts of more who are terrified of your help, who do make the most change, you have failed that responsibility. You are not a fair politician, do not let this position fool you. Governance of your district's heart has already been damaged by countless victims you have subdued in silence. There is no dignity to that. Be honest with the example that forces others in the streets to change. Be that light, who have to share the whole piece of your students, instead of sheltering and expecting to have a lot of perverts and lepers that will benefit you. The irony is that I have to be respectful while finding that even though every existence provided in this system, although, to let you pass. Do you think you grow at any point with the shut off the room when they felt threatened? When they felt terrified? So I do want that to be the same, but even though exactly what happened situation, your comments come basically has helped create. I call on you and our benefits of our business for swift and just management for all that has been used as part of taking these steps for eliminating the fact of youth and harassment from this school ground. I will say once and I will say a million times, you are a bad person. Do not think you're a fair politician, who is seen and admired, who are an official mentor of the students. It is time for you to create a safe and educated environment for all these students that are new representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Genevieve Wolf.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The last month's color meeting, a lot of things have happened. One of these topics includes the backlash of teachers of this evening, or number, from a member of the board, Mr. Kramer, and other D-11 men on Facebook, reading the comments that were posted in their private Facebook room, meaning my son's skin was disapproving and fear. This is not a reaction that's invited a sexual assault to receive when they talk about personal experiences. Your reaction, I mean, was to the administration to move this action. I hope that all of you have had enough time to digest what was said last month and to think about what you do to the president's life for the district. There is true modus operandi to consult the captain when it comes to issue of sexual assault. I am exhausted of living in a world where sexual violence is viewed as an unfortunate and insatiable tragedy in life. It should be, if not, the solution is to educate, something that schools should have abilities. I can think of a million things that could have been implemented in these school structures that will increase that education comprehension. Conventional, for one, but an urgent intervention. How to avoid assaulting someone? The consequences of breaking the person? What happens when you look for assault? What are your rights as a victim? You have a line. Who can you talk to? You go to the police, or to the hospital? What's even in a rape kit? All of these are questions that shouldn't have answered since ninth grade. It's my senior year ago, and I still don't understand many questions. Even I'm leaving this school, I have a lot of compassion for students to come. By advocating for something to change now, somehow, hopefully, it won't happen. I just hope all of you share my vision. I want to see all take action, not to talk about it. I had a lot of sympathy to teach her. How do I really do that?
Thank you. Shreya Katwala.
Hello, my name is Shreya Katwala and I am a senior at Conant High School. I'd like to start by thanking the board for this opportunity to speak tonight. I hope the words I say the next three minutes form the justice of you. I hope they push you to make change, as we have seen words I and my peers have inherited for the past year. As a student who's had endless opportunities to live in this district for the past four years, I'd like to thank the public officials that helped to block my actions, people who pushed for my well-being and safety. Yet it's becoming increasingly hard to believe that. I was at the board meeting last month and listened to all of these persons concerned about sexual violence seriously, putting ideas on the table that has the power to create lasting change. Yet, a board member forced Frayor voice on Facebook the next day and devalued the brave students who stood up here and cried for you to listen. Instead of supporting and believing the survivor, he called all the students who spoke and that spoke, similar in language and theme, and alleged that they were all connected to the same account. So, Mr. Kramer, tonight, I am directly calling on you. I am calling on you to show that you care about this issue as much as you claim you do. I am calling on this board to stop looking for reasons to put every brave student that comes up here down and stop trying to not believe us. I have never been more disappointed and ashamed of this administration, such that one that's supposed to advocate for me and my peers. As I see here, the fact of the matter is that through the actions of Mr. Kramer and the inaction of this board, this administration has already failed as a student. This board has made us a recruiting for brave to speak to what are supposed to be trusted members of our community. This board has become so disconnected to their students that they are unaware that blocking the whole person is something they fear because they are-
You have one more minute.
Some students wake up every day and drugs coming to their high school because of the section of misconduct that seems to be a reality in our schools now, a place that is supposed to be a safe space. So, as I speak in front of you, I call on you to be ready to address the huge concerns that are being talked about with sexual activities in our schools. I call on you to create lasting action for this judiciary justice against that hold on us. I call on you to make schools safe for students again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who is seated in the auditorium who is not on the list who would like to address the board? If so, if you could just raise your hand, please. Okay, thank you. That will conclude our public comment portion.
Mr. Lefeverd-
Yes.
Uh, may I make a statement?
Sure.
Thank you for indulging me. Um, I'd like to just specifically state that all the comments that I've made tonight, I have heard, especially Maya, who stated that, you know, "What's the point if nobody's listening?" I want to say to her specifically, "I'm listening." Um, we'll see where this presentation goes tonight, and hopefully, you'll see some action. But we're listening, and I want you to know that. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, uh, next we have presentations. Uh, the first presentation is the Prevention of Sexual Harassment in District 211. Dr. Small, would you like to make any introductions?
I would. We're gonna take just, uh, thirty seconds here to bring the team forward.
I would. We're going to take just a thirty seconds here to bring the team forward. Thank you to all the students who presented tonight. Thank you for your support to yourselves and to other students who weren't here to present tonight, but you know about and need our connections along the way. In response to the board's request, a presentation and additional detailed report is being presented tonight in regard to our practices surrounding the prevention of sexual harassment, assaults, and our support systems for our victims. Education, prevention, and support must be woven in all aspects of the school in order for it to be effective. Josh Schumaker, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, has brought together a team from across multiple departments in each one of our schools to speak to this issue and answer questions of the board. Josh?
Both tonight. Sorry. Both tonight and at our last board meeting, we had the opportunity to hear from our students regarding their perception and experiences related to the concept of sexual harassment as it relates to Township High School District 211. We appreciate the ability to continue the conversation with you this evening and we have invited some of our amazing staff members who work alongside students every day. We also want to affirm the students who have had the courage to speak both last month and this evening. Their bravery to speak publicly and their passion for ensuring that our schools are safe are very encouraging to our staff. As we begin our presentation, I want to draw your attention to our High School District 211 value statements. These statements were carefully crafted and adopted in 2016 after a thorough analysis of the priorities and direction of our district. The specific value statements that connect with our presentation tonight include: Safety: Our district values safeguarding the welfare of all by providing a positive and respectful environment. And Wellness: Our district values cultivating the healthy physical, social, and emotional wellbeing for all. I want to tell you that these aren't just words on a paper to our staff members. Rather, they are the guiding principles that drive our daily interactions with students. I also wanted to just speak to our robust set of policies, including the seven that we brought for review in November that guide our procedures and practices related to harassment, sexual harassment, and Title IX sexual harassment in our district. Additionally, it should be noted that we have a teen dating violence policy and a student conduct policy that also guide our preventative efforts and our procedures. As we begin to discuss these critical issues tonight, it is imperative that we have the same foundational understanding of the limits of our school administration and our disciplinary procedures. To do that, I want to highlight a section of our teen dating violence policy, JFH. This policy includes specific numbered procedures for responding to teen dating violence that makes the distinction between events that take place at the school, on school grounds, at school-sponsored activities, or in vehicles used by school-provided transportation. This policy and our other policies that we mentioned in our report all apply to incidents that occur at our schools. We can investigate these incidents and if warranted, give school consequences up to and including a recommendation for expulsion. There have been cases where students have reported incidents that have happened in the community rather than in our schools. While we certainly provide high levels of support to these students and their families, there are times when we must task these investigations along to our law enforcement partners and and could be unable to give school disciplinary consequences. Having experienced this situation several times over my time as an administrator, I know that this can often cause a student or an entire family to feel like the school is not responding or doesn't care about the situation. Please understand that this could not be farther from the truth. Our school staff serve deeply for all students, especially those who need support because of a traumatic incident. We are, we are also bound to follow our policies, procedures, and the law that provides the parameters that we work within. Although the val- although the value statements and policies form the foundation for our preventative education and supportive procedures and processes, our focus has and always will be our students. We want our students to feel safe, to feel welcome, and to feel valued in every one of our District 211 schools. And we strive to foster the types of environments and school cultures in which they not only attend and participate, but thrive. This requires a focus on connecting and building relationships, fostering trust, listening, and responding and supporting students at high levels. In addition to the information in our presentation, you received a report that includes details of all our investigative processes and response procedures, discipline data for the preceding six school years, and our Title IX administrative procedures. We have organized our presentation this evening in three broad categories. Scott Hegel, Wellness Department Chair-elect from Palatine High School, and Beth Rosner, Wellness Department Chair from Hoffman Estates High School, will provide its information about our proactive approach to educating students through our wellness curriculum. Eric Melton, Guidance Chair at Schaumburg High School, and Antonette Minetti, Guidance Chair at Fern High School, will provide an explanation of our clear processes and procedures, including a description of how our school staff, student services department, and school administrators work collaboratively to support students and families. And Jeanette Ardell, Assistant Principal at Kona High School, will share information about the support that we provide to students and families no matter whether an incident occurs on our school ground or off our school ground. To begin, Mr. Hegel and Ms. Rosner will share with us how our integrated wellness curriculum provides students with the knowledge and skill to both identify and prevent sexual harassment.
We are currently in our final year of rolling out the newly developed District 211 Wellness Program. Wellness combines physical education and health education into a unified curriculum. Three years ago, we began this endeavor by developing and refining wellness by for all freshman students, followed by sophomores last year, and finally introducing junior, senior wellness this school year. Wellness incorporates the concepts of social-emotional learning, fitness, decision-making, and nutrition into holistic approach that focuses on the wellbeing of our students, both now and in their future. Our freshman students examine what a healthy relationship looks like in their daily lives, with their family, friends, or significant other. Characteristics of both healthy and unhealthy relationships are discussed and dissected through class discussions and activities. It is the characteristics of a healthy relationship that serves as a foundation for the prevention efforts that are taught in the future lessons with students as they progress through their high school experience. We also teach students to recognize the signs of an unhealthy relationship. They then learn how to advocate for themselves if they end up in relationships that are not contributing to their happiness or feeling of self-worth. Our students explore the rights in a relationship. These rights allow all students to build a relationship founded in respect, honesty, and responsibility. In Wellness, our students study the definition of consent. The cons, concept, and laws surrounding consent form an essential and critical component of our wellness curriculum. By consulting with our school resource officers and by following the guidance provided by the Illinois State laws applying to consent, our students learn exactly what consent is and just as vital, what consent is not. Students learn that only yes means yes and only a verbal enthusiastic yes given in a clear state of mind by an individual who is seventeen years or older legally qualified as consent. To apply their knowledge, students examine the concept of consent in numerous situations that they can encounter both now and in the future. These situations are carefully devised to guide students through multiple situations of consent that are directly applicable to teenagers. This year, conversations applying to consent and sexual assault have been conducted in a hybrid situation, both on Zoom and in person. Future class discussions will probably be more impactful once we return to an entirely in-person setting.
Fundamentally, a healthy relationship is the best path for prevention of sexual assault. This is the foundation we build our wellness education on for all District 211 students. However, there are times that things take a hard turn for a person where there is a situation that is unimaginable and they become violated. Through our curriculum, freshman students embark on a learning experience that begins with relationships being on a spectrum, healthy, unhealthy, and abusive. In accordance with the Illinois Law on Consent, it is important our students know sexual assault is a result if a sexual act is committed under the age of seventeen. With that concept, our freshman curriculum presents the difference of sexual harassment versus sexual assault. Lessons such as a red light, green light, yellow light activity allows students to early identify warning signs, putting themselves in a potentially dangerous environment. As the lesson unfolds, teacher gives circumstances to the teens that the teens could possibly encounter and students determine if the scenario is a red, green light, go, yellow light, caution, or red light, stop. The ability to dissect social situations will allow students to become more cerebral in their choices. The sophomore curriculum continues on sexual assault. However, through the legislation, the law allows us to take a deeper dive into our topic and enter rape into the curriculum. Along the same lines of sexual assault as an Illinois law is an Illinois law called Aaron's Law. The law is founded by Aaron Marin, a Schaumburg High School graduate and a victim of child sexual assault. A member of our very own panel this evening was instrumental in helping Aaron navigate through her difficult time. Aaron has written many books and currently is a social worker. Her legislation passed in Illinois in 2013. Aaron's Law is a state-mandated curriculum for K through five students. So this is not new information to District 211 students. The law is a prevention-oriented child sexual abuse program which teaches age-appropriate techniques to recognize child sexual abuse and tell a trusted adult. More specifically, it provides an education to children on safe versus unsafe touch as well as safe versus unsafe secrets. Freshman year, students explore the components of Aaron's Law, what it is, how to prevent it, and how to report it. Through discussion, the students are given ways to identify and report an assault. We continue with enhancements to the curriculum sophomore year with exploring scenarios teens may encounter under this umbrella. We continue to research the trends of our students on a daily basis. The Wellness Department views it as a vital, as vital to include the effects of societal messaging, including current movies, music, and increased use of social media as an information-sharing communication tool. We know that these messages affect our students' decision-making and potentially how they view relationships. Our objective is to provide students with an awareness of potential dangers that mainstream music and social media messages can bring to them. Some social media sites exhibit problematic and prejudiced themes through their photo and video posts. The role of sexuality in these online environments holds major influence in their self-construction. It can lead to a misunderstood and misrepresented idea of peer norms regarding sex. Some studies even suggest that certain social media messages may lead to greater promiscuity among teen users. While we don't fully understand the long-term effects, we want to ensure that our students are aware of the potential dangers and have the skills necessary to form positive and healthy relationships. Both male and female users report psychological impacts due to exposure to sexualized social media content. While many of these choices are played out in an online or virtual environment, the consequences of these choices translate over into the real world, both prompting psychological and physical effects. Studies show that students may even be more anxious and more depressed because social media may have an effect on their self-worth. Because of the constant stream of messages that our students receive each day, we have designed lessons to help students understand and filter these messages. Lessons such as breaking down a song to deter- determine a hidden meaning, watching a documentary called Social Dilemma, which teaches students everything we do online is being monitored and recorded, are great communicators pinpointing the dangers of the societal message. Furthermore, we even challenge our students to go on social media, to not go on social media for two days and then journal how it made them feel. That is a good way to see how it subcon- subconsciously affects them. The Wellness Department within District 211 are benefiting from strong connections with our student service department within each school. Student services and wellness frequently partner in the classroom to create a unified discussion of sensitive material. The outcome of these collaborative efforts allows our students to explore difficult topics in an environment that is fully prepared to support their individual needs. Faculty coming together from different departments to deliver the same message makes it very clear to our students that we are committed to their wellbeing and builds trust within the school community.
Thanks to Beth and Scott for describing all the important information and strategies shared with students through wellness. I'd like to concur with Beth that in the development of the wellness curriculum, it has been very positive for our students and has also developed and strengthened the connection between wellness and student services. Whether the connection is with a trusted adult or a member of the student support team, wellness and student services try to connect students. To start, I'd like to describe how we have taken a multidisciplinary approach to supporting our students for many years now. When a student enrolls in one of our high schools, they are assigned to a school counselor, which in turn links them to a student support team. This team consists of other school counselors, a school psychologist or social worker, and administrator. Each team meets on a weekly basis to discuss individual students that are struggling and may need assistance, whether it be academically, socially, or emotionally. Aside from these weekly meetings, the team can help problem solve or assist with any student situation at any time. The team can be additional support for a student or additional support for a colleague to consult about a situation. The assigned school counselor is typically a student's first point of contact. We spend time during the student's freshman year and during subsequent group guidance lessons to explain the role of a school counselor as well as the extended team that includes a psych or social worker. The three main areas we help with are academics, post-high school planning, and social-emotional learning. Even though their school counselor serves as their first point of contact, we do spend time as situations arise to introduce and reinforce the additional team members to help them. The team approach ensures that there is always someone available to help, but also tries to make that circle a little more familiar to a student. In this way, a student may be become familiar with a network of trusted adults. The ultimate goal is to foster connections with students so they feel comfortable sharing their stories with us. Now Eric will share more specifically how we have students conscientiously think about these connections and share that information.
Beyond the student support teams, each of our buildings work to create explicit opportunities for connection between students and staff members. While it's not always possible to force these connections to take place, we can create systems where connection is more likely to occur. Research on trauma indicates that having one trusted adult in a person's life can help that person in overcoming challenges associated with adverse childhood experiences. We also know as adults that having just one person to trust makes all the difference in life. So in an effort to facilitate every student having that one person they can go to, we've built systematic structures in our buildings. Our work with equal opportunity schools started as a way to open access to AP coursework. One aspect of EOS is a student survey where students have the opportunity to identify a trusted adult. We're then able to pair staff members with students who identified them as a trusted adult to facilitate conversations between the two. You've heard quite a bit about our wellness classes. Another area they contribute to is the identification of trusted adults. In our freshman wellness classes, students are asked to identify trusted adults and log those names into their student readiness plans. Using the student readiness plan, an additional layer of connection occurs once per semester when teachers who have identified as a trusted adult are emailed a list of students who identify them as such. This helps to reinforce the connection, strengthening and forming bonds between students and staff members. Each of these examples emphasize to students and staff the importance of having someone you can trust and the expectation that someone in the building can be that person. Antonette will now share some of the ways we proactively educate our staff on how to respond when experiencing a student in crisis.
Fostering connection through trusted adults is important for so many reasons, but especially important for a student to feel supported when something is not going well or they are being harmed in some way. First, let's begin with mandated reporting. As educators, we are all mandated reporters. So it is important for all staff members to understand how, what, and when a situation needs to be reported. A mandated report must be made when there is reasonable cause to believe that a child known to them in their professional or official capacity may be an abused or neglected child. Therefore, each building reviews with staff who is a mandated reporter and how to fulfill the duties of a mandated reporter. We share what constitutes a call to DCFS along with the type of information required.
We share what constitutes a call to DCFS, along with the type of information required for a report. With mandated reporting, staff connects with a student services member when making a call. Another point that we emphasize is when in doubt, make the call. If a situation places a seed of concern, let DCFS make the call on whether or not they will take the case. We also review building procedures on what to do when a student is in crisis during the school day or if we gain knowledge beyond school hours. Most importantly, students can report an incident to anyone in our buildings. They will listen and connect the student with a member of student services or administration. Students can also report any type of situation by using the Report a Safety Concern icon located on their school-issued iPad or located on each school's main website. It is not uncommon for administrators to receive these reports during evenings and weekends. A report requiring immediate attention will result in prompt responses with communication to the parents and local police. In whatever format the information comes to us, we will follow up each time. Now Eric will detail more of what that support looks like when a student works with a member of student services.
Once a student arrives in student services during a crisis, they're connected with an adult for support. While the student's counselor is the go-to person, any member of the student support team may be the person who meets with the student. As you might imagine, students in crisis come to our offices in a range of emotional states. They likely feel anxious about what they're there to talk about, distraught by what occurred, and sometimes disoriented by all the emotions they're feeling. In each case, it's our job to help them regulate their emotions and calm themselves down so that they can access the part of their brain that allows them to think clearly and communicate effectively. We then ask them to share the reason they're in our office. For context, one of the first things we teach our students during their meetings with counselors is that our conversations are confidential. This means that our conversations stay between us, except when it involves danger to self or others. In fact, students between the ages of 12 and 17 have specific rights to this confidentiality written into law. That said, the focus of our supportive one-to-one conversation is building supports around the student. As a result, once we've processed with the student, we then look to involve their parents in the conversation and include other school personnel like administrators when appropriate. We always offer to support those conversations by either being there with the student or by helping them to plan it out ahead of time. Throughout this process, we ask staff members to consult with other mental health professionals in the school and within their professional organizations to ensure the thought process is taking into account all facets of Illinois law, mandated reporting, and school code. When a student is willing to move forward with reporting an incident or when we're forced to break confidentiality for the reasons already mentioned, we would proceed with involving the appropriate parties through a lens of support and with safety in mind. Oftentimes, that brings us to contact the administrator on our student support team to collaborate on keeping the student safe and supported in the school environment. Jeanette will now talk through that process for you.
There are multiple ways in which an administrator may be informed of a report of sexual harassment or sexual assault. It is critical to note, as you heard in the beginning of this presentation, that the primary focus for us remains on creating a positive school culture that emphasizes building trusting relationships with our students. As indicated by Antonette and Eric, this is essential in helping our students feel comfortable enough to come forward to an adult. The connections built in our school are organic and fruitful. Oftentimes, administrators receive this type of report from a student services member, a counselor, a social worker, a school psychologist, or from another staff member, such as a teacher, coach, student supervisor, or support staff. A report from an act of sexual violence could also be reported to an administrator through our district's online Safety Concern link. Our students have access to this link 24 hours a day through their school-issued iPad or through each school's website. This report is received by the school's entire administration, as well as the school's police consultant. In addition, there is also a 24-hour hotline phone number, as well as a Title IX complaint form that can be found on our district's website. Regardless of how a report reaches a school administrator, a trauma-informed response is taken. These types of reports are responded to with a sense of urgency, thoughtfulness, and compassion. The first critical step is ensuring that the student has the necessary support throughout the process. The student is provided the opportunity to have an identified trusted staff member present during the information gathering session. School administrators and the Student Intervention Office are responsible for investigating the occurrences of disciplinary or school safety incidents. According to school policies, a hostile or offensive environment that may involve sexual orientation, uncomfortable or inappropriate physical contact, verbal joking, teasing, questions, or anecdotes, or offensive remarks of sexual nature constitute sexual harassment. This also entails a student being abused through any sexual misconduct, whether verbal, written, or electronic communication. During this school year, many District 211 administrators receive training on Title IX sexual harassment, with a primary focus on investigations, supportive measures, and decision-making. The team works closely with the district's designated Title IX coordinator when events of misconduct that are sexual in nature arise to determine if this meets the threshold for a violation of Title IX. More details pertaining to the Title IX process can be found in the accompanying written report. As Josh referenced earlier, there are a variety of scenarios that may occur. An incident may have happened within the school setting during the school day for a school-related event or activity. Sometimes, events of sexual violence that have occurred outside of the school setting are reported to schools. If the event occurred outside of the school realm, the school administrators must assess whether there is a nexus to the school. In other words, does the event that occurred have any connection with the school? Any illegal action related to sexual assault or harassment that happens outside of the school setting but has a significant disruption to the learning environment can result in school disciplinary action. Administrators swiftly begin the multi-step process of investigation. Each student involved is afforded due process. The investigation entails the gathering of statements and pertinent information from the individual reporting the incident, those who may have been impacted, any potential witnesses, and the accused individuals. School administrators work alongside the student services staff and our school resource officer to support all of the individuals involved throughout this process. An important factor to consider is that these types of incidents can transform over time. Therefore, the school's response would vary as the incident evolves. The initial report may be isolated and not have any direct connection to the schoolhouse. However, over the span of time, additional details may come to light about the same incident that may result in a continuation of the investigation. Subsequently, we would be able to intervene and issue school consequences. Ultimately, it is imperative that all individuals are held accountable and that justice is served. Throughout the process, we are mindful that any criminal act that occurs would result in the police taking over. It is necessary that school administrators do not interfere or jeopardize a police investigation. We continue to work alongside the local police and assist with any legal ramifications, such as arrests and/or court orders of protection. As a school, our ultimate goal is that all of our students remain physically and emotionally safe. Students who have been found to be responsible for verbal, physical, sexual misconduct with a nexus to school are subject to disciplinary action that may include suspension or, if significant enough, can result in expulsion or removal from the school for up to two years. Unfortunately, we are sometimes faced with the challenge of situations in which the events are not connected to the schoolhouse and the student family chooses not to press charges. Schools must abide by the guidelines and policies in place to protect the rights of all students. Therefore, students impacted by the events are not able to receive the details of the offender's school consequences. We understand that this can be frustrating for the students and families. The additional layer that is crucial to the school's response is the continued emotional support needed for the students impacted by the incident. It is common for students who have been placed, who have been impacted by unwanted sexual advances, to be placed on a safety plan. This plan is developed by the student stakeholders, including the student, parent guardian, administrator, counselor, and other critical members of the team. They collectively identify potential triggers that may cause a disturbance and establish effective strategies to provide support for the student throughout the school day. These triggers may include topics presented in daily lessons or events that occur in the hallways. These plans may be renewed as needed on an annual basis. We pride ourselves and our professional and compassionate team of counselors, social workers, psychologists, to support our students throughout this process. Additionally, District 211 routinely partners with local agencies. Antonette and Scott will address these details shortly, but first, Beth will speak to the work we do to provide our students with social emotional strategies.
We not only have a wellness curriculum with a foundation where prevention is the focus, but we also have specific coping strategies for our students to utilize inside and outside of our schools. Our mission of the Wellness Department is for students to learn the skills necessary to advocate for themselves. Students explore what strategy will provide them with internal balance so they can thrive socially, emotionally, mentally, and physically. Journaling, meditation mindfulness techniques, positive self-talk, and exercise are a few tools for their toolbox. Additionally, an app called Teen Hotline, which is accessible on student iPads, provides an experienced crisis professional for teens to talk with during a time of struggle. While these strategies are extremely effective, we strongly encourage our students to communicate with a parent, guardian, friend, teacher, counselor, administrator, or trusted adult to receive the support needed to be well.
We want to support our students in any way that is beneficial to them. Supporting a student in this type of situation really depends on the needs of that student. We can provide individual support with a counselor, social worker, or psychologist to help with immediate needs. The frequency of these meetings depends on the student and situation. Our goal is always to help a student to cope with what they're experiencing in order to allow them to be in an optimal mindset to learn. In addition to individual support, a student may choose to participate in a school-based counseling group. A main goal for our work with students is identification and connection to other trusted adults in the building in order to identify more support and let them know they are not alone. We see that the memory of any type of sexual harassment or assault can surface emotions in different ways during the school day, so having more than one trusted adult can provide a supportive network. Many times, students prefer to use their outside supports in order to process their experience. When a student shares that they are working with a therapist outside of school, we will ask for a mutual release to communicate and collaborate with that outside support if they feel comfortable. We also try to provide connections to outside community resources as well. In terms of what community support is available, Eric will share some details now.
We're very fortunate in Cook County to have access to a resource like Northwest Center Against Sexual Assault, or Northwest CASA. This agency offers a multitude of support options for our students, including a 24-hour hotline, crisis intervention support, individual, group, and family counseling, medical and legal advocacy, and many others. They even maintain a website dedicated to parent and education and resources. In addition to Northwest CASA, there are a variety of other outside therapists who can work with adolescents and young adults and other community agencies like the Kenneth Young Center that can provide support. Some police departments also have social workaround staff who can be used as a legal and community-based support. Regardless of the resource a student is comfortable pursuing, the key is to help establish connections outside of our school so that students and families can continue to heal. Before we conclude this evening, I also wanted to share with you some of our next steps. With our values as our guiding principles, we continue to modify and update our wellness curriculum and are in the process of integrating the concepts and knowledge into our junior and senior wellness courses. We have heavily focused on the integration of the curricular components to this point, and we will now also focus on the instructional methods and strategies utilized. At our recent Spring Curriculum Committee meeting for the Wellness Department, we spoke about collaborating with outside organizations in order to ensure that all of our teachers are well-equipped to navigate the classroom discussions and presentation of sensitive information that comes along with these topics. We will organize these efforts over the summer in order to be more effective in the next school year. Each of our schools intend to improve their connections and collaboration with our community agencies, including Northwest CASA this year and beyond. We also plan to establish a District 211 Wellness Committee, which will focus on promoting the physical, social, and emotional health of our students. This committee will consist of administrators, teachers, school staff, and of course, our students. Potentially, many of the students who spoke here this meeting or last month could be part of this committee to ensure that the things that they can ensure are the continued focus and the topics of which they are so passionate about. If I could just take the last opportunity to speak directly to them tonight, our students, we want you to know that we have heard your voices and are proud that you have had the courage to speak about this topic that impacts not only individuals, but also our collective community. As a school system, we take great pride in supporting our students and families through times of need. We also want our students to advocate for themselves and for their peers. We look forward with great anticipation to be able to work collaboratively with you to ensure that District 211 schools are the safest and most welcoming school communities that they can be. Thank you for the opportunity to present this information tonight.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I... First, after last month's meeting, I was aware of the trusted adult process and so I asked my freshman daughter if she had gone through that yet, and she said no. So when during the freshman curriculum is that introduced?
Sure, so it's introduced through multiple modes. One of the modes is through a survey that students take typically in October in our schools, and it's related to not just trusted adults, it's related to other pieces of social emotional health and other academic pieces, and it's related to our work with equal opportunity schools. Within that survey, it specifically asks for each student to identify two trusted adults in the building. And then we also followed up in our wellness curriculum, and I'll let our wellness chair speak to that.
We partner with the Student Services to deliver suicide prevention with Erica's Lighthouse, and immediately built into that curriculum afterwards, there's a 10 to 15-minute window where the students log on to their SRP, Student Readiness Plan, and within the wellness wheel, the trusted adult is in there, and that is when they check off that they've had suicide prevention, and then they also identify their trusted adult. Typically, since they're freshmen, we don't do this until maybe October or November so they can get to know some teachers in the building or trusted adults within the building.
So to that point then, is it an option to leave that blank?
It is.
Okay, there's no default as far as like if they're, let's say they're in a situation and they need their trusted adult and they're roaming through the wheel, is there another sort of just default mechanism where they can say, "All right, here's your counselor, here's an email." It's not set up that way, it's just a blank line, correct?
Correct. I believe it's a list of teachers, and you can scroll down and select your teacher name. Is that correct?
It is, and there's also a section on the planets outside of that specific wheel, but there is an option for a student to click a button in order to send an email automatically directly to their counselor.
Okay, right, that I'm aware of. I was just wondering, under that trusted adult mechanism as part of that training, if there's something that, if there isn't one that's identified or the student hasn't had a lot of interaction with the faculty or the staff within the three months that they might have been there, that might be an option. The curriculum for the sophomores that go more towards the interaction and relationships, some of the comments that we heard sounds... some of the comments that we heard sounds more like, you know, it could be catcalling in the halls or something along that line where there isn't a relationship, and it's more of a cultural behavioral issue. How is that kind of introduced and defined in the curriculum?
So that would, that would likely be in more of a disciplinary situation as opposed to a relationship piece within the wellness curriculum.
So it would be reactionary, not preventative?
Not necessarily. Our administrators meet with freshmen when they begin their freshman year, and they work through a process of explaining the disciplinary procedures with them and things that are expected and things that are certainly not expected in school. So I can't tell you if they specifically say catcalling as one of the components of that presentation, but certainly respectful behavior is in there, and also those things are specifically mentioned in the student handbook as prohibited.
Okay, so just, my concern is that our curriculum in wellness considers more along the lines of relationship, interaction, things that have developed maybe over time, but not necessarily a respect as far as how to interact maybe with the opposite sex or gender, however you'd like to define that, but with regard to just, you know, proper behavior, something that one person might, you know, just consider horsing around, another person may find that to be something of an offensive nature. So beyond just disciplinary, I think that might be something to look at for our wellness curriculum, defining our behavior outside of relationships. The safety report icon that's on the iPads, is this the same as what's on the website?
Correct.
Okay, so if I was someone to go there, I'm just gonna read the introductory paragraph just so that, you know, I'm trying to empathize with my children, with the children in our community, and if I'm an emotional wreck and I've had some sort of issue, this is what this says. Use this form to report concerning matters of personal and/or public safety that do not require an immediate response. If you are experiencing an emergency, you should immediately call 911. Be aware that concerns submitted using this form may not be viewed by school administrators until the next day, or next school day. All reports will result in an investigation by the administration and possibly law enforcement. I think we can be a little bit more welcoming in that introduction. You know, it kinda, it kinda sounds like it's just gonna go somewhere into the cloud, and it may or may not necessarily be handled immediately or urgently. I do understand the direction for 911. And then with the way we've been handling some of our complaints, do we do any sort of follow-up with our students as far as how that process was for them? I mean, are we looking at a back-end survey or feedback to determine if the, the process that we have in place is serving our students' needs?
I do not believe we've implemented a post-investigation survey.
Okay, alright, that would be something that I think would be something to potentially consider, and I'm very happy to hear that we're looking at a wellness curriculum committee with our students and our stakeholders. I think that would be very beneficial. But as part of that, I definitely would wanna have some sort of goals or something tangible with that, so it's just not an open-ended discussion that, you know, becomes circular in nature. That's all I have on that presentation. Thank you.
I'd like to make some comments, if you don't mind. First of all, thank you for tonight's presentation, putting that information together, it's very much appreciated. I have some statements, I have some questions. Sexual assault is not only people of opposite sex or gender, it can also be people of the same sex or gender, so I wanted to make sure that everybody's understanding of that, and we're not just talking about relationships between sex or genders, but it could be inter as well. Almost 75% of this evening's comments were about sexual harassment and sexual assault, and we heard them loud and clear. I think a consistent message was a clear lack of communication. Some referred to it as transparency, some referred to it as we don't know, some referred to it as nobody told us, but communication seems to be a very important issue that I think we can address and support our students that way. I wanna say maybe it was early last year or the year before that we had drug awareness programs being offered to the community, being offered to parents, siblings, and students. I know I attended several of them, learned what vaping was, learned about devices, things like that, and some of the things that students and young people can do with those. I'd like to know, what are we offering to parents and caregivers in our community about sexual harassment and sexual assault when it comes to what we're doing in our schools? Is there anything beyond our in-building population?
So, you are correct, we have in the past held parent information nights and presentations, and we are happy to begin that again. Obviously, we could do that this year, but that's something that we're happy to put on the schedule with the topic of sexual harassment for parents when we can resume those meetings.
Thank you. I also, you know, I think it's pretty obvious that, you know, we have great procedures, we have very set guidelines, we have a lot of information, but clearly what we're doing now does not seem to be working. At best, we have gaps that are missing the mark, and we need to address those and not rely on what we have today or what's already in plan, but we need to really address those On Slide 7, as Mr. Dombrowski mentioned about at what point are we communicating to our students? I'd like to know exactly when in the curriculum our freshmen are being taught and informed how to report incidences and experiences of sexual harassment. Is it week one, week two, month one, next semester? When are our incoming freshmen, because we need to hit them right away, when are they getting exposed on how to report incidences that they're experiencing or being made aware of?
Sure, I'm happy to get that information for you. It may be slightly different at each school, and so I would not wanna speak tonight about the exact dates uneducated. And so I'm happy to compile that, and I also would ask that we be able to provide the information of when Student Services does that as well, and also when our administrators do that as well, because as we've said before, it's not just one department that's doing this, it's not just one group, and it's not just one time. So I'm happy to put that together.
Thank you. I wanna know when our, when our incoming freshmen are first being exposed, right, and first being educated and informed about our policies, our procedures, in support of what they need. Someone mentioned about colors, right? Green situations, yellow situations, and red situations? I'd like to learn a little bit more about what constitutes a yellow or caution scenario around sexual harassment or assault. Can you maybe expand on that a little bit?
We're also happy to get to those specific examples that are used in class. Again, it's, there are five schools, there are many wellness classes at each school, and so I don't wanna speak off the cuff about a class that I did not directly teach or we did not have a great representation, and so I'm happy to get back to you with specific examples of the lessons that are used.
Thank you. We talked about the importance of students having a trusted adult, a trusted person in their school. I also understand we have staff who may coach or come into our buildings from other schools or even outside of our school district, and I'd like to know what training those individuals are receiving. They're not teachers, they're not social workers, they're not educators in our building, right? But they're coming in for a short period of time, building relationships with our students, especially like a coach, I'll give that as an example, and maybe they can be a trusted adult by their students and their athletes, for instance, and I'd like to know what training or exposure they're getting to support what we have in place here in our buildings, because maybe they teach in a totally different school district and they just come here for a couple hours a day, and I wanna make sure that, that they're also receiving the proper training in support of our policies and programs.
Sure.
Do chaperones receive training on our sexual harassment policies and procedures?
So our chaperones are our school staff, and so they do participate in the training?
Thank you.
Sure.
You mentioned next steps, the 211 Wellness Committee, I also think is very good to see that coming. You mentioned students, teachers, and staff. Is there any thought about having representation from the school board and/or representation from parents of our students to participate in that wellness committee?
I'm not opposed to those concepts.
Great. That's it again, thank you very much.
Yeah, I've got a few, please. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, um, I'm absolutely convinced that there are specific, well-defined processes, supports, and limitations that District 211 is working with. I'm gonna ask some questions, and it's to help me reconcile the difference between what I've heard tonight and what we've heard for two different board meetings. They are, they are this far apart. Has the administration spoken with the students who spoke last month at the board meeting to garner more detail? They spoke for three minutes, and there was a lot more there that I think that we need to understand. Have we spoken to them?
So, directly administration, so we asked each school to reach out to the students who spoke, and we asked them to reach out by whoever would be most supportive, and so what we said was, it could be an administrator, it could be their counselor, it could be a team, and so at some schools, it was the counselor, at other schools, it was an administrator.
Was there feedback that you can share with the board from those students who spoke last month?
The feedback was not substantially different from what we've heard last week, or, I'm sorry, last month or this month.
So there were no more details beyond what was said, is that correct?
I'm not sure. There was certainly a longer conversation with some and a shorter conversation with others, I don't know that I...
Okay. Uh, Title IX, we talk about it, I don't think the students know about it. What are the names of the, of the Title IX coordinators? Can you name them?
Yes, I can.
Okay, what schools, and where are they posted, or how are students informed? Who are the coordinators are?
Yes, so we have one Title IX coordinator for our district, his name is Eric Winkowski, he's the Director of Activities and Athletics. We have two additional complaint managers, so that if someone wants to make a Title IX complaint to a female instead of a male, or in case that the complaint is against Mr. Winkowski, our complaint managers are Kathy Lingel and Mr. Britton. The information is posted on our website under District 211 Information, and there is a specific Title IX website which has the definition of Title IX. It includes a form that you can fill out online, it includes the same form that you can download and fill out in print and mail, and it includes our administrative procedures, which were in the board report, which are very detailed, and we have to exactly follow those, and it includes the training materials that our administrators are trained with, both a separate decision-maker training, a supportive measures training, a title coordinator training, and an overall training. And so the website has all of that information, and it's very detailed.
Yeah, I don't think that, I mean, I understand that you have to have senior administrators involved in the process, but I don't think students are gonna come to the admin building.
If I can speak to Title IX, when we approached Title IX as a board and changed over seven policies to make sure we were in line with Title IX, that is certainly the rights of our students and certainly our staff under Title IX. What is most important within our schools is that our students get to someone they trust and they speak to them, whether it's via a friend, whether it's via a teacher, but it's opening that door. What I would be leery of, I would be leery of expecting our students to understand the law and the detail behind Title IX that is a school we do and we are responsible for, but that does not solve our problem. But our problem is making sure that our students connect to our teachers and our counselors and our people around us who can get them to who they need, and that's, that's the first step.
I agree, I understand that, but it seems like, I mean, that there were many comments specific to Title IX. I think we need to give them the benefit of the doubt that they need some training, that they need to know it exists and how it manifests itself. Okay, I, they know what they're talking about, and I think, I think we have to go beyond that. That's a comment. Uh, okay, you did answer this question directly, I'm gonna reiterate it or iterate it for clarity, two combined things. Are off-campus incidents reported to District 211? If so, how? I think you did explain that. There's a process whereby if we're informed, we do something. Do the students know about that? Let's suppose a sexual assault or harassment occurs off-campus. Do the students know that there are certain limitations, or do they feel free to come to someone in the school and say, "I was at this party and..." You know, is that possible, or is that off limits because of the law?
No, that's exactly what we want. We want them to connect to us.
Yeah, I don't think they understand that.
I, I'm not saying that, I'm talking about what can happen and what can't happen. If something happens off-campus, they, they're not prevented from speaking to us. What we are prevented is in terms of what we can legally do to pursue punishment or to pursue action, but we can get them to the right people and continue to support them within the schoolhouse.
Yeah, I understand that. We're limited by the law, but can we encourage the students, if something's happening off-campus, to come to a trusted adult?
You know, I'm gonna ask the counselors to address that.
Mr. Kramer, I can tell you that our students share many stories with us that happen off-campus, so I think that that's pretty clear to them.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I, our students share many stories with us that happen off-campus, so I don't think that that's a lack of understanding on their part. Perhaps the consequence piece might be newer to them or not understood in terms of consequences, but they come to their counselors to talk about all kinds of stories.
So what I understand is that that information is flowing to the school, and unfortunately, we are kind of a line of social services here, we have, we have to admit that. They're coming to, they're coming to someone in the school, but at times, the school is limited in what action can be taken, is that, is that correct?
As far as the disciplinary nature, yes. Every, every time, I wanna reiterate this, because this is important, every time we provide support, no matter where it happens.
I said that at the top, yes, and the thing is, I don't, I can understand the student's point of view, I reported this, but nothing happened. You know, that seemed to be a constant theme here. Do, do local police departments share information with the school districts about minors who attend District 211 about incidents of sexual assault, harassment, and that's so on and so forth?
That's a tricky question, because each situation is unique, and so to give, unfortunately, I cannot give you a blanket answer. If the question that you are asking me is, every time a sexual assault is reported to police outside of our school, do they immediately come and tell us? I don't think that's the case. If there is, if there is a sexual assault that happens in our school, certainly, and is not reported to us, is reported to someone else, certainly we would work collaboratively. Or if the assault is reported to our school staff, then we work collaboratively with the SRO, but the confidentiality and the reciprocal agreement sharing is, can be individual by nature of the situation.
I understand and appreciate that, but I'm putting, you know, I remember when I was in high school 100 years ago, what happens in school, what happens out there in the community, it's a blur, okay? And from their point of view, I can see that, well, if I reported out here to the police, nothing happens, and if I reported that something happened out there to the school, nothing happens. So I can, you know, I can see why they're confused and angry. So I can, you know, I can see why they're confused and angry. Okay, in the statistics in one of the attachments for this particular section, you provided, I believe, that there were, on average, from 2015 to 2020, 25 incidents plus or minus per year. Increasing from '21 and '15 to '27 in 2019. In 2020, there were 11. That was a COVID year. So there's an increasing trend, okay? Is that... Usually that happens when people understand that things will happen and that there is a learning curve for people to be comfortable and actually report items rather than letting incidences going unreported. And with statistics, and again, you tried to explain, and I think, well, what I want to be clear, the way that the statistics that were provided was, it was total number of incidents per school, okay? And there was a statement, I believe, that said, this could be one person harassing 20 people, or it could be 20 people harassing 20 other people. Which is, if I see a number of 26, which is it? Is it a one-on-one thing, or is it one person being involved in 26 separate harassment incidents?
It could potentially be both, depending on the school and the situation.
Yeah, can you break that out? It really is necessary data to understand the scope of this thing. Is it a big problem, or is it isolated problem where there's one or two individuals who are constant offenders, for the lack of a better word?
We'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. And then the last one, does the administration believe that there is systemic sexual harassment and/or violence in District 211?
Based on what we have heard today and certainly last month, and as many board members have spoken to, there is a disconnect between what are, especially the ladies who presented today and last month, there's a disconnect between their knowledge and feeling of support within our schools and what we have the ability to provide. And that is the connection we need to make. Part of that will come through a better understanding of where that disconnection occurs. Part of it will come from them being a part of the committee to help us to understand that. It also comes from what we spoke to earlier, the connection between all the departments and the wellness curriculum that you've heard. And I'm going to speak to my two wellness teachers in front of me right now. We were together when we started to develop this curriculum, and the whole reason we did it was because that our students needed the concepts to be looping every year with them and growing with them as they matured. So the trusted adult conversation freshman year, does it continue each year?
Correct.
Every item that they're talking about tonight comes back each year and changes to fit the maturity level and the experiences of the student along the way. And when we talk about senior year, which is what we're getting into right now, there was an extreme focus on getting the freshman and sophomore year wellness curriculum up and running. The senior year, the whole goal was by the time they left us senior year after four years of wellness, is they were able to self-advocate for themselves, know how to get help, and know when something wasn't right in their world. And when they talk about the reflection and their ability, their mindfulness of what they're doing, that's a component of it. And what I heard tonight was, I heard from upperclassmen who didn't get that experience. And what can we do with our current seniors before they leave us to make sure that there's some key components to help them as they go out into the world for their own self-protection, for their own ability to get help? And then certainly, they should hear of all the things that we're trying to do for our other students that are within here. So support is certainly important. Education is extremely important. And the ability for them to feel that they can, whether it's themselves, through a friend, through a teacher, to stay connected with us so that we can get them the help that they need. That's the part that we need to make sure is in place for every single student. And these people have taken tremendous steps to make sure that that happens within our educational program. And our student services departments have always been there to be able to help our students along the way.
Can you help me bridge the gap here? I hear from the students that essentially, they believe that this is widespread and unchecked. And from the administration, I've just heard that we have a program in place, but we need to make sure that the students understand. So how do we get those things together on the same page?
I think that's what I was addressing here, is to make sure that our students, as they come through our program and as they touch base with counselors and they touch base within our wellness program, that they understand what we have to offer, who they can connect to, and how they can communicate. And it's not just the victim. It's also the victim's friend. It's, I believe someone mentioned it, someone who hears it as a witness to come forward, because it takes many hands to help someone who's a victim. And sometimes, it can't be the victim themselves. It has to be somebody else who helps connect them.
I don't think a program where the goal is achieved by the end of the senior year is adequate. I think the goal needs to be achieved the freshman year and then reinforced year after year after year.
So the concepts are looped, which means the concepts are reinforced year after year. And then it is instructionally different to meet their level of maturity each year. So it is not repeated in terms of the instructional choices of our staff within it.
So freshmen by, in a normal year, we start in August, so freshmen by mid-September, mid-September, understand what harassment is, that they can say no, and how to report that. Will they, is that a goal that we can achieve for freshmen? Because that's a gap.
So can one of the department chairs speak to the difference between teaching a lesson in one month, in one week, and having a lesson or a concept that goes through the entire year and keeps coming back and being touched to be connected with the students?
We begin freshman year speaking with the counselors. They come into our classrooms and they're speaking with the students. And this is our emotional wellness unit, which is purposely placed right at the beginning of the year. And that's where they do learn that they can reach out, not only for themselves, but for their friends as well, if anything's not going right. And then we do loop this through their freshman curriculum. Just, you know, a month ago, when we were in our reproduction unit for freshmen, we hit on these concepts again. And I know I just met with our Director of Student Services at Palatine, and also our counselors and social workers. And for our juniors and seniors, they're going to get this information right before they go to college again one more time. And that's in addition to also receiving that sophomore year as well.
But it's happening when they're freshmen. The information is not flowing to them quickly enough. And they're not understanding what they're rights of and what they, what they are, they have the power, if they are trained, to report this stuff so that it doesn't happen. The sophomore year, I mean, it's got to be done in the first semester when they're freshmen. You have to have a pretty clear defense.
And that information is presented freshman year, early on, again in September.
And I'm going to go so far to say that we don't train our students.
Pardon me?
I'm going to go so far to say that we make sure our students understand what the school, how they support them, and make connections with our teachers. That's how we get the ability for them to feel comfortable speaking with us and for us to sense when something's wrong, that we can have that conversation with them. It's that relationship building that happens across time. It is one of the reasons why wellness came into our PE program, because that and English are the two classes that kids take every year for us as a requirement.
Thank you.
Going along the lines of what Mr. Kramer said, is there something that we can do with the junior highs? Because kids are starting that a lot earlier age than when they get to high school. I think I would agree that we should coordinate with the two feeder districts and see if we can, in their junior high, start implementing these programs. Because, you know, sexual harassment, sexual assault is probably the hardest thing for somebody to report. And that's historical. And we got to let these young ladies and men know that there's someplace they can go to, that it's not shameful to deal with that. And it's not going to, you know, it's something that's going to be carried on the remainder of their junior high, high school, maybe in college years.
One of our greatest successes that we have found is when we connect our high school students to our K8 students. And that would be something that we can certainly have a conversation with the committee as they form, as to what experiences are they having or unknowns freshman year, that we can help with that bridge with the current curriculum or whatever their experiences are right now in junior high.
I would like to add to that. I appreciate the questions. I think these are excellent questions. I appreciate the presentation and Dr. Small looking forward and trying to summarize some of the activities and the actions that school has taken. I'd really also like to validate the concerns, fears, and the desires of all of our speakers. I think that that's really important. I'd also like to probably apologize that I did not realize what was really happening in our schools, because it's had an impact on you, and I thank you for bringing it forward, because I think that that's really important. I've had the 40 hours of domestic violence training, been a volunteer at Wings, so familiar with a number of things, so thank you. And it's hard to be able to bring that forward and to be able to speak about it. It was mentioned about education. There's some legislation that looks like it's being brought forward, and one of the young ladies had spoken about it with K-12 education and making certain that the kids learn about the harassment, sexual assault, all of those things at an age-appropriate level. Because you can't teach everything in just four years here at the high school. It has to start a lot earlier. And the more our young people hear it and understand how to behave and relate to one another, I think that'll make for a better society as we go forward. One of the things that has touched upon a little bit was about parent education. I think that that's really important. And we really have to take a look at, where are some of our students coming from? Are they coming from a household that has domestic violence? And what are they seeing? And how are they relating what they see to their peers? So I think that that's important. The parent education piece and the understanding a little bit more of domestic violence. Aaron's Law, I'm very familiar with that because I do know that young lady. An extremely tenacious, an amazing young woman to be able to have the strength, the desire, and the motivation to make a change for children. Just amazing. And maybe we need to take that Aaron's Law a step further because society has changed quite a bit. And maybe more of a discussion about rape and the dating violence, things of that nature. And maybe we're talking about that in some of our classes. One of the ladies, and I couldn't hear quite clearly, but one of our speakers talked about some kind of discipline when they were acting out. And maybe what we need to do is take a look again, what's happened to that child? Why is that particular person misbehaving? And really ask questions and listening. And I know we try to do that, but we have to do more of that, if I understood her correctly, because that behavior sometimes is a cry for help. We talked about the trusted adults, and I still believe that we really need to have that web of support and really be able to work on that. One of the other things that came to mind as we were talking about this, we talked about the victims or the survivors, is what I would really like to call it, is the survivors of the sexual assault. But we also need to take a look at the perpetrator. What support does that person need? Because they've got to learn some better skills. If they don't know how to do it, we have to help them move along. Social, emotional support, trauma-informed responses, we have to be able to work at that. I'm very grateful to hear that we've got some next steps. The wellness future, again, Mr. Rosenbloom mentioned about adding a few more people to it, some of the parents, possibly a board member or so. The need for post-evaluations, I think that that's important. Communication is important and making it understandable. And I think that that's kind of been presented a little bit. How does somebody respond to it? And as Mr. Dombrowski had shared, reading that statement is maybe not as welcoming or allows you to really feel like you can report things. But I think all of these things that you brought forward are important. And looking at a plan, what we can do, I think, is impactful for all of our young people. So I thank our young people and I thank our staff for understanding and moving forward. Thank you.
Hi. Forgive me, I have a decent list of questions. But before I start on the decent list of questions, I just want mainly to respond to the students who are watching and who have come forward at the last meeting, the meeting before. I reported abuse to an elementary teacher and that teacher did nothing. I reported abuse to two school counselors in high school who did nothing. Reported abuse, stalking, and harassment to a university, two university professors, officials at my undergrad, and I was told it was a misunderstanding and to drop the class. So I deeply understand how profoundly damaging it is to finally work up the courage to tell someone in a position to help you what is going on and have that person utterly fail. So I hope, trying to keep my voice at a reasonable volume, I hope you can believe me when I say that even the possibility that that has happened with one of our District 211 staff members, if they've heard a report of violence made by a student and they have failed to act, I find it inexcusable. There's no convincing me that there would be a valid excuse for that. So that being said, I want to set forth personally as a board member, a set of expectations that I have. I expect every District 211 staff member to take all student reports seriously and to follow procedure. I expect our wellness teachers to have frank, accurate, and specific conversations with our students about consent, that's not just it, both state and federal laws about sex, and the laws regarding the production, possession, and the dissemination of sexual images. Because those laws represent the minimum standard of human behavior that we're all supposed to accept. And all young people have the right to understand the laws that they are expected to follow. I expect our wellness department chairs to make sure that teachers teach consent in an engaging way. So a worksheet's not going to cut it. I expect information about our policies to be integrated into our wellness curriculum. And I expect that information to be accessible to all students. Obviously, we have improvements to make in both of those areas. I expect our district to invest in violence prevention programs, initiatives, and processes, some of which I see in evidence, more of which I think we could do. I expect our SROs to follow District 211's policies and procedures, to treat students with the utmost care and respect. I expect our students to take these matters seriously and to follow the policies that we've put in place for their safety. And this is all to say that if we can promise our students that District 211 staff and administration will follow through on our commitments 100% of the time, then our students will feel safer and more empowered to come forward should anyone make them feel unsafe. Now that being said, I have what seems to me to be five significant areas where I believe we need to make improvement. And the first one is with the general setting of expectations, which I think Mr. Kramer was actually speaking to previously, is that for me, it's not so much specifically about, you know, "Here's September, here is our unit on Title IX." I don't think that that's necessarily what students are asking for, what would be helpful. But I do think that there needs to be a concentration on a general expectation setting of, you know, how we treat each other and specifically, how you're expected to behave in connection with this school. I hope that is being done. But it seems to me, judging from student feedback, that we need to make some improvements if students feel comfortable catcalling others in the hallways or, as we've heard, we have issues... catcalling others in the hallways, or as we've heard, we have issues with athletes, for example, who are engaging behavior that it seems their policies and procedures have explicitly said is not acceptable. So I think we need to do a better job of studying expectations, and that's a cultural issue. I think we can do a much better job of improving our communication. I think one of the wonderful things that a, a committee could be focused on as a goal, because I do agree with Mr. Dombrowski, they need to have tangible goals. I think one of those things that the committee could do is look at, like, the text on our reporting mechanism on our website, or our general information that's included on these policies in our student, the student handbook, for example, and making that information much more digestible and easy to read. So I think obviously we can make improvements in that area. That would be a great project for our committee, among other things. I have some specific questions about sex ed, you know, that's come up, multiple students have asked, I'll get to those in a moment. I support the student wellness committee. I would be interested in hearing from students who spoke tonight, if the committee would be satisfactory, or if they want a committee in addition to a student council. So I'd be looking forward to feedback on the idea that's presented. And last, I think we could do a good, better job of data collection and reporting. If we could amend an existing survey to have an area where we could collect not just check-a-box data, but more narrative data, I think that would be useful, and not so disruptive, to create yet another survey that I, I would worry our students, you know, to just treat like yet another thing to fill out, and like a joke, because this is a serious matter. And then I would like to see, you know, we get a student discipline report, we get all sorts of reports. I would like to see a, an annual Title Nine report, to come before the board and be publicly available. All right. And I'm trying to go fast, so I don't waste all this time. So, oh, and included in that annual report, not just Title Nine violations, I'd like to see the number of safety plans we've had to initiate for our students on an annual basis. So, is sex ed offered in our special education programs?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Is it the same curriculum that's offered in our mainstream classrooms?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to see curricular examples from both, please. So, you know, and this is not for discussion here, but just in, you know, in the next month, I would like to see examples of the curriculum that we give our mainstream classrooms, and I would like to see examples of the curriculum offered to our special education students. If a staff member's found to have ignored a student report, what is the administration's response?
So that would, it would depend on what type of report we're talking about, but certainly it would be anything from a, a conversation, documented conversation, up to disciplinary action, depending on what it is. I mean, they're mandated reporters, there are consequences for not reporting.
Okay. Let's see. Let's get that one.
And, and there's a clear path for escalation, correct, that the student can follow?
The student can follow.
So if a student is aware that the mandated reporter breached their duty as a mandated reporter, they're basically informed, hey, your teacher has to take this up a notch, they blew you off, your next step is this. Is that something that the students are made aware of?
If I could expand that, to me, it would be, if, if I get, as a student, if I, if I believe this response was unsatisfactory, regardless of it's Title Nine, or bullying, or mandated reporter, like, what do I do if, if I feel like the person who I've chosen to report to, their, their response is unsatisfactory? What would I do then? Then I escalate to somebody else.
Sure.
Okay. And, and, and here's, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that the administration has assured us that all adults, all of our staff, are, are people that can be reported to. I appreciate that. I just want to reiterate how important it is that no one drops the ball, because if such a person does drop the ball and does not respond properly, that makes it infinitely harder for that student to then try again. Each time it gets harder. So it's really, really important that we don't drop the ball on the first, on the first go-around. Our parents, our parents allow to pull their students out of the portions of the wellness classes that deal with sex ed.
Is that two hundred a step?
Yes, they are. We have, they have the ability to take them out of the sex ed course.
How common is that? Would, if you had to estimate, how common would it be?
Not common at all. I'd say maybe three or four in my entire career.
Okay, good. Would you classify our sexual health curriculum as abstinent, only sexual risk avoidance education, or comprehensive? I mean, what kind of wellness curriculum?
We, we teach abstinent, but we take the next step sophomore year with what if?
Okay, so, this is, I just want to make sure I've heard you properly. So our, our freshmen, our freshman curriculum would be under a different classification than the remainder? I mean, is our, is our, do our freshmen only learn about abstinence?
No, we build, we build our freshman curriculum on healthy relationships. That's, that's the foundation of the whole entire curriculum. So we, you know, hammer that home pretty thick and heavy, and not just once a year. We do it with, you know, in our decision-making unit. I mean, through our critical learning standards, it's expanded. Healthy relationships are talked about all the time.
That I understand, and that, that usually refers, you know, a lot of lessons about dating violence and, and the cycle of abuse, and then what, you know, what those yellow flag behaviors look like, so that you can hopefully stop the cycle before it starts and it becomes much harder. It's that I'm very familiar with those lessons. But at the same time, I think it's really important that we don't, we still need to be frank and specific. I mean, I mean, I know the average age of first sexual experience is seventeen, but that, that's still an average, and it represents a wide range. So I hope that we are not erring on the side of infantilizing or preserving some sort of naivety for freshman year, when our students are obviously saying there's especially a disconnect between freshman expectations and upperclassmen, you know? And, and this relates to how the law is written in Illinois, that our age of consent is seventeen. And we've heard several students refer specifically that freshmen in particular can feel intimidated and, and even unsafe when they're around upperclassmen because of the, you know, the age dynamic and different expectations. So I just want to make sure that our freshmen in their wellness classes are still getting the frank and specific information they need. I appreciate that we talk about dating violence and, and stuff. I just want to make sure that, you know, I, I would, I would be very uncomfortable if we were teaching some sort of, like, abstinence-based curriculum in freshman year where we don't really cover in specificity what sort of expectations students should carry with them all through high school, and then all of a sudden that changes to sophomore year. I mean, that wouldn't make a lot of sense to me. So...
Sure. We're, we are, as we've said multiple times, we're, we're continuing to modify, continuing to get better. And so those are certainly areas that we have our eyes on for this summer, is to increase the robust nature of what we already do. And as Dr. Small said earlier, the looping piece is the piece where we continue to talk about concepts, but actually get deeper and deeper and more age-appropriate as students get older and do them.
Okay. I'd like, I'd like also just to see an example of the Aaron's Law curriculum materials. I have experience teaching those. I know some of them, some of the curriculums can be really good. There have been others that I've been asked to teach that have been so bad I've actually refused. So I, I would really like to see an example of the curriculum that we use to address that law. There's a wide range. Let's see. So it seems as if students, I believe the answer is yes, but I want to check, if students want to speak to a school counselor of a different gender identity than the one that they are assigned, to make such a report, they can do that, right?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be wonderful. So on Slide nineteen, it says here that investigation processes, and it says a prompt response. I want to know what prompt means. Like, is there a deadline? Is that more specific? What is a prompt response?
So prompt response would mean immediately after it's reported to us. And so we're, we're not gonna table something like that till later, right? And so no matter what time of the day it is, we would begin the investigation immediately. And what I would say is, we would begin the support process first, prior to the investigation.
Appreciate that. Now, I asked this question to the admin, to Dr. Small, who thankfully responded to the whole board, so I know we're all aware. So I'm just reiterating this for the students who are watching. So if students feel unsafe, but do not choose to make a claim under Title Nine and do not qualify for mandatory reporting, which I hope has been made clear, you know, has very specific definitions, can they still qualify for a safety plan?
Yes.
Yeah. I think that's really important to know. Let's see. Do we have enough student support staff to meet the existing need?
By student support staff? Are you talking about counselors, psychologists, and social workers?
Yeah, but we have a lot of people in our interdisciplinary teams, and school counselors. Do we have enough staff to meet the existing needs to follow through on our commitments for prompt responses, making sure we're always available, et cetera?
Anytime there's an emergency situation, or a student needs individual help, that certainly pulls the counselor. And the more intense that conversation is, that pulls them from doing other responsibilities that they would have. We do, we do not have people that are solely dedicated to the response to someone in crisis, because they always have additional duties. So that's why you hear the hesitation.
Yeah.
They will respond. I know they will respond. And when they respond in a, a crisis, or any type of situation that needs immediate attention, they will. But what happens is then they're, as an academic counselor, that might get pushed to the side because of this component. So that's why we hesitate, is everybody has a full plate.
Of course. And that's why, that's why I want to know, as a board member, you know, do we need more people? And I hope, I hope if that were the case, I would, I would, I would certainly be open to that idea. I just wanted to make sure. I mean, this is, this is a big commitment we're making to our students, so I want to make sure we're properly resourced to follow through. Let's see. So where do LGBTQIA students go for community support? I appreciate that Northwest Pass is on the list. I'm very familiar with their work, and they do, they, they do great work. But not all of our community services are necessarily LGBTQ-friendly. So are we, are we taking the time to make sure that we're providing a diverse range of community connections for our students that need those services?
Yes, we also refer to Kenneth Young Center.
Okay. That's a shame.
Let me add to that one, because Kenneth Young Center does have dedicated to LGBTQ's young people. They have a center that's in, it's right at the edge of what, Palatine there on, so they do have
Yeah.
Quite a dedicated group.
So I would like the student wellness committee to report to the board regularly as other committees do. That would be a preference of mine. I also support parent nights, parent webinars as well. Not all parents are able to come, you know, in the evening hours and outside school. So webinars available would be great. Your information nights, particularly on electronic sexual harassment, you know, with the taking, consumption, and disseminating of non-consensual nude photography. Because, you know, not all of us are aware of the complexities around that issue, but at the same time, as we've heard, touched on by young people, it's a pervasive issue. So I think that we could help fill an educational gap there. So I support that. And I'm, just an idea, again, to throw out, this is my last point, is that I'm wondering if, to Mr. Kramer's point before about expectation setting, and, you know, how do we tell our young people what their rights are under Title Nine? I'm wondering if an easier way to communicate that information would be to, to condense what we've kind of talked about tonight, our wonderful existing policies and procedures, into something that looks like a student bill of rights and this sort of issue, because it sounds to me like that's what students need. They need to look at a website or a piece of paper, or modify one of our existing pieces of paper or website, to see very clearly, this is, these are what your rights are when you're connected with our programs and our schools. If you feel these rights have been violated, this is, these are the supports that we have in place. So, you know, that's just an idea that occurred to me as I was listening to this. And lastly, thank you for all your time and putting this together, and for walking this all through this, this subject. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
May I ask one more question then? With all of this information, and all of the dialogue, and everything that's come forward, do you think, what would be a good, at what point could we maybe get a response to what's transpired, what's happened, how we're going forward? Joshua answered?
What, what specifically would you like Miss Glubputz as, as a response?
Just, just, you know, we've got a lot of information. We're looking at some next steps. At what point could the board find out how we've implemented some of those things? What, what have we done? And how we're continuing? Would it be in, in the fall after the summer? Because maybe, you know, would that be time when they're working on it a little more?
Yeah, I think that, I think the fall would be an appropriate time. That would give us time to establish the wellness committee, to begin to meet and form a team. And also, it would give the wellness teachers an opportunity to dive back into the curriculum with the feedback that we've received tonight and last board meeting, and make the modifications necessary. We could certainly bring an update to you then.
Okay. And if it could be a presentation, because we do have members of our community who, who do watch the, the video, the taping of it, so it's good information. And I think, you know, the more information that's out there, the better. So, thank you.
If I can, and I just one note here. In our schools, first of all, by no means are we perfect, nor do we ever say that we're perfect. We will never say that. As educators, we are always striving to be better. But the, the component that we know, we know works, and it doesn't matter what the situation is. It doesn't matter whether it's an academic issue, whether it's an issue at home, whether it's a personal issue, it doesn't matter what it is. If we have a relationship with our students, we can take a step to help them. And when you hear us speak to the trusted adult, that was one thing we found success in, in one specific spot, and that was trying to get kids who are not connected to AP classes connected. And what we saw was, all it took was that adult to stand by them and help them who they trusted, and they would start to do things they didn't think they could do. And what we're trying to do is continue that connection. We haven't, but, but we're schools of two thousand to twenty-eight hundred kids. We don't have it with every student. And, and none of us will admit that we do. But that's what we strive for, because we know, we know that when we have that relationship, and then we know what, then they have at least one connection, if not a whole bunch. It doesn't matter, we'll be able to help them. And that's the disconnect that I heard tonight. I heard the disconnect that there, there was not a connection for some of our students, and that's not acceptable for us. And we continue to try to reach to them. And that's also why, in any situation, we try to reach their network, their friends, people who notice something, because that's our connection back to them. And absolutely, we want procedures, we want things in place, we want to make sure kids understand what's going on. Absolutely. They have a right to that. But they also have a right to understand that there's at least one person, if not more, at that school who will help them. And that's part of what we try to build, is that relationship, because that will transcend any other issues in their four years with us and beyond.
Okay, thank you very much.
Point of order. It's ten o'clock. There's a lot more to go. Can we take a ten-minute recess, please?
Sure. Is it okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be back at, what, ten twenty-seven? This one is the facilities and capital improvements update and tax relief information. Again, Dr. Small, if you'd like.
There's been a longstanding commitment and the expectation of our district to provide safe, functional, adaptable facilities that contribute to our educational program and have a positive impact on our students. As a component of its financial and operation goals, the district's long-range capital outlet plan is designed to align with the strategic plan, building utilization, and the improvement and maintenance schedule as it serves our educational goals. Chief Operating Officer Lauren Hummel, Controller and Treasurer Barb Peterson, and Director of Facilities and Purchasing John Paulman will present our facilities and capital improvement plan and tax relief information as it applies to the two agenda items coming up tonight.
Thank you, and good evening. Tonight, I am pleased to present with Barb Peterson and John Paulman to provide the board with an update on our facilities improvement projects relative to our ten-year facility plan. The second
The second portion of our presentation will focus on providing the Board with updated information on possible tax relief options as we discuss further uses of the land sale proceeds that were received this past November. The Board established a priority in its strategic plan to, to develop a 10-year facility improvement plan for the district. Facility improvement projects are categorized in one of three ways. We have our major capital projects, our life safety projects, and our routine maintenance projects. All of these projects are budgeted in the Operations and Maintenance Fund. The timeline that's provided here corresponds with that that is in our five-year financial projection. Capital projects are those which are primarily prioritized in our strategic plan and include major renovations to spaces such as our washrooms, locker rooms, cafeterias, and outdoor spaces. Over the next five summers, we have several projects planned, including completion of washrooms, locker rooms, and one additional cafeteria. Classroom modernization is also planned in a limited number of spaces in each school. Our life safety projects include those that are approved on a survey by the State Board of Education. Our current projects are scheduled for completion through the summer of 2023, and the Board will determine the next life safety date. Finally, our routine maintenance projects include life cycle replacements, smaller improvement, improvement projects, and general upkeep, including paving, roof replacements, and flooring. Costs for all three of these project categories are included in our five-year financial projection and will be detailed later in the presentation. Over the past several months, the Board has approved bids for projects scheduled for completion this summer. Included in this chart is a summary of the planned work by facility improvement category. John will go into more detail on several of these slides in the upcoming information presented this evening.
Restroom renovations have been completed at Conant, Schaumburg, and Hoffman Estates High Schools. This summer, we begin restroom renovations at Palatine and Frem. To accommodate summer school, roughly half of the restrooms will be renovated each of the next two summers. Restroom improvements will include ADA compliance, updated plumbing fixtures and infrastructure, electrical systems, HVAC systems, and interior finishes. In addition to renovating the existing restrooms, new single toilet restrooms will be constructed at each school. This year, life safety projects will take place primarily at Palatine and Conant High Schools. Doors and door frame issues were identified at both sites and replacements will be installed. Maestory restoration work will be completed on the west elevation at Conant. At Palatine, the air handlers and the autos and project lead the way areas are in excess of 40 years old and will also be replaced. Elevator improvements were approved on the life safety survey at all schools. This summer, Palatine and Conant are scheduled for their elevator updates. Conant will have one passenger and one freight elevator modernized, and Palatine will have one passenger elevator modernized. Improvements will include replacement of the elevator pump units, doors, safety devices, controls, and the interiors of the passenger cars will receive new finishes and lighting. The oldest electrical panels at Palatine and Conant High Schools were identified in the life safety survey for replacement. The electrical panels are original to the buildings with the newest panels dating from 1975. The power outages required to change panel components will be scheduled outside of summer school operational hours. Roof replacements will be made at both Palatine and Conant High Schools. The current roofs are over 30 years old and have reached the end of their useful lives. The roof areas over the Palatine kitchen, Conant's auditorium, and Conant's pool have been approved on the life safety survey for replacement. Remaining roof sections will be replaced due to overall age and condition as general operations and maintenance projects. Paving replacement work is scheduled at Conant and Schaumburg High Schools. The primary sections of the replacement are highlighted in yellow, with Schaumburg on the left and Conant on the right of the slide. Additional asphalt patching and concrete replacement will be completed as necessary at all building locations. The schools will coordinate summer school traffic around the paving improvements. Schaumburg High School is the only large high school which does not have a digital display incorporated into the school monument sign. Until recently, digital signs had not been allowed under Village Code. A new monument sign will be constructed in the location of the current sign with replacement of the school sign scheduled to begin late this summer or early fall.
The projects highlighted are part of the district's long-range facility improvement plan. With each facility improvement project, we conduct a needs assessment to evaluate the impact on students, total cost, overall condition of our existing facilities, and the health and life safety designation. The critical area of needs assessment is the age and condition of our roofs. The targeted age of a roof is 30 years, however, roofs are evaluated each year to determine their overall condition, and they may exceed or fall short of their targeted age. The summary here provides the overall age of our roofs by year. The data shows the age of our roofs if no improvements are made each year between 2021 and 2035. Currently, with 23% of our roofs at or above 30 years in age, we are prioritizing a greater number of roof replacements each year to maintain roof inventory that is near the expected age of 30 years. By 2035, we are just higher than our 50% target. Maintaining consistent replacement of roofs each year allows us to provide safe facilities while targeting our replacement cycles near the 30-year mark. Mechanical equipment is another area of needs evaluation as it pertains to the functionality of our buildings. The district maintains extensive mechanical systems that are evaluated annually. The chart before you gives you the categories of replacement that will be necessary over the next five, 10, and 15 years. Costs associated with this equipment are extensive, and we must continue to evaluate and replace the equipment to avoid system failures in our buildings. Over the next five years, we anticipate replacement costs of about $18 million for just roof and equipment replacement. By the end of 15 years, the total is $50 million. Information on facility improvement costs in our five-year projection model will be shared later on this evening. Costs for roofs and mechanical equipment are spread over both replacement and life safety categories in our budget and projection model. As one of our most utilized spaces, our auditoriums are in use throughout the school day and often tends well into the evening. In our current operational environment, our auditoriums are optimized throughout the day as they are one of the few locations in our buildings that can accommodate large groups of students while observing social distance guidelines. The Board prioritized conducting an auditorium study at each one of its schools in the strategic plan. Auditoriums are original to our schools while having only underwent updates to sound and lighting features in 2015. A full study has been completed, providing recommendations for updates to the space, including seating, acoustics, stage and lighting solutions. Review has also been given to improve ADA accessibility in each space. Cost estimates are in the range of $1 to $2 million per school, depending on the scope of the work completed. Each school maintains a list of facility priorities that would improve building spaces for optimal programmatic operational use. Priorities on this slide are those that would benefit instruction or extracurricular programs. Priorities include updates to performing arts spaces, classroom and lab renovations, outdoor field efficiency, and modernized classroom arrangements. A small number of classroom updates are included in our current tenure plan, while other improvements that are listed on the school priority list here are not. Operational priorities are provided for review by school and also global priorities are set here at the district level. Priorities include replacement of the existing public address system and fire alarm systems which are becoming antiquated in our technology, lighting and sound improvements, outbuilding improvements, and additional storage options, addition of air conditioning, and additional improvements to areas such as digital signage, parking lot improvements, and cafeteria. The district continues to update LED lighting cameras and parking lots each year, however, the remainder of these items are not included in our five-year facility plan. Included for your review is a summary of the operations and maintenance, capital outlay expenditures by category, which are tied to our 10-year facility plan as well as that of our five-year financial projection. In fiscal year '23, you'll notice that there's an additional $5 million allocated toward major capital projects as presented in consideration of the abatement in one of the agenda items this evening. Should the Board wish to allocate a larger portion of land sale proceeds toward capital expenditures, we would need to determine the appropriate year to allocate that expense. During the February Board of Education meeting, we presented information on an abatement of the 2020 levy. In discussions surrounding the abatement, the Board has since requested additional information on providing tax relief options for our community. Following the last Budget and Finance meeting, we've worked closely with our legal counsel and representatives from EDRED to further pursue information on legislation that would provide one-time tax relief without permanent impact to the district's levy, and we will share that with you this evening. The Board of Education has a policy establishing a minimum fund balance of 33% in the following year's expenditures in both the aggregate operating funds as well as the educational funds. Since 2012, the Board has taken deliberate action to reduce the district's operating fund balance to a level that is closer to the minimum threshold. The district has utilized fund balance to provide tax relief of more than $33 million to taxpayers by way of abatement, has funded numerous facility improvement projects, and have reduced the district's IMR of pension liability and corresponding annual costs. As of the last school year, the district's operating fund balance was at 45% and the educational fund at 39%. As prioritized in the strategic plan, the district sought feedback on the best course of action to optimize its 62-acre asset over the past several years. Following a survey and numerous reports, the sale of land was deemed the best way to optimize its value. The land sale was complete this past November, and proceeds were received in the amount of $17.8 million. These proceeds were received and deposited in the Operations and Maintenance Fund. Following sale of the land, the Board has discussed possible uses of the proceeds. Abatement through one of two means will be presented in further detail tonight, with two agenda items presented for consideration. A traditional abatement is processed by the county and will lower the levy by the determined abatement amount. This abatement or reduction is permanent. Barb will explain this in more detail tonight, but once the abatement is filed, it will reduce the current year's levy and all future levies by the abatement amount. The second means of abatement is through a pursuit of legislation that allows for a one-time abatement that allows the district's levy amount to be restored to the original amount under PTAL the following year. Cook County is subject to the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, commonly known as PTAL, which limits the annual increase in our levy to the lesser of 5% or the increase in the Consumer Price Index plus new property growth. For the 2020 levy, we were limited to a CPI increase of 2.3% for existing property owners plus new growth estimated to be at 4/10 of 1%. Another name for the final levy amount is the aggregate extension base. This is the term used in the PTAL law. This sets the foundational amount for determining the levy limit for the following year. Reducing the aggregate extension base through regular abatement is a permanent reduction to this base and impacts every levy year in the future. In December, the Board passed a levy at the PTAL limit of $241.7 million. This is an increase to existing taxpayers of 2.3% from the prior year levy. An additional 4/10 of 1% increase would come from new property on our tax rules for a total increase in tax revenue to the district of 2.73%. Administration has proposed a $3 million abatement to this levy, which, as mentioned earlier, would be a permanent reduction to the aggregate extension base. The impact of the abatement to the existing taxpayer would be to reduce their tax increase this year from 2.3% without the abatement to 1% with the abatement. We would still capture the full increase related to new property growth estimated to be at 4/10 of 1%. Over the last decade, District 211 has had an intentional decline in fund balance levels achieved through levy abatement, facility improvement projects funded through fund balance, and reducing our pension liabilities. The green line on this chart represents our current fiscal year where you will see an increase in fund balance. This increase is primarily due to the receipt of the land sale proceeds of $17.8 million. Should the Board proceed with an abatement to the 2020 levy in the amount of $3 million as recommended and decide to fund additional capital initiatives in the amount of $5 million, the long-range projection demonstrates a continued slow decline in fund balance over the next five years while still maintaining levels that exceed the fund balance minimums outlined per policy. The proposed levy abatement carries with it a certain amount of risk as it is a permanent reduction to the aggregate extension base. And while the fund balance levels are projected to be acceptable in the next five years, there is risk that fund balance levels will continue to decline thereafter. A potential solution to providing taxpayer relief without a permanent reduction to our aggregate extension base would be to propose legislation in Illinois that would provide a one-time abatement of surplus funds from the District 211 tax levy without impacting the aggregate extension base. The solution would require enlisting the help of a local legislator to help get this bill passed through the Illinois House and Senate. If this bill were passed, it would allow us to abate an amount one time and not have a compounding effect on our levy. The solution has multiple benefits. First, it provides taxpayer relief without the risk of permanent reduction to our levy basis. Second, the relief would be administered by Cook County. And third, it would provide relief to all taxpayers in our boundaries. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we were able to do a similar abatement under the Property Tax Relief Grant and not permanently impact our levy basis. This would work the same way, it would just require us to get, to do additional work to get those results. We have talked to EDRED, and we believe a bill of this type could gain momentum. Legislation that is specific to a single district is not uncommon. EDRED has already contacted a local legislator who is very interested in working with us. If this abatement were to provide significant tax relief, it is likely they would be willing to take on this piece of legislation. With the assistance of our attorneys and EDRED, language has already been drafted for a bill to allow a one-time abatement for District 211. It is simple, clean language that said that if we abate our 2021 levy, our aggregate extension base for the 2022 levy would be the highest amount allowable under PTAL, assuming no abatement. If a legislator were to support this process, they would likely add this language onto a bill that is already in process. If the bill were to stall, this could transfer to another bill and keep moving through the process. Additional supports would be enlisted from EDRED and our bond attorneys from Chapman and Cutler to help monitor this legislation and push it through. A bill could be passed as early as May and signed the following month by the Governor, but this is not going to be a quick process. Once signed into law, the Board of Education would need to take action to abate the 2021 levy. Again, this draft legislation amends the PTAL language and allows District 211 and District 211 only to have a one-time abatement which allows a reset of the aggregate extension base the following year. This would accomplish the goals of providing taxpayer relief without the risks associated with the permanent reduction to the levy base. The receipt of the levy proceeds with a one-time, I'm sorry, the receipt of the land sale proceeds is a one-time receipt of revenue. The abatement under this proposed legislation would be a one-time expense. These would offset each other in whole or in part and have no compounding effect to the district. This slide provides a reminder of the results of the five-year forecast we shared last month. In Scenario 1, we abate $2 million. In Scenario 2, we have no abatement, but we spend all of the land sale proceeds on additional capital. Scenario 3, which was our recommendation, we abate $3 million and spend and spend $5 million on additional capital expenditures in 2023. The relief to existing homeowners under this scenario is $36, which would begin on the second installment of the 2020 tax bills this fall and would continue to provide $36 of relief each year thereafter. Scenario four, which is what if we use the $17.8 million of proceeds for any combination of a one-time abatement and additional capital projects? Note the results of the same as scenario two. This is because in both scenarios, there is a one-time use of these funds. Whether we spend it on capital or do a one-time abatement as discussed, we are still taking the $17 million out of our fund balance just one time. The amount of tax relief provided to taxpayers under this fourth scenario is dependent upon how much of the one-time, how much that one-time abatement is. But as a measurement tool, for every $1 million abated, the average homeowner would realize $12 in tax relief. If the entire $17 million was abated one time, the average homeowner would realize just over $200 in tax relief in the fall of 2022. There are several variables in the forecasting model which can significantly impact the results and are not in our control. If you decide to pass a resolution to permanently abate the 2020 tax levy, you are making a permanent reduction to our tax levy base, and that does come with some risks. The first variable is CPI. This is the largest driver in our model. We're using an average of the last five years CPI for our estimate of the future CPI, which in this case is 2%. This model looks a lot different with the different CPI parameter. In state funding, as you know, Illinois did not pass the Fair Tax. Now, the legislators are discussing how to balance the budget in other ways, and it is expected that there could be cuts to education sometime down the road, but fortunately, not in the immediate future next year. This could involve possible reductions to the evidence-based funding or prorated categoricals or perhaps a shift in the TRS pension funding burden. We have accounted for slight reductions in state funding in the model, but nothing as significant as a pension cost. Benefits is always an area that's difficult to predict, and this year, we're seeing lower-than-expected healthcare costs as people delay elective procedures, but that could change in a post-pandemic world. And finally, property tax collections and refunds. We've been pleasantly surprised for the tax collection rates during the pandemic, and we hope that this trend continues. However, the courts have been slow to process the tax appeals during the pandemic, and we feel that they will be a catch-up in our near future. Please remember to consider these variables and the risks they impose as well as our potential future capital requirements as you consider options for taxpayer relief this evening. We have provided two possible solutions for providing taxpayer relief tonight. On the left side of the chart are the next steps should the board choose to make a tax abatement of the 2020 levy. This resolution must be passed at tonight's meeting as abatement must be filed with Cook County by March 31st. The board could, however, choose to not make an abatement and defer this decision to a future year levy. On the right side of the chart are the next steps should the board decide to move forward to draft legislation to amend the PTAL. There is no definitive timeline for introducing new legislation. However, this is not a quick process. It is advisable to start working on this as soon as possible. The first step would be to get draft legislation entered into the spring session in Springfield. This would entail meeting with a legislator to gain support and finalizing draft bill language. Approval of a bill could be as early as May with signature by the governor in June. The 2021 levy would then need to be abated by the board by March of 2022, and taxpayer relief would be in the fall of 2022. Thank you for your time on these topics tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions. Questions here?
Couple. Um, the, uh, two parts. Slide 18. Is that the right one? Yeah. Uh, in your financial projection for fiscal year 23, $15 million capital, is that, is that where the supplemental $5 million would go?
Yes.
For what?
Whatever the board decided to spend it on.
You see, I gotta have a problem with that in writing a blank check for something that we don't know where to spend it on. I, I, I don't disagree that we have capital expenses, but I'd like to know what the priority is and, and what it takes. Then I'd ask for that the last board meeting. I asked for that at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Uh, point two goes to the, uh, to the tax relief information. I gotta tell you, I've been thinking about this for two years. Uh, the, the, the permanent reduction in the tax, in the levy because of a, because of a single abatement perpetuates itself, that's a bit of a red hair. And here's why. The process that we have is we levy, and then we create a budget, and then we spend to that budget. And if you come up with, with a surplus, which, which District 211 historically does some of its plans, some of its not, why not reduce it? Why not give that money back to the taxpayers because you didn't spend it? So it's fair to lower the baseline by the amount of money that you overtaxed. So this is, we're in a completely different scenario right now. First of all, you know, the $17 million from the land sale. Currently, we are, we are $12 million to the good in, in our budget, and we have a, we have a $4 million surplus from last year. That's $30 million. What are, what are we gonna do with the, with the $12 million if it comes in at 12, or eight, or seven, plus the $4 million that, that we came in under budget last year? So in order to, to, to do the right thing to be fair to the taxpayers, I think the only way that we can do it is to get, you know, to seek and get legislation approved. Uh, it's one thing to abate $2 million or $3 million or something else to abate potentially $30 million. We can't do that. I appreciate that. So those, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question. So for the legislative abatement on slide 31, almost at the end, the steps are draft legislation entered, you know, gets entered in the spring session. A bill must be drafted, submitted into a session for consideration, then it has to be approved, and then it's finalized, and it hits the tax bills, right? Question is, so for legislative abatement, we do not need to or should not include a dollar amount? Because I thought from earlier conversation, it was that maybe a larger dollar amount would be more likely to progress through legislation than a smaller dollar amount. So I don't see anything here, and we haven't had any discussion around a dollar amount associated to the legislative option. Can you comment on that?
I can't. So that will come up when the agenda item comes up, and we will certainly speak to that. If there's one part I wish to add, slide 31. Just on the steps for the legislative option. Uh, the drafting of the legislation into spring session, if I can tie this to should the board approve that tonight, uh, that discussion would start tomorrow to get that legislation into the spring session. Uh, the bill that is drafted, that's certainly, um, us working with their, uh, with our EdRed and our bonds attorney to make sure that that's progressing as it should be as it goes through the legislative cycle. But I, I want to draw your attention here. Once it's approved in that third row, if it does happen, you go to the fourth row, we still have to go through the abatement process here. And that's when we finalize the amount. And to what you're speaking to, the discussion of, um, what can be spoken to about this amount is going to be needed should the board approve this. So for the legislators to speak to it, but the amount is actually not put into the bill at this time. It doesn't get finalized until this board does it when we come into the 2021 levy, which is at the end of this year with a deadline of March, similar to what we're doing right now, but it'll be next year.
So when, if I'm a legislator, going to Springfield and asking for approval for this, um, we're not, we're not asking them to take a dollar amount with them at that point, or they wouldn't be doing that at that point?
Uh, they need to know what the, the intent of the board is, but there is no dollar amount on the actual legislation.
But in their trying to encourage their legislators to agree, they're...
So I can give you an example.
Please.
An example of the conversation would be something to the effect of District 211 just sold land, and they have $17 million that they have gained from that land. Uh, they would like to spend a large majority and give it back to their taxpayers. They would like to split it and spend some of it on capital, but send the rest of it back to their taxpayers. Those are the kind of talking points they need. Um, but the actual dollar amount is not filed until this board approves it in the 21 levy.
Thank you. And we're also running a surplus right now on our budget of $12 million plus far from last year. So that's $30 million. What I'm saying is there, there is a range, and we need to, we need to have a plan for the surplus that we are generating for this school year. Because we're going to, we're going to generate surplus plus, plus the $4 million from last year.
Barb, when we look at the projections, have you, uh, who's got the slides? Who ones? Is that you? Where, I don't know which slide it is. Which slide has our percentages?
25 has some of the percentages. Is that the one?
Our fund balance percentages?
Oh, it'd be the projection slide.
Uh, slide 29. Barb, when you do the fund balances for FY '26 and the percentages that are there, does that reflect, what does that reflect for our end-of-year for, um, for FY '21 in terms of the fund balance? And how much is that fund balance that Mr. Kramer is referencing?
Um, we, we originally budgeted an $8 million loss for this year, and the, uh, projection does reflect a $3 million surplus for the year. So we are showing that 11, $12 million variance in this projection model.
So as we, as we plan out where that money's going, that money, that, uh, surplus is in these numbers?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that, that loss is not real. It's a paper loss. Because we're, we're, we're spending the money. The money's coming from someplace, so it's coming from the reserves. We're drawing down the reserves, correct?
When are we, when are you saying we're drawing down the reserves? When?
Okay, the, the, the budget has a projected $8 million
Deficit.
Deficit. Well, that money's gotta come from someplace.
Right, I agree with you. But what I'm saying is she plans for that in here. That, those ending numbers have that deficit, which is now with the surplus, which equals to 3 million, is in here.
Okay, but did it, did it include a $12 million surplus for this year and a $4 million surplus from last year?
I, I do want to just clarify, it's not a $12 million surplus for this year.
It's a favorable...
It's a favorable variance, but it's a $3 million surplus.
No.
Uh, that's the projection by year-end. Because we had an $8.5 million deficit that was planned. So it is, it is, you are corrected. It's a $12 million variance from our budget plan, but it is not a surplus of $12 million. It would be a surplus of...
Yeah, that's a, that's a, you're right. It's a favorable variance, and we really don't know what is going to happen. We know what happened last year, $4 million surplus. We, we don't quite know what, what is going to happen this year. The variance is trending to be quite high. So I'm saying is that there's, my point is there's a lot of money on the table, significant amount of money that we can work with the legislators to say, hey, look, we want to give this back, but we can't give it all back without some relief because we really cannot take a, a, a $15 million adjustment to, to the baseline. So I mean, that, that's, that's kind of where I'm going. And I gotta tell you, I know the local legislators, and for, they're, they're not gonna want to do it for a $2 million abatement. That's our business. But when you're talking, you know, 10 or 12 or 14 million dollars, that's real money. They can say, look at what I did for, for my district. And that, that's what motivates them.
I guess my concern with that is, um, right now, we're debt-free, and we have to make certain that we have money going down the road to do the capital improvements and anything else that costs that come up. I know on slide 25, if I'm understanding it correctly, we were about 75% for our operating fund about 2012, 2013, and you can see where it has decreased to about 45%. So over those seven years, we have decreased it. But we've been able to do abatements. We've been able to maintain our buildings, and I think that's really important to keep that in mind. And I think if we didn't have the land sale, I know we were told that, um, we probably would not have the recommendation of doing an abatement because you do need the funds. And again, we are currently debt-free. We have a neighboring district that is, um, had to go out for $100 million in bonds because they weren't maintaining their buildings. So I think part of our safety and part of our environment is making certain that we, we do maintain our buildings. Um, the land sale, and as I have mentioned before, um, we had some committees that evaluated it, took a look at it, we got input from the community, and their recommendation was using that money for the students as a non-recurring cost. So there are things that we, we can do. Excuse me. And I think also keeping in mind, there are some costs that we're probably going to incur maybe next year and going down the road. Um, it was mentioned about, um, you know, some of the medical costs, um, some extra expenditures, PTAB. I think we have to keep those in mind. It's, it's nice to give something back to the taxpayers, but I think also being fiscally responsible is important and maintaining our buildings. So I think we, we can't lose sight of that, that we do have to have some money in savings going down the road for, for expenses.
If the minimum were good enough, it wouldn't be the minimum. We're 30, the minimum was 33%, we're 44%, 45% right now. That represents $10 million, which is, which is a lot of capital improvement. We're, 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 we are not inexperienced. And it, you know, it's not, it's not all or nothing, which seems like you don't want to, you don't want to, you don't, you don't want to abate anything. Is that correct?
I gave you my position and I explained what my thought was in regards to it.
Which is you don't want to abate?
Again, I would like to see us remain debt free and move forward.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that will bring us to our consent agenda. We have a suggested motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
All right, that will bring us to special reports. First, we have our Freedom of Information Act requests. Any questions about this? Moving on to the 2020, 2021 school year update. Dr. Small?
Thank you. On March 9th, the ISBE and the IDPH released the Revised Public Health Guidelines for Schools Part IV Transition Joint Guidance, March 2021, which can be found in its entirety at isbe.net. In this new guidance, it states that the maintaining of six-foot distancing for individuals remains the safest distance, but schools can operate with distancing at no less than three feet in order to provide in-person learning. When students are removing their masks to eat, six-foot distancing remains. Other safety protocols in this document have been in place in District 211 since the fall and will not need adjustments. Face masks will continue to be worn by individuals at all times, except when they are eating or when they are outdoors and physical distancing can be maintained. This replacement of the six-foot distancing by a minimum of three-foot distancing allows our schools to have capacity to see all of our students in our classrooms. No longer will the two-team system be needed nor alternating weeks of in-person attendance. In-person students will attend school every day each week. Future agenda items in this meeting will address graduation, potential schedule changes, and summer school. In terms of our spring testing, the 2021 AP exams, that information has gone out to our, our parents and students in terms of the three testing windows. The first window from May 13th to May 14th is the traditional testing windows for paper and pencil testing within our schools. As parents and students receive this information and make their decisions, that will have to be made. And Mr. Kovak? When do they have to make that decision by?
The end of the month.
And then their testing goes from what is traditionally two weeks in May into all four weeks of May and two weeks into June, depending on the option that best suits them along the way in terms of their selection. Along with the AP testing in the spring, we also have our designated AP exam day as set by the state of Illinois on April 13th. This is the date for the SAT, which will be given to all of our juniors, including any students who need accommodations, and any seniors who did not take the exam in the fall have the opportunity to take it in the spring, along with any senior students who need accommodations. The ISBE has newly released that the SAT exam for the class of 2021, which is our seniors, is not a requirement to receive a diploma. So any student whose family chooses to not send them to school to take the exam will still be able to receive their diploma if that is a choice they make. As a vaccination update, I want to thank our booster clubs as well as our schools who are willing to put together vaccination sites with the help of Jewel Osko. On March 17th, it was hosted at Palatine High School in partnership with District 15, and on March 18th, it was hosted at Schaumburg High School today. Though District 211 staff have all been vaccinated, the clinics were hosted to support other local educators, and then Osko added on any appointments that they had after vaccinating local educators that was able to help, especially the segment of our population that is over 65. There were 1,200 vaccines issued yesterday at Palatine High School and another 1,600 issued today at Schaumburg High School. It was certainly a great community event. Spring is always an exciting time in our schools. The weather changes, more events are occurring, and summer is close at hand. My sincere gratitude to our students, staff, and parents who have weathered all the changes that we've gone through this year and continue to make the best of a world that no one expected or imagined. Everyone's lives have been changed and no one has been left unaffected, and yet still, even when things swing towards the negative, we pull each other back to the positive, and that is the power of the human spirit. I look forward to a wonderful spring with the exciting events that we have planned that will be filled with people, fun, and hope.
Questions or comments?
I just have one follow-up question, and it's related, can you hear me, Mr. Kramer? I have one follow-up question, and it's related to one of the students' public comments. That young person asked about flexibility regarding AP testing dates, and so I just wanted to seek clarification on that person's behalf about how that works.
Mr. Kovak?
Each of our students and their parents have received communication about the three testing windows, and while we are encouraging all of our students to use window number one, which is the traditional paper pencil test that they have been preparing for, we also recognize that there are circumstances which might drive a desire for an alternate. And they have the opportunity to request either a test during window two or window three. As of yesterday, we have received 56 separate requests for those alternate time slots and are working with those students to ensure that they have those opportunities.
Thank you.
Have all of our teachers and staff received the first dose, the second dose, one dose if it's the one that's a one dose? I mean, where, where do, where do we stand there?
So all of our, our staff have different return, or endpoints for being fully vaccinated. Some of them are fully vaccinated. Anyone who needed a appointment to get the first vaccine dosage received that prior to yesterday.
So basically, we're fully vaccinated first dose, but not fully, fully vaccinated second dose if, if it's a second dose?
Uh, some of our staff are fully vaccinated, some are through one dose.
About what percentages are fully vaccinated?
Uh, I don't have that percentage.
Because the, the rules change, okay? The, the three foot, the three-foot distancing is six foot. If you don't have both vaccinations and teachers can take off, you could, you could operate closer if you, if you have both vaccinated.
Right. I almost thought you said they take off their masks. They're not taking off their masks.
No, no, no. I missed one. You, you can't take off your masks, but you can get closer.
So the, the rooms are set up so that the teacher's stationed in the front, where the teacher would be in every single room. When we come back from break, we'll have a six-foot distancing, whether the teacher is vaccinated or not. So that is, that is set up regardless.
Comment, I got to say, the teachers got a really good deal here getting the vaccine, vaccine. For, for those of us who don't have the connections, it's, it is Hunger Games out there. It, it, it took a week and a half, two weeks for my wife to sit on the phone, on the computer, starting at 5:00 in the morning, to get two vaccines scheduled. So the teachers should be very appreciative of, of what, what's being provided on their behalf.
I have a real quick question. Do we have any teachers who either can't or don't want to be vaccinated, but still want to teach in person? And if so, are we required to, or are we making any accommodations for them to be able to do so?
So regardless of whether a teacher is vaccinated or not vaccinated, the opportunity for vaccination has come through. Therefore, they have a return date back to the classroom, whenever they are fully vaccinated or whenever we are through the point of full vaccination of our staff. A teacher who, or any employee, I should say, who has, is opting because of a medical reason to try to continue to have an accommodation of not coming in person, has the option of pursuing FMLA leave or sick leave.
If they opt to still come in person because they prefer to interact or teach that way, are they still being accommodated with distancing and those kinds of things?
They have the six-foot distancing, that's why all classrooms are set up for six-foot at the front.
Thank you.
And if there are any other special circumstances we can help them with, we certainly do.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your proactive commitment because I know, you know, it's easy to say at a board meeting that we hosted vaccination clinics and we had over 1,000 people at one of our, I mean, that's an incredible thing, but I also know that that took a lot of muscle and it took a lot of planning, and I really appreciate that we were able, you know, under your leadership, we were able to offer such a thing. I, I think that's really wonderful.
So I will, since you opened the door, I will name three people who were really critical in making this happen. Would have been Matt Hildebrand at the district office, I call him Mr. Vaccine. As a matter of fact, I was joking with him today that I was going to find a mascot costume in the shape of a syringe for him. But then his point, people at each one of the buildings, at Palatine High School, it was Assistant Principal Kim Glazer, and at Schaumburg High School, it was Assistant Principal Russ Cummings. And their teams, obviously, that supported them to make those things happen. We had extremely positive feedback from the people who were vaccinated, as, as with the experiences when they come in our, to our buildings, we take care of the people when they come in. And I think they walked out not only very happy with their vaccine, but certainly the experience that they had, and I know that Jewel Osko was very pleased with our ability to help facilitate their vaccinators and their process in order to make it happen quickly.
Maybe you could extend Ms. Cavill's thanks and appreciation and, and the board as well, too.
I will, thank you.
Everyone, anybody that had participation in making it all happen, it's, it's appreciated. Any other questions or comments here? Okay, that will bring us to SAT preparation information.
We have an extensive report here that has been prepared, and Mr. Schumacher, is there anything you'd like to say about this?
Sure. I first want to thank the board for their inquiries and interest into our school-based test preparation programs. It's apparent that you want to support students at high levels, and your interest in equity in District 211 connects to our operational efforts to improve equity at all levels. And I appreciate the opportunity to provide you with the information in tonight's board report, highlight our programs, and most of all, I've enjoyed the ability to connect with our school-based preparation educators over the last month. They are certainly eager, committed, and focused on our students. I also want to clarify some of the information that is being shared related to the amount and quality of test preparation that District 211 students receive. Each school implements a multi-tiered approach to preparing students not just for the SAT, but for all the components of the SAT suite of assessments. When you talk about the concept of test preparation, we look at all the components of the preparation tiers, as they're designed to work together as an integrated system. I would like to highlight some of the information that is in tonight's report. First, a significant section of the SAT preparation report that is included in the board agenda focuses on the test preparation that is embedded into our classes during the school day. This is the foundation for preparing students for the SAT suite. The after-school sessions in Khan Academy were meant to serve as supplemental to this, not as the primary mode of preparation. As you likely noted in the board report, our District 211 Critical Learning Standards, which we developed in order to prioritize our curriculum to effectively prepare students for college and careers, are directly connected with the skills that students need to demonstrate on the SAT suite. These Critical Learning Standards are the basis for our curriculum, and they drive the instructional strategies and methods that are used in our classrooms. In short, our students practice the exact same skills in our classrooms that they need to be successful on the SAT suite. In fact, according to College Board's SAT Study Guide for Students, they say the best preparation for the SAT occurs every day as you study hard in school and acquire important reading, writing, language, and math knowledge and skills. They go on to say, "The same habits and choices that lead to success in school will help you get ready for the SAT. The best way to prepare for the test is take challenging courses, do your homework, prepare for the tests and quizzes in your courses, and ask and answer lots of questions." Similar to this advice from the College Board, we focus most of our efforts on embedded skills and the mastery that is included in our everyday curriculum. Our after-school programs are designed to be a supplement, not the primary way for students to prepare. Since the SAT is not a content-based test, and thus you can't necessarily study or cram for this type of assessment, you certainly can learn tips, skills, and test-taking strategies, which is why we provide our supplemental after-school sessions. Each school has designed a program that is available to all students at that school at no cost. In a traditional year, these sessions are scheduled after the school day in a similar manner to a club or activity meeting. In fact, each school receives two stipend positions to organize and facilitate these sessions, which are defined positions in our collective bargaining agreement. There is equality in the way that positions are offered and structured, but from there, the schools are given the ability to tailor their schedules, session content, and student-parent communications based on their school direction and school focus. Certainly, as you read in the report, there is a difference in the number of sessions held at each schools across the district. They are even held at different times and through different media. This is due to the school-based approach and the ability that we give to our sponsors to create their program. I want to again thank you for the opportunity to gather the information during the past month about our current programs. I've been able to meet with each school's preparation sponsors, including speaking with the administrators and the principals about past, current, and options for future programs. We all agree that we want to be more effective and equitable. Student, we all agree that we want to provide students a high level of supplemental support in preparation for the SAT, and we all agree that District 211 has a culture and commitment to continual improvement of our people, programs, and systems. In the many hours spent researching our programs, one concept has shown itself again and again. Our staff is intently focused on students. They want to engage them, they want to help them, and they want to support them. While we can't change the past difference in hours for sessions offered, we can ensure that as we move forward as a collaborative group, we provide high levels of support and similar opportunities at each District 211 school. I would also like to share with you our action plan moving forward. You see, as I met with each school-based group to talk about their program, I noticed that our conversations led to a little bit of excitement and some momentum, and some momentum regarding improving our programs. Whenever we shine a light on one of our programs, that light also presents us an opportunity to improve our effectiveness, equity, and impact. In fact, excuse me again. While I've met directly with each school's sponsors, we also plan to bring every school together for a meeting in which we can share our most effective ideas and best practices. We will also work to develop a range of options and time recommendations, analyze the effectiveness of in-person and Zoom preparation sessions, and look to develop district-wide resources that can be accessed by all students. We also plan to offer multiple opportunities for preparation during the summer. This will be the first time these opportunities are offered to students. Certainly, we also want to protect our individual schools' ability to meet their students' needs and craft programs based on achievement data and student interest. But we can develop protocols and parameters for improving success, opportunity, and communication around preparation for the SAT suite. I'm excited for the future of our programs as we continue to plan and prepare even more effective opportunities for our students.
Any questions, comments here?
Um, my, my comments will be brief this time. So I appreciate the report, I appreciate its thoroughness, I very much appreciate to hear about what I can expect in the future for an action plan. And that's honestly because, you know, I went through the report, I understand, you know, I, I know very well what Khan Academy is and how it's used, you know, and I understand inbuilt preparation services integrated through the curriculum, which are really always, always best. They're the most accessible, the most consistent. So all of that being said, I still felt appalled, I just have to be honest, I mean, I, I felt appalled at the inequity in the total number of hours of after-school SAT prep offered in the various schools. And again, continuing to be honest, the only way I'm really going to be able to go to sleep easy tonight is with the assurance that I'm not going to be looking at numbers like this again next year because I would find that to be personally unacceptable. So again, I, I wouldn't be able to support a variance of more than 15% in the numbers of hours of after-school SAT prep if we're going to offer that for students after school at one or more of our schools or all of them. I mean, to me, more than a 15% variance wouldn't represent a variance in, for example, student interest or market demand or availability or content, et cetera, or mode of delivery. That would just represent an inequity in, in offerings. And so I very much look forward to seeing numbers that are within those parameters next year, and I very much appreciate to hear that there's already a plan in place to pursue the results that I would be happier with this time around.
Good, Ms. Rosen. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dombrowski. So I've had numerous conversations with numerous people, from Dr. Small to Mr. Schumacher to parents in the community. Thank you very much for the report and, and the explicit information that's being displayed in there. I also understand the in-class curriculum and the Tier 3 Khan Academy. However, I echo Ms. Cavill with grave concerns regarding Tier 2 after-school programming and the inequity that is blatant and obvious between the number of hours that are offered. and the inequity that is blatant and obvious between the number of hours that are offered. Conant High School has 15 hours of math, 15 hours of reading and writing together for a total of 30 hours. Palatine has less than eight hours of math, less than eight hours of reading, less than eight hours of writing, a Zoom practice exam worth, and a total of 24 hours. I'm trying to gather understanding of how a Zoom practice exam with three just-under-eight-hour subject matter prep comes to 24 hours. My math isn't all that great, but that leaves maybe 45 minutes for a test, practice test. So I'm trying to understand how that comes to be. Schaumburg has 24 hours of math, 24 hours for reading and writing, and a four-hour practice exam for a total of 52 hours. Hoffman Estates has 5.25 hours of reading, six hours of writing, 11.25 hours of math, for a total of 22 and a half hours, plus a Zoom test for a total of 27 hours. And Friends offers 46 hours of math, reading and writing offered over 23 days. The report you provided didn't provide how much time each of those is. Prep test for one full day, or one full test prep, plus four math-only tests for a total of 104 hours of Tier 2. There are very obvious, even though, Mr. Schumacher, you and I have had conversation about the inability to directly correlate test results to amount of time, but I'm sorry to say that if you match the two against each other, it's as plain as day. There's a direct apparent correlation between the number of hours and the mean scores. So, I'm finding it very distressful, and I think a detriment to our overall district community that we have these differences. I'm glad to hear that you're going to be getting people together at a district level to talk about best practices. I think one of those best practices should be how we can bring up the scores at the schools that need that, and stabilize the schools that are doing well, and look at how hours are being used in each of those. I understand the importance of testing, it gives a benchmark, it helps students get into schools, it helps get funding identified for our school districts and our individual schools, and it helps from a performance perspective of how we're doing and how we continue to do. I get all of that. One question I do have is, in the report, it says that there's two stipends per school. I'd like to know, with the fact that there's 24 hours at Palatine and 104 hours at Friends for Tier 2, are they getting the same stipend? And if they are, boy, those Friends teachers are really not getting their hourly rate compared to the teachers who are doing it at Palatine, because if the stipends are the same, they're not doing the same amount of after-school effort. So I'd like to understand how the stipends are created, allocated, and assigned for the teachers that are doing these programs.
The stipends are allocated for work after the school day. The hours within the Friends data that is there would be during the school day, and it would be teachers that are not in a math tutor room but are pulled to do the SAT prep that happens during their school day, they are not paid extra for that. Everybody has the same number of stipends for after-school time.
So the amount of each stipend is the same as well?
Yes.
The stipends are based on the contract, and there are different levels of stipend based on years of experience in the position, much like most of our stipends are set, whether it's an activity sponsor or a coach, it's the same way. So yes, the amount of stipends available to each school are the same.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, from my perspective, one, I believe what I've heard echoed from a lot of families has been a little more parent communication. I think there may have been a delay in the communication as we were waiting to see whether or not the state was going to receive a waiver for the SAT. That's understandable. I do think that the SAT is part of our district report card, it's required for graduation. I don't think it can be treated any longer as an extracurricular activity, I think it really has to be defined as curriculum, and that curriculum has to be set at the district level across all the schools with an eye towards improving the district report card and performance, and having measurable metrics that aren't just left to the individual schools to determine that flexibility. And as a board of education, I think that should be in our strategic interest to improve our report cards at a district level, and also start our students leaving the district with their best foot forward on something that is required for their graduation. That's my opinion. I'd like to see maybe something along those lines. I know we have our contract coming up, so maybe that's something that gets removed out of the collective bargaining and reinserted in some other mechanism, similar to what Dr. Small was saying about the success that Friends has, maybe because the teachers are incorporating that during the school day, and it's not conflicting with other activities outside of the school day. That's all I have, thank you.
Just as a follow-up, that's why I say I gave a ranges to my comfort level for variability, meaning leave it up to the administration to decide how to meet those metrics, I'm just saying what I'm comfortable with. So if we have a lot of success with this in-person program at Friends, then I would like to see a version of that perhaps rolled out in other schools with the end result that we would be more, the schools would be more in line with each other with the provision of services available. And I guess, if I didn't make it clear, like, I'm not happy with a collective total to say, "Well, if you count Khan Academy," and I'm not suggesting that this is what's been said, it is not, but, you know, philosophically, I'm interested in, I don't want variances within an overall umbrella to say, "Well, totally, you know, totally we provide excellent kind of service to our students." So if we're going to offer a certain amount of in-person hours at Friends, then I'm just not going to be comfortable with more than a 15% variation of in-person hours offered at any other of our schools. And that would be across the board, you know, for extracurricular offerings and in-person offerings, et cetera.
And then one final point, I believe we still have a community member, parent, that's looking for a hearing on this. Do we, the way it was explained, they went through the board policy, is that correct?
So an email was sent to me by that parent with the opportunity to speak with them, which I did. I spoke to the parent about their needs for their child. Those needs were met according to the expectations of the conversation. I then had a conversation with the parent about other schools, of which there was one piece I did not have, which I sent her the email directly afterwards, and that was the end of that conversation.
So, the parent has confirmed that they're satisfied with what they were requesting? Is that, because that wasn't what I heard tonight?
I'm reporting to you the conversation I had with the parent after the email was sent.
Okay, so then, I guess, just so I understand, they've exhausted all their options with administration, or is there more options that haven't been exhausted?
I'm not sure what the parent is seeking right now. So, if they're seeking a hearing on the curriculum, the SAT prep material, which is not curriculum, has been presented tonight in great detail. The board has, Mr. Schumacher has presented the plan, which, as I listen to each one of your concerns, does address those.
Okay.
I'm concerned a little bit about due process here. At what point in time and what is a process for a parent to request a hearing before the board?
For curriculum?
For whatever.
It's for curriculum.
Just, is it, there's only?
That's the policy, for curriculum.
There's only one, they can only request a hearing before the board for curriculum, is that correct?
Or if they have a problem with a particular piece of media, they can do that, in terms of that's part of the curriculum.
Okay, so, how does, if a parent is not satisfied with what the administration has provided, what does it take to schedule a hearing for that parent? Do they have to put in writing, "I want a hearing"?
If it's, this is not curriculum, that's the difference here. This is SAT after-school prep materials. Curriculum is the materials we present to the board for approval, whether it be the textbooks, the critical learning standards, that's the actual curriculum.
Okay, so?
So, if there was a question about curriculum that went through the process that's put in the policy, then yes, that next step would be a hearing.
Well, SAT is required, so it is curriculum, correct?
No. The SAT test is a test that we are required by the state to give. The SAT prep that we do after-school to take practice tests and tips on test-taking, that's not considered curriculum.
But you can't graduate, you can't graduate from the district without taking the SAT, right? We would withhold the diploma, so if?
You have to participate in it, that's correct.
Right, so if you don't take the SAT, you're not meeting the curriculum defined for graduation. I don't see how you can take the SAT out of the curriculum if you can't graduate without it.
The question is regarding SAT prep materials.
Correct.
Those are the materials that are in a traditional school year, done after-school, where they do practice tests, they do test-taking tips, that's SAT prep material. That's not curriculum for a credit-bearing course.
If it was curriculum, you wouldn't be making the argument that we need to add it to the curriculum, those things both can't be simultaneously true.
No, no, the prep specifically, but to the point where Dr. Small was saying, "Participation in the SAT is required by state law," I was saying it's even more nuanced than just being state law, you cannot graduate from the district, it is a requirement for graduation. So it has some weight, may not be a three-credit or a credit in that regard, but similar to being required to take driver's ed that we provide in order to graduate, and that's a district graduation requirement, not necessarily, you know, something that might extend beyond that. So with regard to taking the exam, it's just more than the state requiring that our students sit for it, it's required to graduate.
I understand that.
And that's all I was clarifying.
Okay.
But from a curriculum perspective, their score and their score on the SAT does not dictate whether or not they graduate. They're taking the SAT, which is not curriculum, taking an exam outside of the curriculum of the school is not curriculum. It's a graduation requirement that you take the exam, but not how you do on the exam. The fact that we're offering test prep to help them do better on the exam is something that we're offering, but it's also not necessary that students take that preparation.
Right, but when we started the test prep, it wasn't, the SAT wasn't required for graduation, that's a recent development.
I guess we're still paying a stipend. I mean, we just talked about the fact that we're paying a stipend, we don't pay a stipend for health, you know, so I would, I agreed with your original argument, that if it's on our report card, it's required for graduation, it's required by state law, I think there's a very, very good argument that we need to rethink our approach and maybe integrate it in curriculum. I just, I diverge that we're currently doing that. Like, I feel like, yes, there might need to be a change, but then a change from not.
And that wasn't my point, I mean, I wasn't trying to get to the prep being curriculum, I was just simply saying that it's more than a state law requirement, it's incorporated into a graduation requirement.
I would agree with you that it's an issue definitely worth exploring.
Yeah. Okay, enough on that one. Our next item is the 2021-2022 school year.
We're looking forward to planning a traditional school year with traditional schedules at all of our campuses for beginning of the fall, the 21-22 school year. Students have already completed their course selection for that school year, and the master schedule is already being created in a traditional manner. In the case one all, in-person learning will be in place, which is what is expected in the fall. Remote learning will only be offered if the ISBE requires this option. Parents will need to commit to that option prior to the start of the school year, and that may, commitment may result in the option for at least the semester, if not the entire school year. At this point, the ISBE has not made any indication as to whether they will require a remote option from our public schools for the 21-22 school year. Planning moving forward for this typical year will continue in that manner unless the ISB indicates something different. At that time, any adjustments that are needed as required by the ISBE will be brought forward to the board.
All right, thank you. And that will bring us to our District 211 Equity Team update.
I'm sorry, I did have just one follow-up question. So if ISBE, you know, says that we need to provide this remote option, that would be partition, is that correct? That would be a standalone option?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as we have that option, which I presume we will.
All right, the D-211 Equity Team update?
Yes, our equity team is nearing the end of just this year's development, though the journey will certainly continue on, and there's a short update here as we get ready for a presentation of a draft plan for the board coming up in the late spring.
All right.
Questions?
Sure.
Define the equity team. Is that the total of the number of people that are on the four different teams, or is that a group of select administrators?
No.
What are we calling, who is on the equity team?
The District 211 Equity Team are the four, all the subcommittees put together.
So?
Plus myself, because I don't actually sit on a subcommittee.
Bay Young is going to come this room and be facetious there, and give a presentation to 40 people?
No, she's collecting the data for us, and then, Josh, you want to explain how that data comes to us?
Well, it says a final report to the District 211 Equity Team.
Correct.
So are they going to give that report to all 25 people?
Yes, it's a written report. So we're going to get a written report on each school, and we are going to, as a District 211 Equity Team, we're going to dive into the analysis and the recommendations of those reports as we develop our final recommendations.
So all 25 people, or, you know, whatever it is, parents, teachers, board members, will they be provided a copy of the report?
Yes.
Prior to another presentation by the Equity Team, whoever that is, to the board?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll get a copy of the final report, is that correct?
Which final report?
Well, the one that says right here, "In order to provide a final report to the District 211 Equity Team at the end of April." Bay Young is compiling data, doing an analysis, they're going to create a report, and this says that that report is going to be provided to the D-211 Equity Team at the end of April.
Yes.
So will I get a copy of that report?
My understanding is you sent an email to Mr. Harland excusing yourself from part of your committee?
Oh, I know, I suspended my participation.
Okay, so you suspended your participation on the Equity Team?
Yeah, yes, I did. So you're saying that because I did that, I will not be provided a copy of the report?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying what the report says is that the report will go to the District Equity Team for their review.
So, but will I get a copy of the report or not, in April?
Yes, we'll give you that.
And then, just to clarify, because this brings up another procedural issue in my head, when the Equity Team comes together to digest and work on that, it appears that at least, at a minimum, five board members are on that Equity Team, does that result in an open meeting that has to be called in order to participate in that work as a whole?
The board members participate on the subcommittees, they don't, they do not come together as a whole.
Okay, I'm a little confused, because you said the Equity Team was all four subcommittees combined together.
I'm sorry, I should have said? I'm sorry, I should have said minus the board members, because we could not bring all the board members together.
Well, you could, you just have to call an open meeting, and I'm okay with that. I just wanted to make sure that I understood how-
They, they have not done that. Have, is anyone who participated en masse all year in this?
No, my understanding is that there's the subcommittees, of which there are now five active board members on. And there's a equity team that takes the subcommittee information and communicates it and discusses it and digests it and provides feedback to Mr. Shumaker, and I believe they meet with you as well, to, to discuss what the subcommittees are working on.
That's correct, and the board members do not sit on that group because that is one group together.
Okay, just making sure, because I, I, I was given a different impression when it was first described, and now that's a little bit different now that you've defined.
I apologize, that's, we've been operating under that the whole, the whole time.
So the very last sentence here says that, that the equity team will use that information to finalize recommendations and present a plan to the Board of Education. Do you have a timeline as to when, because it looks like the end of April to, for the equity team to get the information, right? And then kind of digest it and-
June.
Create June?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that will bring us to our enrollment projections.
I'd like to thank Kathy Lingle for doing her last round of enrollment projections for us, that she will be retiring at the end of the year. And she was working diligently with Dr. Hauser, who will be taking over that job of enrollment projections.
All right, thank you. That will bring us to unfinished business. We have resolution abating a portion of the taxes levied for the 2020 tax year. We have two suggested motions. The first is that the Board of Education approve the resolution abating a portion of the taxes levied for the 2020 tax year in the operations and maintenance fund in an amount of $3 million for a final 2020 levy amount of $238,690,000 as presented. Can someone please move that?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No.
Mr. LaFever?
No.
All right, that motion fails. The second suggested motion is that the Board of Education intends for $5 million of proceeds of the land sale to be allocated for capital improvement projects in a future budget year. Can someone please move that?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Move to table, pending a costed list of what we're going to pay for, for the $5 million. Table pending that.
I, I even have a bigger issue that the fact that it just says a future budget year. I mean, you know, I know we had it identified like three years out, but until we identify our needs, it, it could be next year, it could be ten years, it could be twenty years from now. It, it's not a very well-written motion for us to move on.
Okay, we have a motion, do you want to second that, then?
Not really, I wanted to vote it down.
Okay, anybody else?
So I'd also like to discuss, as I've said before, and I've heard other people say before here on this board, and I think I even may have given this example once before. If my daughter asked me for a hundred dollars, and I said to her, "Why do you need a hundred dollars?" And she said, "I don't know, I'll find something to spend it on," my answer will be no. And to Mr. Kramer's point, you tell me what you need the money for and how much it's going to cost, and from that, we can or can't approve the amount of money that's being requested for, whatever it's being requested for. So I have a real big problem as well with asking for money to be set aside, allocated, intended for something that we have no idea anything about.
And it's not going anywhere. I mean, in a year from now, if there's a need that's identified and it's put in the budget, we can always vote to approve it via budget and, and planning projections. It's, yeah, it, it, you know, we move O and M funds around as needed to, for capital projects once they're defined. I mean, we, we have a plan that we've been following, and we've been doing our capital improvements at a pace of at least 10 million a year, so, you know, it'll be there if it's needed.
I agree, I mean, in my perception of this motion, however, was that it was essentially, not explicitly, but implicitly tied to the first motion, you know, to try and pull some money out from your land sale for the abatement. So regardless philosophically, you know, I, I prefer to have a tangible item to spend the money on, but, you know, if the first motion failed, to me, it wouldn't make sense to pass this one.
So this would be real easy. So the motion to table has no second, so that dies. And as long as nobody has anything else to say, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Ms. Cavill?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. LaFever?
No.
Okay, that motion fails. That will bring us to new business. We have a resolution of the Board of Education of Township High School District Number 211, Cook County, Illinois, declaring the intention to seek legislation amending the property tax extension limitation law. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the resolution of the Board of Education of Township High School District Number 211, Cook County, Illinois, declaring the intention to seek legislation amending the property tax extension limitation law as presented. Can someone please move that?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion here.
I have concerns with using our legislators for one-time items. I think that it's, I think this takes our, our representatives that are supposed to be working in Springfield off the hook for, for what they're required to do for property tax relief. I mean, we were promised that we were going to have our legislators working diligently on a property tax relief task force. They haven't come up with any positive recommendations. They hadn't even finalized the draft report. And here we are going to them saying, you know, we want to provide tax relief, and I am absolutely on board with that. But I think that kind of skirting the existing rules that we operate under, and then sort of giving them the opportunity to champion the savings without really ever having to do the hard work associated with finding a balance between our property taxes and our school funding, and even maintaining the funding formula. I'm not very optimistic that this is the best way to go and, and that it'll actually result in the systemic changes that are needed in our state.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I would disagree with Mr. Dombrowski. Uh, legislators need to learn how to reduce property taxes. This, this is one way, and I think that this will set a precedent for other legislators to say, they did it in 211, it works, it solves the problem of the, of the, of the PTEL aggregate baseline. Uh, why don't, why, why don't other districts do it as well? So I, I would disagree. I, I will vote yes on this.
My only comment is, I'm as disappointed as a taxpayer can be that it's going to take a little while, once, you know, once it does work its way through, and if it is successful to actually see it and get it back into the community. Um, that's disappointing, but I understand that there's a process here. Um, I am encouraged that the legislator that, that has been presented to us as possibly championing that for us. I understand he's also co-chair of the Education Committee for the State, uh, legislator, legislation. So hopefully, with that in mind, and his passion and, and interest in the success of our education system, that, that he's able to be successful in helping us with this.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. LaFever?
No. So that motion carries. All right, that will bring us to revised schedule for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the revisions for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year as presented. Can someone please move that?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion.
I have some concerns that I'd like to bring forth, and, and one of those is the fact that according to the late schedule, which is at Conan and Palatine, that if a student were to start school at 8:15 in the morning, they have two options for lunch. Option one is wait until 2 o'clock in the afternoon to get lunch. Option two is to get a extension to a passing period, which minimally two, uh, which will, which will allow them 15 to 20 minutes extra time for a passing period to eat their lunch and take away from either the end or beginning of a academic period. So doing that will result in anywhere from, if it's 15 to 20 minutes per day, and they take advantage of 15 minutes, then that takes away from at least a half hour per week and as much as 45 minutes from class time in order for them to eat at a place where they're able to eat, because they can't eat in the classroom, and they probably can't eat sitting in the hallway. So, so I have a problem with the, the lateness for lunch for the, the Conan and Palatine schedules, or taking away from their academic time on a daily basis in order for them to be able to do that. So, so that's one, one concern that I have. And secondly, is it's my understanding that at some of our schools, there are double classes, like double math, um, you know, back-to-back classes. And it's also my understanding, from talking to people in the community and some of the students in the community, that some of the teachers do not take a break in between those two back-to-back class periods. So with that in mind, if we go to a 75-minute class, then it's possible that those classes will result in two 75-minute periods and a 15-minute passing period for the student to have to sit in class for that entire period of time without a break. And to have an attention span of math for that length of time, I have a significant problem with. So if this is put in place, I would like to require that teachers who have a back-to-back period like that, that they are required to take that 15-minute passing period as a break for their students to use the restroom, close their eyes, catch their breath, socialize with each other, whatever the case may be, so that they're not stuck in a math class that is, how many minutes long? What, 75 times two plus an extra 15?
Hour and 15 plus 15, hour and a half.
So an hour and a half of math.
Let's not pick on math.
Sorry?
I said, let's not pick on math.
All right, let's not pick on math. So an hour and a half of class-
I hear you on the break, I hear what you're saying.
Without a break. I think that's an extensive period of, I, I was specifically told about math, so, not to pick on math. Um, but I think that that's an extended period of time which we should not be requesting our, and requiring our students to partake in.
So I'd like to chime in here. A normal traditional day is 400 minutes. That's one of the options we have in the resolution. We were providing 240 minutes, now we're just adding 60. You're only offering, my children, 300 minutes a day. You're still, you're still stealing 100 minutes from them. That's not acceptable to me. I want them in there in the full traditional schedule, 50-minute classes, periods with frequent breaks. I think that benefits the teachers, the students. I think it benefits the students that are on Zoom. They're, they're getting shorter periods of constant screen time with frequent breaks in between. They're getting transitioned. I, I can't support this.
Additional comments? Lunch at 1:20 to 2:05, my goodness. There's no way that, that, that that works. There's no way. One of the problems that we have had with the hybrid, which has now become sort of in-person, if you can make it, because we have the room, to remote, is there going, will the, and I kept, I kept, didn't read it anywhere. If we go to this scenario, option four, which, oh, by the way, was not part of the original plan, which, which was presented to the board back in July. I'd like to, I'll get to that question in a second. Are, are there, is there still going to be extensive use of Zoom? With the stu-, are the students going to come there, sit there for 75 minutes, and look at their computer, because a teacher's got to be on a computer because there's a significant portion of students sitting at home?
The teacher has to have the Zoom link on because, and it doesn't matter whether it's significant or a few. In this model, the teacher must have a Zoom link going. Now, whether the, the Zoom link is being used by the other students, that's not required.
So-
But the teacher must have a Zoom link, because this is still a model where there are kids at home, and there will be kids in class.
It will be in-person with the students sitting at a desk, looking at their computers for it.
Not necessarily, it depends on how the teacher sets up the class.
Yeah, that needs to be worked out. Yeah, that, that, that is not clear.
That situation would be the same no matter what the model is.
Well, not necessarily. Not necessarily. Because-
You, you could require all the students to come in, you're correct. If you required all the students to come in and didn't give parents a choice for the next two months, you're exactly right. That would not be the model.
And we're going to have to do that next school year, because the state says you have to provide that option.
The state has not said anything definitive about the next school year.
Is that summer school? I read someplace that, that there has to be an option for parents to, to have their students remote. I thought I read that someplace.
The state has said that for the, this school year, for the remainder of this school year, if you have a parent whose, either family has a medical concern or the individual has a medical concern, that remote option must be given this year.
And that's for this school year only?
That, that's correct, they have not issued any guidance for next school year yet.
In summer school, we have no guidance.
They have not issued guidance for summer school either.
How much pushback did the union give on moving from the hybrid model that we're in now, which is kind of really 50% remote and 50% kind of in-person? Did they not want to do this? To go to option three, which was, which was originally presented to the board in July?
I presented this model. I presented this model to the union because of the instructional benefits of keeping the schedule the same for the students. There's a mindset for looking at an A-B rotating schedule versus going, flipping for eight weeks into a eight-period day. When I presented it to the union, it was after discussion with our instructional leaders and our administrators, as we looked at all instructional aspects of it.
But why the change from, from, from the original plan? The original plan was-
We've learned. I mean, the pan, the pandemic has taught us many things. The, the governor just gave us a, a bridge to five. We learn as we go. I, I, if anyone predicted exactly what was going to happen in July for everything that should unfold, that, that is great.
And, yeah, so there's some concern about the anxiety level of a student who's already experienced, what, three or four changes in, in their schedule? Do, do we think that they're not resilient enough to, to go to as much of a traditional schedule as we can?
I, I presented you the best instructional option.
So it, it's, it's the administration's opinion that the students cannot fathom another change? And they will fail?
That, I didn't say that. I said, I have presented the best instructional option for a student who has been on a block schedule, alternating day for seven months and has two months left of school.
How is three hundred minutes better than four hundred minutes in a day?
What are you doing with the minutes? I mean, we can nickel-and-time everything here. It's it's the set of the, the mindset of the student and the preparing for four periods on this day, the next four periods on this day versus putting them all back into one day. So their pattern of their studying and their thought process is different. And their periods go from sixty minutes, though they're daily, back down for fifty minutes, still in the hybrid scenario. Meaning that computer screen's got to be on for the teacher and there's going to be kids in person and kids over there.
But there are more frequent breaks. They're not expected to sit there at attention, looking at a screen for seventy-five minutes.
They'll have seven five-minute breaks.
Yeah, and and I don't know how much, I mean.
And in the, in the five-minute breaks, they will, whether they're at home or they're at school, they will get up, leave, go, get to the next class, sit down, and go.
And so.
The teachers will spray the desks. The kids will have to come in and wipe them.
So we have, we have data that says having a student on a screen for seventy-five minutes is their best performance, their their best attention, their most focused.
If a, if a student is struggling at home and there is no, their medical or safety concern, they can certainly come into school.
But with this presentation of this being the best, I mean, we've gotten emails from parents that have said, you know, seventy-five, that's too much time. I mean, the screen time is.
I can give you some perspective on just on time. And certainly, the the screen time is a unique factor for this year. Hoffman Estates is our one school that is on a block schedule and they have ninety-four minutes during the regular school year.
But they're not staring at a screen.
No, I agree.
They're engaged in person. So for the block scheduling for Hoffman Estate, it was a reduction from ninety-four minutes to sixty minutes. So if we were to go to the traditional model, the argument would be Hoffman Estates would then be penalized under the block schedule because they would have a ninety-four minutes of screen time.
Why would they be penalized? If it was the traditional model, would we go back to ninety-four minutes?
The penalty is having to be connected to the device, staring at it continuously for the duration of the class. The more of that, that.
Is the student at home or in school?
Either. Depends on the classroom as you've defined. So however the teacher has it set up. But if the students are home and and you're required to engage through the device, I mean, that that's the part where I think as parents, when we look at what our children are doing and they're constantly locked into this screen, more of that doesn't really give them the social-emotional interaction with their peers. It doesn't necessarily, you know, allow them to connect. And and some of that is developing the soft skills that that is a priority for our district, is being able to interact with their peers and not just point their camera at the screen and let their teacher just continue to to lecture in the class. I, I'd be surprised if if we find that we're we're able to meet that same level with longer periods, trying to get that engagement. I think this year, you're right, we've learned a lot. And looking at the participation and interaction of my children when they're on remote, I I don't, I don't see them as engaged.
And and time is an interesting argument. Time in terms of screen time is you look at the total screen time on a full day versus the total screen time on a non-full day. I mean, you, there is both sides to every argument of anything that we do here.
I took a look at maybe a little bit of a different perspective. I appreciate the creativity of of trying to do this. But I wonder if we're trying to encourage the students to come in for the next, well, eight weeks of class, leaving it at the time that we currently have would be a little bit more advantageous instead of trying to add another fifteen minutes to to the class. I'm afraid that adding that to the time might discourage students from being able to come into class. I know we want to get the kids in class, but we do have to respect the parents that feel that the the student needs to be at the home. And in reality, they may end up turning off much more because of the extended time. And I I understand some of the benefits. There's pros and cons in regards to it. But I think at at this point, it may be better not to start making more changes and get through the the school year and look at how can we work with our students and help our students as we go into the summer.
I think you're asking for a lot of trouble, Ms. Kunkwitz. All of the surrounding districts are going back to that traditional schedule. And if if we hold with no change, I think our community will will find that we're we're not acting in the best interest of our students.
When you say traditional schedule, are you talking about adding more classes to the regular day? And I guess maybe that's what I don't understand.
We split a class day, right? So it's one day, then another day, then you go back. So every other day, you're in, you're in the classes, whether it's A or B. In the traditional full-day model, they have all those classes in one day. So they see that same teacher five days a week versus maybe seeing their, you know, trusted adult twice a week. So it gives you more interaction with your teachers more frequently, although the duration may be shorter. But you have daily contact. You're able to build those relationships that we talked about with trusted adults on a more regular, interactive basis versus I may only see this teacher twice a week.
I went to all of high school on a block schedule. With, and I, I mean, my entire high school career was on a block schedule, A-B days with ninety-minute periods and a seven-twenty-one start. So I don't share that particular point of view. Very, that not being, that being said, of course, the addition of the screen time, which is a necessity when you still have, you know, students learning from home, I didn't have to deal with that. And I think, again, like everything else this year, pros for connectivity and there's obvious downsides that we don't have to go into. I hate seeing my second grader and my fourth grader staring at a computer for as long as they do every day. At the same time, I'm glad that, you know, everything costs something. It's one of the most frustrating things about this whole nightmare of the year. But I'm not personally opposed to a block schedule. I had a block schedule all through high school. So and it can, there are, again, there are pros and cons for sure. There's not, no perfect solution. I do share Mr. Rosenblum's, you know, concerns about lunch. I, you know, I've talked through some of this with you and had the impression that, whereas I was looking at the schedule and took away, you know, okay, so we've got two schools of our kids that are going to find it difficult to eat lunch. My conversation with you led me to have a different impression that I was taking away. And so I was wondering if you'd kind of share that. So, for example, I felt better that our students, there's nothing precluding our students from eating during any of their passing periods. And we have designated eating areas. All the staff knows where they are. Just can't eat in the classrooms because, you know, we have our cleaning protocols, right? If I'm understanding. And then, am I right in understanding that this conflict that I'm looking at because of the way lunches work is not necessarily an everyday occurrence? That was my understanding from the conversation.
So every, every student at some point in their schedule across two days has a study hall that represents their lunch on an eight-period day. Now, it might not be right at the ideal time for lunch. It might be at the beginning of the day. So that would still be a complication for some students that have it at the beginning of the day. But other students would have it at a more appropriate lunchtime, between blocks two, three, and four.
I understand. I mean, even at my elementary students last year, one of them had lunch at ten thirty in the morning, you know? And then they had to have an allotment for an afternoon snack waiter. So I understand. It's big schools and big enrollments. Sometimes lunch happens. And and just, I was reassured that we have plenty of food available. And if a student needs to eat, we are not going to deny that student a chance to eat because I certainly would be comfortable with that. So I had just a couple of follow-ups. You know, so there are, I'm sitting here looking at this impossible situation because, you know, I get emails from people who want everyone back in school full-time, which would necessitate taking the choice that fifty-one percent of our families made to keep their students home. Then I hear from people who don't want any changes at all because everybody's gotten used to the schedule. Gotten emails from people who are happy with virtual learning. And then I get emails from these factions that each call the other one irresponsible. And, you know, so there's no way for me to vote for something that makes everybody happy because factions of families are having diametrically opposed demands. And so when I think about trying to please everybody, I start to want to throw up, to be honest. It gives me so much anxiety. But when I come back to what I actually want, you know, I want all our teachers vaccinated, which we're making good progress on doing. And I want them all in their classrooms. That's really important to me. I'm really happy that the fact that you've been offered a vaccine, whether you take it or not, most of our teachers have. This is your return date. Your remote privileges, you know, any of that goes away. You are expected to be at work. Because I I want our teachers in the classroom and I don't, there's no, there's no excuse to not be in the classroom at this point. I want teachers to utilize the technology that we were told about at the beginning of the year, which includes sophisticated cameras, not just webcams on on teacher laptops, at least as I understood it, to enable them to come out from behind their desks and teach to the students that are in front of their face, even if those are two to three students and still have a Zoom link running to still maintain some connectivity. I'm hoping that we can, as a culture, encourage our teachers to do that.
We can. We do not have special cameras, so I'm not sure where that is. But now all they have to do is turn their laptop so that they can be seen or whatever their focus, they want the camera focused on their laptop.
I really want our teachers to come out from behind their desk, as they would usually do. And I want their teachers, even if it's one kid that's in person, I want them to teach to that person while there's also a Zoom link on. I think, and I I understand as a person who's still teaching in this remote environment, I I understand. But when you're concurrently teaching, I think the choice to default to a Zoom-only class, because maybe you have, I don't know, ten students on Zoom and you have three in front of you, making that class, you know, continually defaulting to, well, we're going to do Zoom class because that's where most of my students are, that leads to a prioritization of virtual students over in-person students, and I'm not comfortable with that. So I think our teachers are highly skilled and highly compensated enough to put up with the intense demand and find a way to engage every day with the students who are in front of them in class. And that's something I really want them to do. I really want students who have signed up in person to go in person, to attend every day in person. I want, I want the expectation of the administration and all of our staff to be that if you've got a reserved seat at school, unless you're feeling unwell, you have to call in absent. You have a special circumstance, you're expected to be in school in person. And I'm hoping that our administration, our school-level officials like principals, even our individual teachers, can support our parents of in-person students in setting that expectation. If it's a phone call, if it's a letter home, I don't know what it's going to be to, you know, draw on my purview of the board. But I, I want us, I want us to be working really, really hard at supporting our parents who have students attending in person to help them set the expectation that you have a seat waiting for you at school and now you need to go use it. I want.
Is it possible we could stick to the motion here?
Okay.
Because that's what really we're going to vote on.
Okay.
Mr. President, where are we at right now? Are we, the motion, has a motion been made?
It has.
And it was seconded.
And we're discussing.
And we're discussing it. Now, are we going to, are we going to vote now?
No. I just asked if maybe some of the remarks could be addressing what the motion is that we're discussing as opposed to the list of everything that everybody wants from everybody in the school district, something like that.
That's not my list. My list is how this is going to be delivered. It's not just a general listed demand. I, so if I'm voting for this motion, I feel more comfortable voting for it if the way that we're delivering it is consistent with these principles that I'm trying to put forward. Because I'm, I'm going to be more comfortable voting for this motion if I know that in using that extended class time, our teachers are going to be teaching every day to the people in front of them and not just running a Zoom class. I'm going to be more comfortable voting for this modification if we are supporting parents in making sure that their in-person students are attending in person. So I I understand it's not just a general.
Maybe those are things that Dr. Small could address some of that for you.
We've been having conversations already with our staff in terms of how to approach a seventy-five-minute period. Should this be approved by the board tonight? And part of that concept is not teaching to the largest group wherever it may be. It is making sure that you're, you're teaching as you normally would in the class, not ignoring anybody, because we would never ignore any students. But if there is any patterns of tending to focus towards only one entity, especially in our remote entity, is to change the patterns of that. And the expect, you said the expectation. It is certainly, that is it, an expectation. If you're going to be in person, come on in. We, we can't punish them, but we can certainly set the expectation and encourage it and follow up and communicate.
And to stay consistent with expectations, there are families and students and parents that have been waiting for the six-foot social distancing to be released to return to the traditional model as was presented to them in July when we entered into the hybrid. And now those parents and families are being presented with another option that falls short of the traditional school day.
Yeah, I, essentially, this new option, option four, maintains the status quo that we have right now, with with the difference being we're going to add on on another fifteen minutes for 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 each period. We're not, we're not, we're not getting anywhere. We're making it harder. I think it's got to be all or nothing. And and we are, we are at a point where it doesn't, we don't have to maintain the pseudo-hybrid model. We have the the opportunity to right now to go traditional. It may be a little uncomfortable. It it may be challenging. The students will adapt. They will adapt.
I wouldn't support revoking the choice for families to stay home.
Oh, we can't. We're required by by state law to operate.
No, I understand for students with medical concerns. But I, so, you know, when I, I read the same headlines, I'm sure you did, about other schools that are returning to full-in-person learning, but they're still offering the remote option for students who are comfortable with it. So the scenario three, as I understood it in July, was no, included no virtual option. It was a full-in-person educational model. And so I'm just saying, I wouldn't be supportive of any sort of motion that removed that, you know, removed the choice to learn virtually for the remainder of this year.
Well, we can amend that. We can amend it to include virtual. I mean, it's not hard to do.
I guess the question I have is why not, to Mr. Dabrowski's point, why not offer traditional schedule each day with in-person and remote teaching? Why can't we offer that?
We can.
Then why, why don't, why don't we get that as a proposal?
You'd have to amend the motion.
Well, first, we have to address what's on the table. And then we can just make an amendment to the July resolution.
Why don't we have Dr. Small address the question that you asked?
So the, what is your, what is being presented today? And I I want to review this very quickly to make sure everybody understands that what's in here. The first component is the daily in-person learning every day, every week. There is no longer any rotating teams. The second component is the remote opportunity from which the ISBE says is the minimum, plus still giving a parent a choice, even if they don't have a medical concern of self or within the family. The third part within here is the revised schedule, which means we're taking the same schedule and stretching it. So the pattern for the students in terms of their learning is still the same. And then there's the components of the the SAT and the last day of school are also on here. Those are the components that are all included within this. Those are the components that are all included within this, just to make sure everybody's clear. Because I heard a couple of things going back and forth about the ISBE required. Is the ISBE required, plus still allowing parents to make a choice should they not feel comfortable ultimately for any reason? But could it be because we're going to three feet instead of six?
But those, those two first portions fall under the July resolution as they're identified as governing guidance that you would have to follow or could follow optionally. So those two, we don't really, there's no need for the board action.
But...
I mean, it's already on the, it's already authorized under the July resolution for the school year. So it's kind of a redundant...
Not necessarily. The, the guidance says that you can replace the six-foot distancing by a minimum of three-foot distancing, allowing to have the students, the schools to have the capacity to seat all their students in their classrooms. Technically, the number of students that are coming in now, we have enough seats for. So we technically don't have to go to three feet in order to allow in-person for all.
Anything else on this motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Cavill? Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No.
Mr. Lefather?
Aye. So that motion fails. Okay, that will bring us to graduation site agreement resolution for the class of 2021. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to enter into a license agreement with the NOW Arena at a total cost of $109,000 for the off-site graduation ceremonies for Palatine High School, William Fremd High School, James B. Conan High School, Schaumburg High School, and Hoffman Estates High Schools for class of 2021 graduation ceremonies. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Okay. Discussion.
I have some questions. Um, has the district administration, um, discussed with districts fifty-four and fifteen when they're holding eighth-grade graduations? And if so, how do they correlate with our scheduled graduations in this proposal? And if not, I think that would be very important to, um, to discuss with them before, before we move this forward. So can you share?
We've already opened the conversations with fifteen and fifty-four in terms of how we can meet their needs. Um, this is off-site. They come to our sites for graduation. We go off-site. So there, I'm not sure that there would be a conflict.
I'm not following you. So, so eighth-grade graduations in fifty-four and fifteen do not correlate and conflict with this proposal?
They don't go to the NOW Arena.
No, I'm talking about the dates, the dates and times. We, I don't think we can have... I don't think, I would not feel comfortable having our graduation day the same as a district fifty-four, fifteen, eighth-grade graduation day. So I'm asking, have we coordinated with them our graduation days to their graduation days? Because they have twenty-six schools, uh, for overall. I'm not sure how many middle schools or junior highs they have. But I want to make sure that we're not conflicting because we have some dual families that are in both. And certainly with relatives coming in and things like that, I want to make sure that we're somehow correlated there.
So I, we can certainly look at that aspect of it. I can tell you that, um, flexibility with this, in this contract is zero. Like, if we want to go to the NOW Arena, we need these dates. We don't have the, the schedule. There's no flexibility within this.
On top of what Mr. Rosenbloom was saying, I didn't think of that. You're right. I think U forty-six is looking at the NOW Arena too, that we talk with them and say, what, what dates, what dates are you going to use?
No, the NOW Arena does it. So we, we traditionally go to the NOW Arena for three of our five schools. And having dates that are set, that's part of what the NOW Arena does to make sure that they can get their schools scheduled in. These are the dates they have tentatively put for us, waiting for the contract to be signed.
U forty-six is going to use the parking lot at the NOW. That, that, that's kind of plan A or B. Would we, if, if we can't get in, into the NOW Arena because of social distancing, is, will we, are we also exploring using the NOW parking lot?
That, that's the outdoor ceremony.
Yeah, so U forty-six wants to do that too.
Not on the same days we have.
Oh, we, we, you've already worked that out.
That's not our job. That's what NOW, that's what the NOW Arena does. I don't have to call all the schools.
Okay, so, so you, you would, you'd go to the NOW and the NOW would say...
Here's the dates you can have, and we say, okay, we'll put those in front.
Pay me $10,000 more. You can have the dates you want, kind of thing, of being facetious there.
Well, listen, that was listed here. These are the dates.
Yes, these are the dates.
Dates are there, yeah.
I can't hear you then.
It's on the agenda.
The dates are in the, yeah, in the document.
So, um, so another question I have is if we approve this as presented, right, then, um, are these confirmed? If they're not confirmed, when will final decisions be made? And when will they be communicated to our students and their families?
The dates are being held for us by the NOW Arena. They are waiting for this contract to be signed and given to them. The, uh, the dates actually are the same for three of the schools. So we will, maybe even four. We will put those, um, out to them as soon as we have approval here.
And, um, if it's an outdoor ceremony, is there a limitation as to attendees?
Yes.
Can you share with us what that might be?
So the outdoor ceremony, as Mr. Kramer described, is in the parking lot. There is a large screen, um, a large stage, and then multiple screens throughout the parking lot. So in order to provide everyone the opportunity to see and hear at the appropriate level, um, we, what we would do is two ceremonies per school. And so, uh, we would give students the option to choose their preferred ceremony so that they could potentially be with their friends or, uh, whatnot, and then we would organize it based on that.
Do you know what the number of vehicles per ceremony may be?
Likely.
Has the arena shared that?
Their preferred number of vehicles, I believe, is between two and three hundred. And so by splitting even our largest schools, uh, into two ceremonies, we would be able to accommodate that.
Okay, and so thank you for sharing that. It'll be a by request with ceremony. I already saw that there were the two ceremonies, uh, for outdoors.
We, we should say, to be clear, we should say preference. We will do our best to match their preference.
I know this technical question. Which way are they going to have the screen spacing? Simply because of, uh, I'm looking at sunlight and everything affecting the screens. And if, if it's in a direction toward the west...
Sure.
Well, uh, you know, sunlight might brown out the five o'clock show.
Sure, so this is sim, the setup and the process would be similar to ones they hosted last year. And so my belief, uh, is that it's in the western mo, southwesternmost corner of the parking lot. And the stage would face to the northeast. So I think they've taken those things into account as far as...
Okay, probably good. That's fine with me.
I have another question, but it's not related to the site, so I'll wait. It is related to graduation, but not about the site agreement.
Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Lefather?
Aye. Next item is summer school proposed schedule 2021. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the 2021 summer school schedule as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion here.
I have a question. In looking at the summer school course potential learning environments, it has in-person courses and potential remote, remote courses. Uh, my question is, will all in-person courses be available at all schools?
Typically, we, we have gotten into the pattern of closing one of the southside schools for the major construction or the roofing projects that have happened, uh, this summer because of the unique nature of the potential of a freshman student never actually setting foot in their, um, school. We are going to allow the academies of the in-person courses at every school, even though there will be construction.
Thank you. And that was one of the reasons I was asking that, is the importance of getting freshmen into their buildings. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Lefather?
Aye. Next, we have in-service dates for 2021, 2022. Suggested motion that the Board of Education approve September two, 2021, October five, 2021, November five, 2021, February eleven, 2022, February eighteen, 2022, and May thirteen, 2022 as shortened days for in-service training of certified staff and special events, of which each school may choose a maximum of two days for 2021, 2022. Can someone please move that?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lefather?
Aye. Next, we have the request for proposal, electricity and natural gas services. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve a live auction for the procurement of natural gas and electricity, and further that the Board authorize the superintendent or designate to award contracts for electricity and natural gas services for a period not to exceed forty-eight months in length, subject to rates received that are no more than two percent above the request for proposals received on March eleventh, 2021, with final determination of product and term to be made following the auction results. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Lefather?
Aye. Next, we have the renewal of financial and human resources software. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the renewal of the frontline software suite at a total maintenance cost of $45,194.79 for the 2021, 2022 school year, $47,002.59 for the 2022, 2023, and $48,882.69 for the 2023 and 2024 school years. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. Um, I know that some of our neighboring districts use another software product called e-school solutions or Smart Find Express. And I want to know, uh, those school districts that I'm aware of are three hundred and fifty-four. And I'd like to know if our school district has done research into other products besides frontline that we may switch over to and costs associated to them before approving this specific product for three more years.
Lauren, can you go through our approval process when we engage this?
Yeah, we, um, outside of the recommendation here for you, um, I believe it's twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen is when we last brought a, uh, recommendation to the board to approve our main HR and payroll software system. That was, um, brought as a recommendation after an extensive, uh, probably a couple-year process of review and, uh, with the companies as well as going out to various sites. Uh, and that recommendation was implemented. This frontline solution integrates with that software system. Um, and it provides us with several components, as you can see here in the report, um, which have brought us a tremendous amount of efficiency uh, because they, they are the supplemental systems that go with that, with our HR system. The magnitude of that changeover, I think our prior system was in place for about thirty years. Uh, this is not something that we're looking to, um, change at this time because of the amount of literally months and months of work to get them set up. Um, you know, we, we are bringing forward the recommendation at this point because it is providing us with the services that we need. It integrates into our HR and payroll systems. And, uh, we have been very, very pleased with the, the quality of the services that we're able to obtain. So we have not reviewed specifically with this renewal, the system that you, uh, mentioned. Um, but that is the rationale for why this system is being recommended.
Did we review any other systems? Did we put it up for bid? I understand that, uh, one of the school districts that now uses e-school solutions, Smart Find Express, used to use frontline. I have implemented several HR systems in my career. And I know from an integration and switch-over, um, perspective that systems will work with you to convert. And as you had mentioned, it's been some time since we've reviewed this. And, um, today, there may be other systems that also work with the overall system that we have in place right now and integrate very well with that.
When we went to frontline, our first, uh, recommendation was in 2017. So it was a few years after the HR system was installed. Uh, we did a complete, um, procurement of the, uh, request for, um, proposal information on the HR software system. Um, and again, this, this was reviewed with its capacity to integrate and to provide us with the services. I do not recall the other systems that were looked at at the time. I would have to go back and, and review that. Um, but this was the recommended one because we, it provided us with the, the services that we need. And you are correct, there are times where you can, uh, create, um, code. A lot of times there's override and there are other challenges with that integration if it's not the natural product that goes along with it. Um, but this is, this has served us very well, uh, for the past couple of years that we've been using it. And we are recommending an extension of the, the agreement.
So the total cost here is almost $150,000. Is there not a bid requirement process here?
Not for software, no.
Yeah, Mr. Rosenbloom, I, I did this for a living, uh, IT guy. I got to tell you, changing systems is a really, really big deal. Okay, um, and then depending on what the system is connected to, payroll data, are we connected to the state? All that sort of stuff, uh, it, you're asking for trouble by switching to another system for a few, for a few bucks. So there is a huge learning curve for, for the, for the end user. It's, it's, it's worth staying with, with, with the same company, unless they're extraordinarily overpriced. It's, it's, yeah, we don't want to change systems.
I've done it as well, and I project manage them, in fact, and understand the nuances and the configurations and the, the need to have a team and many different parts and pieces that come together with that. But I just thought it would behoove us, or have behooved us, to explore what else is out there and the potential ease of converting over to a, a system that may do more than what we currently get um, and could meet our needs because it's been a few years, but...
All right, if there's nothing else here, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Approved, yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms, Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lefather?
Aye. Next item is potential topics for future discussion. Does anybody have any suggestions here?
Two. One of them is really easy. That one may not be. Uh, we changed to the, we, we, we changed the agenda since I got elected to the board. We used to start the thing, you know, with, at, with the pledge of allegiance, and then we would go through the, through the, through the business, then we would go in, into, into closed session. Now, we start with closed session. We're saying the pledge of allegiance to an empty audience, which I don't think is the intent of saying the pledge of allegiance. Can we change the agenda so we say the pledge of allegiance when we reconvene at seven-thirty? That, that's, I mean, if a future agenda item to vote on it, fine, or we can say, yeah, let's do it. Now, that, 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 that's... Now, that, 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 that's, that's a chair's call.
I have no problem with it. I think that's a good idea.
I, I, I'd like to even amend that and say we do it twice. We do it once to start our meeting,
Right.
which is protocol, and then we do it once so that everybody, because the, the audience stands up with us and we all say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Nothing wrong with being patriotic. Can we make that modification?
Sure. Unless there's some reason not to do that. Dr. Small?
Uh, I'll check and make sure there's anything that regulates, one, we have to do it.
That's fine.
Yeah. The, the, the second one is, I guess it's new business, with the defeat of the motion to go to an option for, what are we doing?
Well, that, that has to come back. So that's what, I was waiting for a pause here to come back to this. So there are components of what was proposed that were rejected, that I want to make sure we all understand that what is going forward, and if there is something different, that needs to be figured out now if it's going to happen before the end of the school year. So the first component of this was that the, um, in-person learning, though six-foot distancing is ideal, schools have the ability to go down to three feet to allow onsite students to attend every day. We technically don't have to do that for the number of kids who are coming every day right now. But we are preparing to put all those seats back into class. So there, there are some components here that I was planning on doing that I now have been rejected. So I need to have confirmation on these. The second component is, do parents?
Can, can we just finish the first thought, and we'll go through them one by one? So what in the July resolution is preventing you from doing that first action? Following the IDPH guidelines of reducing social distancing requirements from six feet to three feet?
If the, the way it's stated in here is that allowing students to have the capacity to see all their kids in the classroom. To, the, the, the reason they're saying, they're saying six foot is the standard, that's still the gold standard. If you need three feet to get more kids in the classroom, you can go to three feet. The, the range is three to six feet.
So what in the authorization from July is preventing the district from going from six to three?
I don't have to go from six to three because I don't need the seats. I'm telling, I'm telling you what is going to continue based on this not being voted upon.
But you have authorization from July to work within the guidelines of the state. The state has changed the guidelines from six feet social distancing to three feet social distancing.
They've changed it from three to six. That's what the verbiage says.
They've reduced it, right?
No, it says six feet is the best situation for schools. And then their next line is it can be from three to six. There's a range.
So there's no, there's nothing preventing the district from going to three feet social distancing? It's just a recommendation that six is the best practice.
Okay, let me make this more efficient. Can I make this more efficient for everybody?
Sure.
There are different components of this that I want to make sure that are going to be put in place, that are going to be maintained. So we currently have six feet. The only reason I would go to three feet is if we need to put more desks in because there are more kids coming in. That is tied to the next one. The next one is the remote learning opportunity. Currently, the state has said the only parents who have a choice for remote are if they have a medical concern for the family or a medical concern for the student. There is no other choice. That choice is gone. So what you're doing is you're essentially requiring students to come to school. Parents do not have a choice to keep them home unless they are following exactly what the ISBE says, which says that families of students who are at increased risk of severe illness or who live with family at increased risk must be given the option of remote instruction. There is no other option unless this board votes to have another option. The third component is the schedule. Currently, I will maintain the current schedule. And then finally, there's the April thirteenth test date and the last day of school being the, um, ISBE approved institute day.
So you're going to maintain the hybrid schedule?
I'm maintaining the current bell schedule. It will not be a hybrid model because the kids will be coming in every day, every week, or they will be remote.
But they're not, they're not going, you're not going to go back to the traditional schedule?
I am not. This board is going to have to vote to push me to a traditional schedule.
I moved that the district to eleven moved to a traditional schedule.
Second. Any discussion?
This is not my recommendation.
We're aware.
But you guys are well aware of that. So I have five-minute passing periods in order for teachers to clean desks and to get kids to the next class.
In your motion, is that just scenario three full stop so kids don't, there's no option for kids to stay home except for medical?
Tr- traditional bell schedule, and then I'm willing to make it optional.
I don't understand what you're saying. Optional for who?
I, I'm saying that coming in person would not be mandated as per, we, we would continue to allow the students that are currently remote, they can stay remote. Just the day, just what they're getting during the day would change. I wouldn't force the medical requirement if families are choosing to stay.
No, it's not just the medical requirement, though, because currently, parents are allowed, they don't have to prove that there's a medical issue. They can just decide to stay home.
Exactly.
So are you, are you?
He's proposing to keep that.
Question, wh- why can't the students wipe down the desks?
Uh, they have to get to the next class. They have five minutes to get up and get to the next class.
Okay, then you wipe it down. I, I do it all the time when I go, when I go shopping. I wipe down my cart. I don't think the teachers have to be.
We use, we use spray bottles?
Okay, yeah.
So.
Dr. Small, I, I believe that there's a restriction on students' use of the chemical that's imposed on us. I, I didn't understand that.
Mark, can you reference what you're talking about?
Yeah, where, uh, there is a requirement, uh, a哈as that prohibits the students' direct use of the disinfectant spray. It has to be administered by the adult.
Does this, this one have to go back to the union, then, because it would be a change of work?
Well, not necessarily. I, I think they agreed to the traditional schedule. It's in the contract, and it was part of our July resolution, which they had agreed to. So I don't see how that schedule would be functionally different than, than what we had before we started the school year.
To me, this still isn't, scenario three is dictated, though. I don't know if the fact that we'd still be asking for concurrent teaching, it, I mean, it isn't the scenario three. So would we have to go to the union? Because we're not asking for scenario three where everybody's back. We're asking for concurrent teaching. If you're maintaining the option for kids to stay at home.
Well, even if, even if it wasn't an option to that extent, we would still have potentially students with family members at risk that would require the concurrent teaching. So one way or the other, the concurrent teaching is a possibility.
But it would be minimal compared to the percent of kids that will stay home when given the choice with their family's decision.
I mean, we can't make a thousand, you know, we can't hit a thousand on it. I mean, there's, like you said, there's no way to make everybody happy.
No, my, my question was, was not about this. The question was, do we have to go to the union because it isn't, it isn't scenario three? I, I mean, is it or is it not? Is the addition of the, to me, I, I don't know if that's something that we'd have to talk to the union about because we're not asking for them to teach like normal. We're asking for them to do concurrent teaching with a remote population and an in-person population. That isn't, that isn't what I would consider scenario three. But I don't know if that's just my personal interpretation and you would or wouldn't have to go to the union.
I'm sure that would be the union's interpretation of a traditional schedule. I shouldn't say I'm sure. I would guess.
Again, the muckling, I didn't understand what you're saying.
I would guess that would be the union's interpretation of a traditional schedule. Is that they are not duly teaching at the same time to kids on the screen and kids in person. That it's a traditional fifty-minute, kids are in front of them schedule.
Can we hire aides or substitute teachers to, so that the teacher teaching in person and the sub is teaching remotely?
I don't know that that's a realistic solution for the timeframe that we have in front of us and the number of staff we would need to do that.
Well, then put it to the union.
If this were, if this, if we were having this conversation in December, or, or even earlier, I would be more, I would be more willing to put the, my foot on the gas. It's just, we're looking at all of this. It is a big change from a block schedule. I was really hoping the other one would pass, and now we're stuck, now, you know, now we're cornered. And, um, you know, all of this for essentially six weeks of instruction minus, minus testing.
Yeah, if the union doesn't want to do it, it's on the union, not on the board, not on the administration.
Can you tell us once again, you know, what exactly do you need from us enabled to go forward to?
Well, I believe there's a motion.
There is.
For us.
Do you want to, do you want to vote on that, and then we'll listen to Dr. Small again?
Can you repeat what the motion is?
The, that, uh, District two eleven return to the traditional scenario as defined in their July resolution.
Okay, the, the traditional scenario, I didn't hear what you.
Into July resolution.
Then I second the motion.
Everybody clear on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Cavill?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
No.
Okay, Dr. Small?
That keeps me at the current schedule I am in right now.
In light of that, I move that we bring back the motion. Can I, can I do that?
Motion to reconsider.
Yes, can I move to reconsider?
Yes.
Oh, the, the revised schedule for the remainder of the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one school year.
Yes, that is item B under new business. So, um, does someone want to second that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? It's the original motion.
We're reconsidering the motion that was defeated.
That's correct.
That's what I moved to do because if you're giving me the choice between, um, keeping the schedule as is and not extending any class time at all, I would rather extend some class time. Okay, than keep, than keep things as they are. If we have the capacity to extend class time, recognizing that it is going to inconvenience some people, as every solution that has come before this board all year has promised to do, I would rather extend some instruct, extend, extend some instructional time than, and, and then, and, and more, more importantly, decrease from the six to the three feet, which it sounded like we needed an official motion to do or what have you to fit more bodies in the seat. I'm, that's why I'm going to reconsider. I'd rather do this than keep everything exactly as it is right now with the failure of the motion, Mr. Kramer's motion.
Again, last, last Tuesday, the state removed all roadblocks for this district to go back to the traditional scenario. They said, you know, our, our traditional scenario, under the three learning scenarios presented to the community in July, was all students attend classes according to the typical course schedule. They've removed every barrier from that. And we're creating barriers.
I disagree that they removed every barrier because they're still requiring the provision of a remote option, and we are debating whether or not to extend that motion essentially without medical documentation. So I disagree with your assessment that they've removed every barrier.
Hospital affecters, they still have to clean classroom.
And we have a substantial portion of our families that have chosen to learn remotely, and I've heard from, that, we've all heard from all sorts of people, and I've heard from those families, too. So I, 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 I disagree with your assessment of the situation for right now.
Dr. Small believes this is the best instructional model, so. All right, uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
I'm still going to say no.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Okay, the motion fails.
I'm in the current schedule.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Small?
So we're.
Current schedule.
We're go, we're going to use a current schedule.
We've had two other schedules come forward. Both have been defeated.
So if more students show up in the classroom, are we able to move the desks within the, the three feet to the six foot di- uh, distance?
If more students come in person?
If more students come in person?
Yes.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to happen unless that occurs. And currently, right now, you have no choice for parents, except unless there's a medical issue.
I thought we were keeping everything the same.
Just the bell schedule.
Just the bell schedule.
So in order to keep the option, I'm sorry, it's getting so late. So in order to keep the option uh, for parents to, or remotely, should they choose, you, you essentially need a motion. You need that motion to pass.
That's correct.
So what that means, we get in difficult territory here, is that basically every student has to come in unless they have a medical reason not to come in. Is that true or not true?
That's, that is currently what the ISBE is saying.
Okay.
But now, none of that, if you, if you require all students to attend classes, with the exception provided, we're no longer meeting the hybrid scenario of fifty percent of students physically attend the school. So no, so then of the three learning scenarios, we're being forced into the traditional scenario. The way I read the resolution, unless it gets amended.
I know you're trying to make things happen. I would like the board to tell me the rule of the board. Tell me the rule of the board in terms of what you want to do. Now I have a current bell schedule. What do you want me to do for parents? Do you want me to give them a choice or not give them a choice?
I'd like to make a motion that families in this school district are able to maintain their decision and practice of either having their students in person or remote based on their decision.
Second.
So basically, we're not changing anything.
Uh, let's let Dr. Small address that, what that does or doesn't.
So right now, we're only talking about parent choice. What the ISBE just put out, they said that students who are at increased risk of severe illness, including those with special healthcare needs or who live with family, with people at increased risk, must be given the option of remote instruction. Mr. Rosenbloom is asking that families be able to maintain the decision of the practice of in-person or remote based on their family decision.
So from a discussion standpoint, I'm asking that the policy of this district remain the same as it has been up to this point with regards to remote or in-person learning and not require a medical reason.
I don't know if it's been moved.
Yeah, uh, there was a motion in the second, right. That was, what I was going to ask is, do you have other criteria that we should address also, and?
Me?
Yes, or is that?
Not for this particular one. This is only talking about parent choice.
Okay, so you want to, you want to take the criteria one at a time and vote on them? We can do that. Okay, is there?
What do you mean?
Is, are there other criteria that you're going to add after we vote on this, or are we done? Is that enough for you to continue with the school day in operation?
Uh, I, the, April thirteenth is going to be the SAT day, and only kids that are taking the test, whether they're juniors or seniors, will be there, and May, uh, twenty-eighth would be an I- And May twenty-eighth would be an ISBE-approved Institute Day.
So we can amend the motion to incorporate that language?
Would anyone like to amend that or keep it separate? I'm fine with amending that. So I'd like to amend my motion to add the two dates that you had mentioned for SAT and was it end of school? And the end of school dates that you had mentioned.
May twenty-eighth.
For approval by this board.
Okay, is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, so on the amendment to, can, you want to read that back?
Sure. Families will be able to maintain the decision of practice of in-person or remote based on their family decision. April thirteenth will be the SAT day for all juniors and seniors who have not taken it yet, and May twenty-eighth will be an ISBE-approved Institute Day.
The amendment we're voting on is the, the testing stuff at the end, the second piece of what she read, so.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, we're going to, yeah, you, you read the whole thing. So we're voting first on the amendment. So on the amendment, for those testing dates, as you read them, is everyone clear on that, or do you want her to read just that again? Okay, roll call.
We're discussing still.
If you have, yeah, discussion on those testing dates, sure.
That, that changes nothing, right? I mean, we're, it, it, it's status quo. Those dates, those dates are already there, whether we are traditional full bell schedule or not.
Those dates would be presented no matter what the bell schedule is.
Okay, all right, roll call on the amendment, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Okay, so now the motion incorporates both of those. Are there other criteria that you want added so we can have another amendment, or?
Let me just check.
Yeah.
We've talked about the distancing. We are adding in here the remote possibility for parent choice. The schedule is already determined, and then we have the two dates. I think that covers everything that I need.
Can you, okay, so now can you read the whole motion for the board?
Families will be able to maintain the decision of practicing in-person or remote learning based on their family decision. April thirteenth will be a SAT test date for all juniors and for seniors who need to take the exam because they did not take it in the fall. May twenty-eighth will be an ISBE-approved Institute Day.
Okay, everyone's clear on what the motion is now? Any discussion here?
I have a real quick question. Dr. Small, there is a statement in here with teacher input, students who did not earn credit through an incomplete or failing grade would be assigned to an appropriate. Does that need to be included in this for summer?
No.
Okay, thank you.
That's for academic support.
Thank you.
That's still in place, and they can still do some.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Um, okay. We concluded potential topics?
I, I have, I, I do have one. I'm wondering if maybe after the summer school, maybe there could be a conversation about academics and about how the kids fared and how we're looking to move forward into the school year. Are there things that we need to, to change, improve? I know academics have been talked about a number of times, but maybe taking a look at how our kids finished off the year. Sure. Thank you.
I also have an item that could be for future topic, or maybe even now, I don't know. But last year, I know we had some parades at Boomer Stadium. We had some parades at schools. And a lot of the comments that I heard from people in the community who were involved with those, parents and students, were, and, and some staff and teachers, were requests and suggestions that maybe we do that regardless of whether or not there's a graduation ceremony, that we still offer the opportunity for them to come through in a parade style, be recognized, be celebrated, and have that opportunity to almost, in, in one of the schools I went to, say goodbye to their teachers, right? So I was wondering if there's been any discussions around that, planning around that.
There has, and there's some excitement around the potentials of parades, so I'm sure the seniors will be excited to see that when it comes around.
So that is the plan? Is there?
Can I definitely say yes, Mr. Schumacher?
That's the plan.
Thank you.
All right, that will bring us to committee reports. First, we have an SSCL, Mrs. Klinkowitz.
All right, good morning, and I'll be brief. Our shining star was a, well, is a District Two-Eleven student. His name is Matthew, and he was recognized for the microbusiness. He's from Kirk School. And his microbusiness that they were working on is Maskarone and Cheese. So their mini group was making masks. And it works on teaching independent living skills such as job skills, social emotional support, speech, occupational, physical therapy, a variety of things. The Kirk School, the parent survey showed that they would have seventy-six percent full in-person. That was about a hundred and six in-person students. It was starting March first, the full day for students. They were also, NSSCO is implementing a delayed start for students on Friday mornings, and this would give the teams time to plan and collaborate on student needs. The Kirk School is working on a number of the, the micro businesses again. They have seventeen businesses working with the schools. It gives the kids a little more opportunity since they do not have the opportunities to go out to the businesses as much as they can. Thank you.
And then Ed Redd, please.
I don't have anything.
All right, Partners for Our Community?
Just briefly, pleased to announce that Partners for Our Communities, which is the agency we partner with to offer our evening services program, was recently designated by the Illinois Department of Human Services as an official Illinois welcoming center, which means that they are recognized as a one-stop comprehensive service center to offer connections to services and other state-provided assistance programs to our community families. It's a wonderful recognition for all of the effort that POC has put in to establishing itself here locally.
Thank you. And the Budget and Finance Committee, I believe we all participated, so we'll have no report. Facilities Committee?
Pretty much, we've seen what the presentation was today. To the work that's going to be done this summer. I don't know if there's any other questions?
Thank you. All right, we have our announcements. And then finally, I believe all that's left is closed session items. First, suggested motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement requests of Suzanne Adamsky, effective May twenty-twenty-five, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven Teachers Union. Leslie Alonso, effective May twenty-twenty-four, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven United Support Staff. Laura Hoth, effective May twenty-twenty-two, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven United Support Staff. John Noah, effective May twenty-twenty-five, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven Teachers Union. Barbara Peterson, effective June twenty-twenty-five, consistent with the master contract of the District Two-Eleven Teachers Union. Could someone please move that?
Well, everyone but Barb Peterson.
Yeah, you have to stay here, right there.
And Mrs. Klinkowitz, I second that.
So moved.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Suggested motion that effective July one, twenty-twenty-one, Amanda Hughes be appointed as twelve-month assistant principal at William-Freund High School at a gross salary of one hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Suggested motion that effective July one, twenty-twenty-one, Jeanette Ardell be appointed as twelve-month assistant principal at James B. Conant High School at a gross salary of one hundred forty-seven thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Suggested motion that effective July one, twenty-twenty-one, John Volgy be appointed as twelve-month assistant principal at Palatine High School at a gross salary of one hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Suggested motion that effective July one, twenty-twenty-one, Hameen Maryaski will be appointed as twelve-month assistant principal at William-Freund High School at a gross salary of one hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Suggested motion that effective July one, twenty-twenty-one, Gordon James be appointed as twelve-month assistant principal at James B. Conant High School at a gross salary of one hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Suggested motion that effective August two, twenty-twenty-one, Chris Rincioni be appointed as ten-month assistant principal at Palatine High School at a gross salary of one hundred sixteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Suggested motion that effective August two, twenty-twenty-one, Allison Beisdan be appointed as ten-month assistant principal at William-Freund High School at a gross salary of one hundred sixteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Suggested motion that effective August two, twenty-twenty-one, Whitney Gabour be appointed as ten-month assistant principal at Schaumburg High School at a gross salary of one hundred sixteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Suggested motion that effective August two, twenty-twenty-one, Brittany Burlman be appointed as ten-month assistant principal at Hoffman Estates High School at a gross salary of one hundred sixteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Since there's nothing left to discuss, this meeting.
Real quickly, Mrs. Klinkowitz and I attended the North Cook Division. I don't know if anybody else here was on that because it was a webinar. The North Cook Division meeting, quarterly meeting. It was online. It was last night, and it was, it was very good. There was a superintendent from our, our area that spoke on, on the next ninety days, or nine months, or whatever it was, and, and talked about really maintaining enthusiasm, positiveness, just how appreciate, appreciative the superintendents are for the school board and the school board for the superintendents. And, and then the session was followed with a networking opportunity on Zoom for, I think there were eight board members, and our area director, Dee Molinari, was on there. And it was an opportunity for us to, to converse and talk about some of the experiences that we're having during these trying times and recommendations and suggestions on what we might do to be better board members and conduct our meetings, and that we discuss some of the experiences that we're having. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I think that's perfect. Thank you.
All right, we are adjourned.